Uh, just to let you know that I have not, I have misplaced my cellphone. Uh, if you have to text me, uh, anything, you can text me at four seven zero. Four two one. Nine one three four. Okay, uh, at this time, I would like to call the meeting to order, Madam Clerk.
Please put that in the chat, can you please put that number in the chat?
Don can, I guess, Donna put it in the chat. Okay, but once again, it's, uh, four seven zero, four two one. Three one three four. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Good morning, everyone, and happy first day of fall. Roll call for today, September twenty second, regular council meeting.
President.
Councilmember Gomes.
Present.
Councilmember Willis.
Present.
Councilmember Gilliard.
Here.
Councilmember Reeves.
Accountant for.
Councilmember.
Present.
Councilmember Baker.
Present.
Also present is Mayor. Mr. Donald, City Manager, Ms. Amelia Walker, City Attorney, you have a quorum.
Okay, uh. Mr. Chaplain.
Yes, sir, we're right here, ma'am, let us pray. The gracious God, we are humbled for today and with great attitudes, we thank you. We thank you for being reminded that this is the first day of fall. Beautiful season whereby the leaves fall down to the ground, but oh God, help us to rise up. That we might rise up to be all that you have called us to be, we blessed the budget. And all the decisions that must be made today, oh God, let it be according to your will and your way, we will always give you the praise, let us all say amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chaplain. Madam Clerk.
Okay, are there any changes to the agenda for the adoption of the agenda?
Yes, um, I just want to make sure that, um. My, uh, George Oliver, my. Appointee for the Parks Advisory Board is, uh.
It is.
Thank you.
Are there any changes to the agenda? Okay, Mayor, there's no changes.
Okay, Madam Clerk, proceed.
You need a, a motion.
I'm sorry.
We approve the agenda for September twenty second.
Properly moved to second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Ralph.
Yes.
Councilmember Gomes.
Yes.
Councilmember Willis.
Yes.
Councilmember Gilliard.
Yes, yes.
Councilmember Reeves. Councilmember Colley.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Hi.
Motion approved.
Okay, next item, Madam Clerk.
Next item is approval of city council minutes, approval of city council regular meeting minutes for August twenty fifth.
I move that we approve city council, uh, minutes for, um, August twenty fifth.
Second.
Who was that?
I was, I didn't hear a second.
Yeah, let me do, uh, if we can, um, I would like to, uh, restate my motion. I would like to prove, uh, I would like to move that we approve city council meeting minutes for August twenty fifth. Uh, for August twenty sixth, for, for September second. Let me, let me restate that, uh, city council minutes for August twenty fifth, special call. Meeting minutes for August twenty sixth, special car meeting minutes for September second. Uh, the work session meeting minutes for September eighth, the special car meeting minutes for September tenth. And the special car meeting minutes for September fifteenth.
Second.
Properly moved and second, any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, all those, Madam Clerk, all those in favor?
Councilmember Ralph.
Yes.
Councilmember Gomes.
Yes.
Councilmember Willis.
Yes.
Councilmember Gilliard.
Yes.
Councilmember Reeves. Councilmember Colley.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Hi.
Motion approved, approve all of the minutes.
Next item, ma'am.
Next item is public hearing. Public hearings, public hearings, council approval of alcohol license for fifty-two seventy Hamilton-Farben Highway. M S Enterprises, Inc., Chevron-Farben, the police department.
I'll open the public hearing.
Yes, Madam Clerk, um, this business has met all of the requirements, um, under the city ordinance, I believe Major, uh, Tina Johnson should be on. Right now, Tina, you on? Well, this business has met all of the requirements, um. For, um, to receive an alcohol license.
Okay.
Excuse me, uh, there were no public comments for this items.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing. I think I saw Mrs. Willis.
I move that we, uh, close the public hearing.
I have a comment.
I, I don't think, I, I think I opened the public hearing and closed it.
Okay, I have, okay, well then I, um, I'll go ahead and make my comment. Um, this gas, this gas station is a welcome addition to District Three. Um, I did have a conversation with the owner yesterday, um, about some of the. Concerns, Mayor, it, um, yeah, can you?
Let me, I can take care of that.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilman Gilliard, we're, you need to moot yourself. Go ahead.
I'm reclaiming my time back. Have, uh, um, a conversation with the owner of the gas station, Mr. Muhammad, we had a very good conversation. Um, I did address with him some of the code enforcement, um. Issues that, um, you know, did arise, and, uh, I, I just would, he just explained that it was, um. A, they just opened, they had staff limitations, it was very apologetic. Um, he is committed to be in a welcome addition to our community. Keeping the gas station clean, keeping the surrounding area clean, um, he did explain that they did have a lot of boxes. Because they were trying to stock the store and they did have a lot of items to disperse of. And they now have, uh, more frequent trash pickup, so they're now going to be getting trash picked up five days a week. And he has more staff, um, that he is, uh, he is trained to. Make sure that they are going to, um, you know, take care of the trash cans at the, uh, gas pump, so. Um, this area was in need of a gas station. Um, so I am going to ask that we, I move that we approve this alcohol license for the Chevron gas station.
Any other comments? Hearing none, uh, is there a second? Did I hear a second?
No, no, Mayor, you have not.
Second.
Properly moved and second, uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, Madam Clerk?
Uh, Councilmember Gilliard did have a, a comment.
Yeah, I, I'm having, I'm having a problem with novice. Um, uh, the only comment that I wanted to make was that. There is a package store. Right there, almost in the same plaza. There is, um, uh, uh, at, at less than another mile away is another, uh, liquor, a convenience store. We're getting too many of them, that, that's my point, so I'm hoping at some po- point in time. We are able to control the number of them, so they, they just don't get, you know, we just don't have too many. That's my only comment.
Okay, thank you, Miss Gilliard, uh, Madam Clerk.
Okay, it was properly moved and seconded to approve this license, Councilmember Ralph.
Yes.
Councilmember Gomes.
Yes.
Councilmember Willis.
Yes.
Councilmember Gilliard.
Yes.
Councilmember Reeves. Councilmember Colley. Councilmember Colley.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Hi.
The approval passed. Next is the public hearing for council approval of rezoning Z nineteen dash zero zero five. From AG one to C two for commercial development at thirty-five sixty Jonesboro Road. Uh, community service, community development.
Hey, I'll open the public hearing.
Staff speaks first.
Yes.
Good morning, Mayor and Council, um, Madam Clerk, would it be possible that you could put up the, uh, PowerPoint presentation? Or the PDF of that presentation for the, uh, there we go. Um, good morning, everyone, my name is Nathan My Lombardo, I'm the Planning and Zoning Administrator for the city. Um, and I am relatively new, I've been with the city a little over four months. Um, I know this is the first time that some of the members of, of council have worked with me. And some, the first time that some of you have even heard my voice, um, at all. Um, I want to assure you that, uh, I'm looking forward to having a very productive relationship with all of you, a very beneficial relationship. Um, Mayor and Council is always going to get my best professional advice and my most honest opinion when asked for. I do recognize that sometimes, uh, my advice and my opinion might come into conflict, shall we say, with some of the passions. That can, um, manifest themselves in these cases. Um, but I recognize that's part of the job and it's, um, something that I hope we can, um, overcome over the course of time. Um, so our first case here is rezoning at thirty-five sixty Jones, Jonesboro. This is a carryover case from, um, earlier this year and a planning commission case last year. So it should not be the first time that Mayor and Council is seeing, uh, this one, uh, we go to the next slide, please. Um, it was postponed from a February meeting, um, so that the applicant could get more, uh, public participation and involvement, uh, in this case. I would also mention to Mayor and Council that all the participants were given the, or the petitioners, rather. Were given the, um, information to log into the Zoom call, so they should be here to make comment and to answer any detailed or very specific questions. I have generally about four slides for each case to go over in a general sense, um. So as the clerk says, the request to go from AG one to C two. Um, the recommendation at the time was for approval with the conditions that were in the report, now, I didn't see any reason for a change at this time. And the planning commission also voted for approval, if we go to the next slide, please. These are some general maps of the area, you can see the triangular, um, parcel on the left, it's highlighted in a light blue, um, that's the parcel. Um, on Jonesboro Road, and on the right, there's an aerial map, it's a triangular, uh, parcel with the pin dropped right in the middle of the, of the, uh, map on top. And the Google Earth drive-by shows that there is nothing there on this parcel at that time, or the current time, go to the next slide, please. This site plan should look familiar to council, I believe the original intent was for the participant, or the petitioner, rather, to put a Volvo dealership here. I know there was talk, um, about having that switch your Carvana, he's also talked about having, um, some out parcel retail and, um. Restaurants in the other, um, shops that are on the site. Um, if the participant is on the call. They'd, as I said, be able to answer any questions that more specifically for you. Um, and that is the conclusion of this, of the staff report for, uh, this case.
Yes.
Okay, uh, we have, we have one public comment for, against the, um. The application, I don't know if you want to hear from the, um, applicant first.
If the applicant is through, is finished with his presentation, then we can hear the public comment and he can rebuttal if he likes.
That was staff that just finished talking.
That was staff, okay, uh, let's hear it from the applicant.
He is on the call, now's his time.
What's his name?
I'm gonna find that one for you.
He is on the call or not?
They were all sent the information for this call, uh, last week, um, it's Robert Kelly.
Is he on the call or not?
I think they're trying to check the roster right now, Mayor, if you, if you give them one minute, I think they'll be able to confirm that and unmute them.
I do not see him on the call, in, on the roster of, uh, of people on this call, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, um. At this time, then let me do this, let me hear the, uh, the public comment.
Okay, we have one public comment for this application from Michael Venable, fifty-seven twenty Montilly Circle. I am requesting you deny this petition, not only does it com- does it not comply with the land use plan. Our car dealership damages the future va- va- viability of the area. In every area, you have car dealerships, fast food establishments, gas stations, dollar stores. And personal care facilities, i.e. barber, beauty, nail, tattoo, et cetera, are the only things that. We have, Highway six in Lithia Springs, Victory Drive in Columbus, and yes, Highway one thirty-eight in Union City. Are real examples of car dealership economics. All this rezoning would do is expand the Union City Highway one thirty-eight demographic to South Fulton. The use restriction listed on the property is severely insufficient. And there is no logical or business path to success. Only certain types of businesses are going to knowingly and purposely locate next to a car dealership. Land use does not support the development and the business model has no success history. That's it.
Okay, I'll go back once again to the applicant, is he on?
No, Mayor, I don't believe he's.
Okay, okay, then, uh, I'm gonna close the public hearing, uh, comments?
Yes, uh. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I got you, Mr. Baker, go ahead.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to deny this.
Is there a second to the? Been properly moved and second, any further discussion? Madam, uh, Madam Clerk, let's vote.
Councilmember Ralph.
Uh, deny.
Councilmember Gomes.
Deny.
Councilmember Willis.
Yes, deny.
Councilmember Gilliard. Councilmember Gilliard. Councilmember Reeves.
Deny.
Councilmember Colley.
Deny.
Councilmember Baker.
I guess my appropriate response would be I, because the motion is to deny, so. I.
The motion passes to deny this application.
Okay, let me, let me, let me just add, I think that, that was a very good decision, uh, Mr. Baker, appreciate it. Uh, go ahead, Madam Clerk.
The next application, public hearing, council approval of rezoning case Z twenty dash zero zero three. From AG one to SH for senior housing development at thirty-eight twenty-five and thirty-eight ninety-five Jonesboro Road.
I'll open up the public hearing staff.
All right, um, as we said, this is thirty-eight twenty-five and thirty-eight ninety-five Jonesboro, we can go to the next slide, please. Uh, the petitioner here seeks to rezone two parcels, um, twenty-five and ninety-five from AG one to SH Senior Housing. To develop a senior living facility, facility, um, this is a very experienced developer who has made this proposal. Um, I've heard quite a bit from different council members, um, about a need for senior housing in this city. So I believe this would fulfill a need for senior housing in the city. It is suitable for the area, given the size of the street, the number of lanes there, the amount of traffic that's coming through, and the commercial development that is nearby. And it would be a multi-story building, um, staff recommendations for approval, and planning commission voted for approval as well, you can go to the next slide, please. Um, you're gonna see two slides that look just like this because it's parcels that are right next to one another, if you look at the zoning map, on the left-hand side, the parcel is outlined in blue. And you can see on the aerial map, on the right-hand side, um, there's nothing built on the site right now, and it's the pin drop in the upper map. And the next slide is gonna be very similar, it's just the adjacent parcel, also, um, same zoning. And same, no development on this particular site, we'll go to the next slide, please. Here's an aerial map of the property, I want to say that this would be a senior living facility and not an assisted facility, so it would be apartments for rent. And you can see the entrance, um, off, uh, Jonesboro Road, there has been discussion with, um. Uh, traffic engineers about putting a light there, because I know there has been concerns about traffic. Um, but I'm, I don't believe that'd be suitable for a light at this time, I'm gonna go to the next slide. You can see an aerial of a typical development, um, from this, uh, developer and from the, from this petitioner, so it'd be a. A brand-new, multi-story, um, apartment-style building, uh, for senior living. And that's the end of the staff report for this, uh, this item.
Hey, thank you very much, Madam Clerk is the, uh, petitioner here?
The, yes, uh, Ms. Battle.
Ms. Battle?
Yes, Michelle Battle.
Okay, you have a total of ten minutes, not you, everybody.
Michelle Battle, um, won, well, with Battle Law, won West Court Square, Decatur, Georgia, three zero zero three zero. Very happy to be here this morning, um, to discuss the proposed project. Uh, development, um, CRN is an experienced developer that was formed in, uh, twenty fifteen by Tommy Ward. Um, and after, um, being involved for over fifteen years with Gateway Development Corporation. Um, they are, um, very well positioned, um, in the market, they have, uh, units not only in, um. The metropolitan, uh, Atlanta area, but also in Pooler, um, Richmond Hill, Georgia, Carlton. Conyers, Covington, um, Ellenwood, um, and they continue to, um, develop sites, um, throughout. Um, the, uh, the state of Georgia, as well as, um, areas in Alabama. Um, this particular project is indicated will be a hundred and ten units, will have a building, um, with an elevator, um, in the interior. Will be three stories, um, they will have a computer lab, a community kitchen, um, fully equipped exercise room. Cover patio, um, with grills, um. We believe that this is, uh, definitely a need within, um, the area, we've asked for the SH, uh, zoning. Uh, designation in order, um, to limit the use to sixty-two and older, which they will comply with. Um, we did have conversations with regards to, um, the, uh, traffic. Um, and we have had comments that have come from the community with regards, uh, to traffic along, um, uh, Jonesboro Road. Um, we did obtain a traffic study, um, there's no issue with regards to the amount of traffic that is on, um, Jonesboro Road. It is really about the speed of the traffic, um, there, we do have site distance. Um, but we also have discussed moving the entrance point over, um, so that it lines up with Peters Road, which is something that we can discuss if this gets approved. Um, during the land development process, um, with that said, we would respectfully request approval. Um, of the application for the hundred and ten units with the rezoning to SH, and we are happy to answer any questions, and I have Carrie Courtney Nielsen. Um, which is, uh, who is with, uh, CRN Development, um, online with me as well to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, we'll reserve your time, uh, Ms. Battle, and, uh, do we have anything from the, from the community, Madam Clerk?
Yes, we have one against the project.
Anybody for?
No, sir.
Okay, go ahead.
The, uh, applicant is Michael Venable, fifty-seven twenty Montilly Circle. I'm requesting you uphold the city land use plan and deny this petition. The proposal does not comply with the density requirement of the land use plan. This should be the end of the discussion, but because of other. Eric, precarious concerns, I will elaborate. As you may recall, the case was the second hotel near Highway seventy-four. The area was mistakenly zoned for the hotel against the constraints of the land use plan. Council voted to change the plan to make the zoning compl- compliant. With this case, there is no mistake. It is known now that the proposal violates the land use plan. Approving this zoning would not only be deliberate, but malicious. As much discussion has been raised about community participation, it is highly improper. For a zoning application to initiate a land use plan change. This is most, this in most municipalities would be characterized as corruption. And the fact that CDRA staff is not vigorously supporting municipal law is disturbing. Approving the pres- presidents allows landfills by shopping centers and warehouses by the subdivisions. Now, with the project itself, the intent and location are terrible. This is an attempt to settle a vulnerable population on a four-lane state highway with truck and car traffic and noise. Imagine we're crossing all the lanes to catch a bus or trying to enter traffic in a car. Of course, it may have been looked good if a sound b- bream was proposed along the road frontage, but it is not. Also notice, there are essentially no other residents in participancy. If an older resident became disoriented and began wondering, it is not like a car dealership. Dollar store or gas station will assist like other homeowner subdivisions. The seniors in this city want to age in place in their own homes, so let no one exacerbate the need and narrative. This philosophy of placing rental properties and star homes on pedestals. Has caused a great demise to the old national area. This project had no community center and activity area large enough to support an exercise weight room. For yoga, line dance class, tennis court, or putting greens, putting greens, you know, things that seniors enjoy. But that is not the focus of this project, the intent is solely for the disenfranchi- disenfranchised. That none of you on this council would encourage your parents to rent. Placing this oversized senior apartment on a currently barren area with high-speed traffic with no security enclosure. And forcing stair climbing is outright dirty. Supporting this demographic does not mean placing them on the outskirts of the city, out of sight and out of mind. Decent senior facilities are located close to shops, grocery, and medical with sidewalks and low traffic. With retiree amenities and all flats with no stairs. This proposal is illegal by ordinance and im- immoral by conscience. For the true benefit of the city, this zoning should be denied. That's the end of the com- comment.
Okay, uh, Ms. Battle, you have seven minutes and forty-four twenty-eight seconds.
Um, yes, I would like to respond to that, number one, um, there is no question, um, that the current land use plan. Um, does indicate, um, that the property, um, uh, that the SH zoning technically is not consistent. Um, with the, um, proposed rezoning, um, however, we were requesting an amendment. Um, to the land use plan, um, with regards, um, to the ability to have, uh, this project. Uh, on the subject property, uh, we believe that that is appropriate, um, based on, um, the fact that. Um, we are looking at a commercial, um, not a commercial, but a, um, major thoroughfare. Um, that this property, um, is located on, um, while there is not, there are, um, uh, homes that are in the area. Um, but, uh, most of those are in, uh, Union City, they are not in, uh, the city of South Fulton. Um, we believe that as you come down, um, past, um, eighty-five, as you're moving down Jonesboro Road. Through Union City, that you're really beginning to enter into, um, a more residential, um, related, um, environment. Um, I think that it is, um, disingenuous to suggest that we are not concerned about, um, the residents that would be living there. Um, it is very difficult to find, um, locations that, um, in communities that want. Uh, multifamily within the interior of a residential community, and so, um, this placement kind of at the edge of. The residential community makes sense, um, and from our perspective. Um, the amenities that will be provided, um, have. The amenities that will be provided have been set forth. There is ample green space around the site. We've got a gazebo, we've got outdoor activity areas for the seniors that will be located on the site. And once again, we believe that this is an appropriate location for the property. I think that there is a decision that this board has to make with regards to the land use designations. There are many projects, some that we have on the board coming through that require land use changes. I'm amazed that there's no formal application for land use amendments as there are in other jurisdictions. But it is my understanding that these rezonings can still take place, that there is no requirement under the ordinance at the moment that the land use and the zoning have to match, but rather that that is viewed based on what the desires of the city council would be. Again, we think that this is an excellent location for this project with regards to the speed of the traffic along this highway. We have, again, proposed and obtained a traffic study which indicates that lining up the entrance point with Peters Road would be the first step in allowing for a traffic light to be installed. They probably need that, well, not probably, but the traffic warrant study, light study did indicate that a traffic light is warranted in that location. And that is something that we will certainly be happy to work with GDOT to notify them of the need for the light. I'm not sure that, whether it's the responsibility of the city or GDOT to install that light. But we certainly are willing to do what we can to line up the entrance points so that safe passage into the site can be obtained and that there would not be any issues with the seniors trying to get in and out of the site. So with that, we would, again, respectfully request approval of the application. Thank you.
Okay, any further? I'll close public hearing. I have one or two questions, Ms. Battle.
Yes, sir.
Is this, is this, is this dependent or independent living?
It is independent senior living.
Total, totally independent, right?
Totally independent. You have to be ambulatory to live in the site, and you have to be able to live independently. There is no assisted living component to this project.
Could you bring up your, your, your slide that shows the site? I want to look at the decelerate. Is there a decelerate?
I'm going to ask Nathan to go back.
The clerk is driving this, the slide presentation, but I believe it's a slide or two slides before this one. That's the wrong direction.
So we're not currently showing the decelerate. Well, actually, we are. I apologize. We are showing the decelerate.
You almost, you almost lost me there.
Okay, no, there is a decelerate that is shown coming into the site. But again, we also are looking at relocating if the traffic department so desires, we can go ahead and relocate to line up with Peters Road, and we would still have the decelerate coming into the site.
It's the slide before this, that one right there. There it is.
Yeah. Okay. The red portion is the decelerate, I'm looking, I can't.
That's the site visibility, the site distance visibility, so we, to show that.
Okay, where, where's, staff, where's the decelerate?
It's the dashed line right under the, on the right side of the site. If you can, I don't know if you can blow it up enough to see. There's a black dashed line, and you can see that it kind of is inside the lane there. So there's a decelerate to be, and we can certainly condition it on that decelerate.
Staff, does the length of that decelerate is adequate for that particular highway?
Uh, yeah, we have not, we have not received comments back on, on that. But if there was any problems, we would have certainly gotten comments on that. I'll also mention the decelerate is only going to be your right turn off of Jonesboro, not, not anything for the left-hand turn-in.
Okay, so one decelerate on the right side. My question was, there, there are requirements for decelerate lanes. So what are you basing that decelerate lane on?
The traffic study indicated the need for the decelerate lane. So we do have a traffic study again, and we are following all of the recommendations that set forth in the traffic study, which is included trying to relocate the, the front entrance to line up with Peters Road. And we actually have a site plan of that, which we provided to staff, but it was decided because this had already been sent out. We got the traffic study completed and sent everything over. But I think your packages had already gone out, and so it didn't get updated. But we do have a slide that we provided to, or a plan that we provided to staff that shows the lining up of Peters Road and the implementation of all of the requirements under the traffic study.
And there's one entrance, right?
Yes.
And Michelle, you know, I don't like one inch, but I'm gonna go, you forgot decelerate here.
Well, that, that, well, right, that's on this particular slide. If you, if the other slide, we did have a second entrance point that I think is a right-in, right-out only.
Okay, so there is a second entrance point, but you're not showing it?
Yes, again, we, we sent over the additional slide. I know that it's not available for you all to look at right at this moment, but we do have that, and it does show kind of like an emergency entrance, so that if there was ever any issue with the one primary entrance, there's still the ability to get in and out of the site right in.
Staff, do you have, do you have a copy of that?
Yeah, she has addressed all of those issues in updated plan, but it was submitted too late to change this presentation to get to Mayor and Council.
I'll take your word, I'll take your word on it. Listen, those are all my questions. I think we need some type of senior facility in the area. Our senior population is booming, and I appreciate the presentation. Any other comments?
Yes, I was in the queue, Mayor.
Sorry, I didn't even get, I was on the other thing.
Me as well.
Yeah, I got you, I got you. I have, what I have in the queue is Mr. Khalid, Ms. Willis, Ms. Rowell, and Mr. Reeves.
Can you put Mr. Baker behind?
Councilmember Baker and Councilmember Gilliard.
Remember now, I don't have a way. Okay, Baker and Gilliard at the Reeves, okay? So let's, if you, if you wouldn't mind, Ms. Willis, let's go with Ms. Khalid, then you.
All right, thank you. I want to just go back to a comment that my constituent, Mr. Venable, thank you for your vigilance as always. He mentioned that there were no activities or activities rooms in the plan or meeting rooms. And I do think that those things are important, especially like if one of us, mayor and council, wanted to come and chat with the residents in the community, that there were some sort of meeting room or reception room for them. Are there no rooms like that in this plan?
Ms. Courtney Nelson is on, and if you all could unmute her, she can certainly respond to that question. I laid out what all the interior amenity packages are. I believe there is space, there is a community room space in the interior of the building.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yes, I'm Carrie Courtney Nelson, I'm with CRN Development. Yes, there are, there's a community room in the, on the first floor, a community kitchen, and there is plenty of meeting space. This is going to be a three-story building, and every level has a community room and a meeting space for you, for anyone gathering areas. There is a library, there is computer labs, there are, there's a full equip, fully equipped gym. There are plenty of outdoor and indoor amenity spaces on every level.
And there, and there are activities such as line dancing or yoga?
Yes, every month we have at least, every week and every month, we have monthly and weekly activ, activities for all the residents, and we send out a weekly newsletter for them.
Okay, thank you, uh, thank you so much for clearing that up. Could it be, uh, may I have permission to share my screen, Madam Clerk? I had a question about the traffic and the traffic study.
Is this a part of the original traffic study that was, that was given to us?
I have a question about the traffic and the traffic study and the, and the.
Okay, I'm asking the question, it's just a part of the original traffic study that was presented to the, to the city?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, Audrey, take your presentation down so that we can share.
Hi, thank you so much. So my first, well, my, my first concern about the, about the traffic study is the the, the flow of traffic and the amount of traffic, let me start there. It's really more of a, it's really more of a comment than, I don't know. This, it's for, it's about the traffic study, and that is we are in this, you know, we're in this COVID period, there are not a lot of people traveling to and from work, or that, the, the amount of traffic has been reduced. And so I'm just wondering about the accuracy, not only for this particular project, but for, we have a Spence Road project, I know we have other projects coming up next week. And I'm just wondering how we, how are we factoring in the fact that traffic flows right now are, are significantly decreased from what they might normally be?
I can respond to that. The traffic analysis and all traffic engineers now are using historical data that was set forth in, on page nine of the traffic study where they talked about what the volumes are. They did have traffic collection themselves in August of 2020, but they also used traffic information from other, from the GDOT's website or Planning Office, should I say, from 2018, as noted. And all of the traffic engineers are using kind of merging old data, historical data along with the new traffic counts in order to establish what the traffic generation is in the particular area.
Miss Battle, can I, can I, you were mentioning, I want to just add to that. You know, when you're doing, it is, it is the, important to know that in senior facilities, that people age in place. And having, having said that, Ms. Battle, could you tell me how many, I mean, from your study, how many trips going to be generated from that location?
I'm pulling that information up now. They anticipate a total daily trips of four hundred and seven, daily trips for the one hundred and ten units. During peak time, eight will enter, fourteen will exit. During PM peak time, sixteen will enter, thirteen will exit.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Khalid. I just think that's important to know, because anytime we do a zoning, it generates what we call trips based on, based on data. So I'm sorry, but go ahead.
All right, thank you. My next question is, or my next comment is that I really do hope that we can get a light there and that we can line up with Peter Street. I did hear our staff say that they, and, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that you had looked at a light and that a light was not necessary. I, I do want to say that just about two weeks ago, there have been quite a few accidents here at this intersection of Peters and Jonesboro Road, and speed really is an issue. The, the closest light is here at Buffington Road, but then after Buffington Road, for about three or four miles all the way to Old National Highway down here, there is no light between Buffington Road and Old National Highway. And as someone who travels that frequently, it opens up. After, after you pass that light, you can do sixty, seventy, eighty miles on this open stretch that is mostly undeveloped all the way to Old National Highway. And so, could, I, I, I wanted the staff to speak to why they saw no need for a traffic light, or that it was, yeah.
Well, I will say that I am not a traffic engineer, so we would, I would always defer to what any traffic study says in the plate and, and what recommendations they, they give. So I couldn't really comment as to the, the need or desire for a light there. If, if there is a need or desire for a light, that's a sort of a separate conversation to have, but lining up with Peters Road would certainly help that, that case be made. I think in the original plan, where the entrance was offset, it's harder to do that because your, the intersection you create there is not, it doesn't line up, it doesn't really make any sense. But as I said, there is a new plan submitted that lines up to Peters Road. And if a light was warranted, and I'm not sure if, who the owner of the road is, I don't believe that's a city street. Also, there may be a discussion.
It is a G. I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, so there may be a bigger discussion we had about, about putting a light there. But if it was determined, it would obviously be something that could be installed.
All right, well, thank you so much. I, I mean, I'm definitely in favor of the project. I definitely think we need senior housing, but I would love to see, I want to make sure the, the few seniors that are turning out on that super Peter highway, you know, do feel safe.
Councilmember, I would like to say that page forty-nine, and this is for Nathan as well, of the traffic study is the traffic warrant light study, which is warranted under current conditions. And certainly that can be turned into GDOT, as this is a GDOT road, and they would have to approve any light and install that light.
That would be awesome. Thank you so much.
Let me, let me make a comment here. Ms. Gilliard, are you on?
Yes.
You remember on Highway ninety-two, when we were trying to get a red light on, on Jones Road?
Yes.
And they told us that distance requirement would be a problem.
Right.
But they finally gave it to us on, on the other, on the other end, right?
Right.
And I'm saying that to make a point. You remember when Union City put up the warehouse?
Yes.
Remember that? So what happened then? They put that light up immediately, didn't they?
Exactly.
There was no, there was no requirements, no, no, no lineage requirements or anything. So what am I saying? I'm saying is, on state highways, when you start putting stuff in like this, it forces the state to comply with the traffic. So I just want to add that to it. We can continue to work with the state and continue to, to push, to push that light there, okay? Let me get, thank you, Ms. Gilliard, for bringing that up, yes.
Mayor, this is Attorney Walker. Can I comment on what you just said?
Yeah.
Yeah, you may want to consider proposing, if it's not already a condition, that it be a condition of lining up the road, because the applicant can do that, and I think that would increase the likelihood of GDOT allowing a traffic light there in the future.
Thank you, Ms., thank you. attorney, I think you're, you're perfectly right, and we can do that at the time we vote. Thank you so much. Ms. Willis?
Yes, I just want to clarify one thing about that light on Jones Road and Highway ninety-two. Because we all did go down to GDOT to speak with them concerning advocating for that traffic light, and it was the red.
What happened?
Councilmember Willis, you've muted yourself.
I'm sorry. I was saying that it was the residents in the area who advocated for the roundabout versus the traffic light, because the traffic would have backed up on Jones Road. And I sent the study out to all of the residents in the area. Ms., Attorney Battle did mention early on in the presentation that the study did call for a light, and they will do everything to work with GDOT to make sure the light was there. So this, I just want to clarify that, because it was stated that the study did call for a light. Question thing I have, I mean, where is this located? I'm just trying to get a bearing, off of Jones, Jonesboro Road. Can you give me a marker?
On the site plan, if you're coming down eighty-five through where most of the dealerships are, and go past Buffington, and keep on the, it would be on the left side of the road.
Okay, is it not?
At the edge, we're literally right next door. Our property lies next door to Union City's boundary.
Okay, and the other question, I mean, the other thing I want to clarify. Okay. And the, uh, other question, I mean, the other thing I want to clarify, Mr. Venable stated that want to age in place in the city, and that is, uh, far beyond the truth. Uh, we did an economic development strategic plan. We, um, also did a strategic plan, and the data came back that, um, this overall city fastest growing population is seniors. We're in desperate need of senior amenities. And most seniors, um, desire, um, senior housing and senior amenities because the homes that they have are becoming, um, overwhelming to upkeep. And that reflects in a lot of the code enforcement, uh, cases that we get, um, especially in my area. I hear a lot of seniors get cited for code enforcement violations, and there are situations where they can't afford to really upkeep their homes, but they have not sold their homes because they love the area. They've been here their entire life. And they really want to age in the community, not necessarily age in a home that they have, but they want to age in the community. And unfortunately, we don't have the senior amenities to accommodate that. And so we have, we are losing seniors. We are losing seniors to, um, places where they can't accommodate them with the senior. We, we lost a council member in Chat Hills because he wants to move to Athens, Georgia, um, where they can accommodate, um, his senior needs. We lost a reputable senior here in City of Fulton, right out of District Seven. Um, that senior is moving to, um, Buckhead, he and his wife. So, because they, they have senior amenities and medical facilities that will accommodate them. And so, um, I would ask that, you know, no, I just wanted to correct that false narrative. Most seniors want to age in the region, but they do not want to age in the homes. They prefer to have senior amenities and places where there is less upkeep. Um, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Willis. Ms. Row.
Thank you. Uh, a couple of questions. I do think we need to get some kind of feedback from GDOT. Having, um, worked on a number of projects to try to get, um, approvals from GDOT can be very challenging. And sometimes they will tell you flat out, no. Um, and it, um, I'm also interested in the cost of the traffic light. Um, as you know, we, as a city, made improvements on Hamilton Road, which is also a state road to deal with safety issues around Sandtown Middle School. And, um, that, you know, that was not something slated, uh, that the state had slated for that area. And so the city stepped up and did it. So I want, um, some kind of clarity on that traffic light. If it's calling for it and who's going to pay for it, I too support a condition that, uh, it'd be aligned with Peters Road. And then I have a couple of questions. Are there sidewalks around this entire property? And, um, is this a tax credit deal? And what are the price points for the units?
Um, there are, sorry. There are, um, sidewalks, um, required along the frontage on Jonesboro, so that will allow for connectivity into any, uh, future projects, um, that would also be required to have sidewalks. Um, um, in terms of price ports, I would have to ask Carrie, um, to, uh, provide us with what the rentals, uh, rates will be. If she can unmute herself.
Um, um, yeah, I'm here. Um, it's one and two bedrooms. And the price point for, as of right now, and this can change getting closer to, um, twenty twenty-one, but, um, as of right now, the price point for one bedroom is about seven fifty. And it is, um, approximately, um, eight seventy-five to nine hundred for, um, a two-bedroom. And yes, it is tax credit. It is a bond, it is a bond deal, a four percent bond deal.
Okay, ma'am, okay, thank you.
Yes.
There, Ms. Row.
Yes.
Mr. Reeves.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you so much. Uh, thank you, young lady, for the presentation. Um, I have a couple of questions. Is one, this is, um, senior housing, this will be forever senior housing today. Fifty years from now, it'll still be senior housing, correct? Okay, and then for our staff recommend, for our staff, uh, because of course it was posed, and I just wanted for the record, uh, does this development violate our land use plan?
So the answer is yes. It technically goes against the current land use plan. All the recommendations for this area are for single-family, um, and, and multifamily, uh, if you consider townhomes to be multifamily, but, so the options are single-family of various densities, but given the um, development type and the road that it faces, that's why the recommendation for approval, uh, was, um, was forwarded.
What, what they have to do to get in compliance with the land use plan?
Well, so we, Ms. Battle is correct. We do not have a formal process to change our land use map right now. It's something we, uh, definitely could and should look into. I would imagine, though, that during our comprehensive planning process over the next, it'll be fifteen months or so, um, we will make some changes to the future land use map because that's just a natural, um, um, part of that process, a natural, uh, sort of accessory activity to comprehensive planning, um, updates. So I, we, internally, we should develop a process to do that, you know, on an, on an as-needed basis. But I would anticipate changes to that map, um, over the coming year and a half or so anyway.
Yeah, Mr. Lombardo, I'd like to jump in on that. I think that's one, uh, important piece of the council's, uh, pending, uh, comprehensive plan update is that that's the, you know, you inherited a kind of incorporated the counties, and so through, um, your changes to it, you'll actually likely not only change those, uh, land use maps, but other key areas of the comp plan that you want to change. So in the interim, I think what staff is recommendation is, is to do it on a one-off basis, um, but we can create a process for applications, although I, I think you may want to do it almost on a one-off basis and keep the number of those type of changes very low until you as a body have an opportunity to fully evaluate all land uses. Okay, okay. And, uh, I, well, thank you for that, uh, 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 Mr. Donald, and, uh, well, and I do know that we do need senior housing, and so, uh, this sits in District Seven, correct?
I think it does.
Yes, it is. I mean, but I'm just not in the queue.
Right, right, right. Well, I will just, I will, I will, I will follow the lead of, of the council member. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, I was muted. It is District Seven.
Okay. All right, uh, we have Ms. Gums followed by Mr. Baker, then Ms. Gilley.
So, um, thank you, Mayor, for recognizing me. Um, so I just have a couple of questions, kind of extended off of, um, Councilwoman Row. So what is the age requirement for the seniors to, uh, qualify to live in this, uh, property?
Following the S, um, SH, uh, district requirements, it is sixty-two and older only.
Two and older, okay. Um, and you also are saying that it's market rent and not income base?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Carrie to respond to that, um, because some income requirement with, uh, it being affordable housing. So, um, Carrie, could you respond to that more specifically?
Yes, this is going to be, um, income-based. It, it will have income restrictions on it.
Okay, so, and you said the, I guess the top of the rent would be for one bedroom, seven hundred? And?
It's a, a, around there. It's going to be about seven fifty for a one-bedroom.
So what it, so what is, can you give me a baseline of what the income requirement would be?
Um, I believe for twenty twenty, which is the last HUD, um, requirements, they were, um, for your area, it was about thirty-three thousand, and it went on up to about forty-five thousand.
Okay, and sixty-two and up. Um, okay. And will transportation be provided, um, for the seniors? Like, will you have transportation?
Yes, we, we normally make sure that there is some type of transportation. Um, and, um, usually we try to work with like a senior center or something like that. And I know y'all said that there's not one, but we try to work somehow with, with something local. We don't provide the, the tran- transportation um, from our facility, but we always try to make sure that there is, you know, somebody in the area that provides it, whether it's with the county, with, with someone. So I know Fulton County, um, you know, has some type of transportation. So we make sure that our, we have full-time managers on site, and we make sure that they can get to doctor's appointments and things like that. So yes, we will make sure that there is some type of on-call transportation for them.
Okay, and I'm not familiar as far as with the location, but I'm assuming that there are bus stops that are in close proximity to the property?
I, I'm not sure how close. Um, it's, it's, you know, pretty far around the corner, but yes, um, there, I know there is one pretty, um, pretty close up there, yes.
Okay, and how many, um, parking spaces are, will the property have?
Uh, one hundred and fifty-seven.
There you go, Carrie.
I don't have it right in front of me. I think there's a hundred and fifty-seven and then a, eight handicap spaces.
Okay, and is this a gated community?
Um, I, I, I do believe we're going to put a gate on this one. Michelle, correct me if I'm wrong, there may be one on that sheet. Um, I think we decided to gate this one. And, you know, it may change depending on the light, you know, whether we put the light up there because you don't want to put a light and a gate and block them from coming in, and we may be able to put the gate a little bit further back. Um, that's all going to depend on, um, what kind of light it is and that kind of thing.
Okay. And then we also know that, um, having closed amenities such as grocery stores and pharmacies are, uh, the success to the property. Do you know if there are any within a three-mile?
Oh, yes, there's CVS and all the, all that kind of stuff right at the corner. Um, when you come up towards, I know there's some car dealerships right up there, but there's a CVS and, um, everything is right when you get to the top of the hill, right there on Jonesboro Road.
Okay. Um, and Councilwoman Row asks a question about the sidewalk, so, um, that completes my questions that I have.
Yes, the sidewalks, there's sidewalks all within the community and, um, you know, will, um, within the, in the fence and all of that kind of stuff, yes, there will be sidewalks.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yes.
Mayor.
Mr. Baker.
Thank you. Hi, um, this is a project that we're very excited about in our district. Um, however, during this unforeseen time that we're in, a lot of people have reached out to me, um, regarding this, uh, this project because they found out a little bit afterwards and the means in which they would be able to participate, get their questions answered. Uh, I love, uh, our attorney's suggestion, uh, and this has been one of the things that I've championed, uh, senior living. This is something that, uh, I am in favor of. However, I have to be, uh, as amenable to my constituents as possible, and therefore, as much as, um, everything sounds good right now, and we seem like we're really close, I have to allow, uh, a little bit more time for public feedback. And so at this time, I would like to make a motion to hold this item to our next zoning meeting. Uh, just so we can have and encourage a little bit more community engagement.
It's been properly moved and second discussion? Any discussion? Uh, one thing, uh, Madam, Madam Attorney?
Yes, Mayor.
I've heard, I heard a few conditions here, and I, and one of them was your condition, uh, to align the entrance, okay? I think that should go on the record. That should be a part, if we hold it, that should be a part of the, uh, condition when it come back, all right?
Okay.
Uh, the other thing is, uh, Ms. Gums bothered the gate community. Uh, Ms. Gums, do you, do you feel that there's a condition that, that you need to set forth on this property?
Well, I wasn't clear as if they're going to do one or not, but if it is going to be a light requirement, um, I don't know, we'll probably have to do a study or, you know, follow the lead of the council member, but I think gate is helpful.
Mr. Mayor, may I? Mayor, Mr. Mayor. Yes, that was one of the major concerns because to answer that question, uh, it's not a part of what people who are part of the initial Zoom, uh, saw. It's not a gate. So if, if that is something, and I didn't know that we had the ability to, to do that, to chime that way, but that would be something that the community would desire, a gate, as well as the approval or at least the beginning of the conversations with GDOT. We all know that we can't make GDOT do anything. We can't make, do it, but we, we could at least start the process of communication. This is a road that Councilman Collier advised, uh, I'm about to go down it now. And there's an accident almost, and I know our police department can attest to it. Uh, there's an accident there several times a week, and that Peters, uh, Road right turn or left turn has been proven to be deadly. Several fatalities. I've been going up and down this road for twenty years. And, uh, albeit it may be encouraged, once it comes, whatever we can do on the, on the forefront of it, uh, needs to be done.
Okay, so, thank you, Mr. Baker. So, Miss, Madam Clerk?
I, I haven't spoken.
Okay, Ms. Gilley, he made a motion. That's why he hadn't spoken yet. I was just trying to clear some things up.
All right.
Uh, the other thing was I wanted to make, be clear that, that the alignment, the alignment of the road would be a part of the, that's a condition. Secondly, the gate, the gated community be a discussion that needs to be brought back if this passes, all right? Uh, the other one I think is very important, should be a condition. I think transportation should be a condition uh, of the zoning. We were, we weren't too, it was kind of vague as to how they were going to move people around. I think we need a, 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 a stronger presentation on transportation. Uh, I think Ms. Gil, Ms. Gums also raised that issue. And, and lastly, I think that, uh, is not in the, uh, the, the presentation we had today, but if this passes and it comes back, uh, the second emergency exit should be duly noted.
Yes.
Uh, on the, on the, uh, presentation. And, uh, Ms. Ms. Gilley, I thank you for allowing me to say that you, you're in it.
Um, I just want to, um, I just want to make the point that, uh, related to a lot of the projects we're dealing with today, I've been going over the strategic plan. And so I just wanted to make the comment that early on, when we decided that we were going to develop a strategic plan, our focuses was on seniors. There is nothing in this strategic plan about seniors, nothing at all. I'm sitting here with it in my hand, uh, and I've been reading it for the past week. So, um, I'm hoping when it is updated that it will be included because there definitely is a need and there is a, a, the lack of, of senior housing. And I had a discussion with it about it yesterday, uh, with the chat project. Um, Fulton County doesn't have anywhere near the senior housing like Cobb, Cobb County is number one. And the cities in Cobb County have a lot of senior housing. So, um, I think that that's something that we need to focus on because, uh, that population is growing and there is a need. I don't have anything, uh, additional to add. I'm glad that it's being held to give, you know, others a chance uh, to weigh in on it. Um, but all of my questions have been answered. I just wanted to bring it about the strategic plan. I'm sitting here with our five goals.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Gil, thank you, Ms. Gilley. Uh, Madam Clerk, would you restate the motion, please?
Councilmember Baker, motion that the, that this application be held until the October twentieth meeting.
Second by whom?
Second by Councilmember Reeves.
Let's vote, please.
Councilmember Row. Councilmember Rowell.
Yes, aye.
Councilmember Gomes.
Aye.
Councilmember Willis.
Yes.
Councilmember Gillian.
Yes.
Councilmember Reeves.
Aye.
Councilmember Khalid.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Aye, aye.
Motion approved to hold till October twentieth.
Okay, I think that's a great decision. Uh, Madam Clerk, go ahead.
Next item, public hearing, council approval of rezoning case Z twenty dash zero zero four. From AG one to M one for warehouse development on, at eighty-one, eighty-five Spence Road, C D R A.
All right, if we could please get the presentation uh for the council.
Let me open the public hearing, Steph, go ahead.
All right, that's, there we go, and next slide, please. Uh, as, as a clerk, so this is at eighty-one, eighty-five Spence Road, the petitioner is asking from, to go from AG one to M one to uh develop a warehouse facility. Um, the surrounding area in the city of South Fulton, which we will see on our map, is zoned AG one, but there is some um M one industrial across the street and down the street. Um, uh, to note, there is major industrial development in the area, just on the other side of the city, city boundary, which you'll see in the. Overhead um aerial mapping. Um, staff recommendation is approval, um, the planning commission also voted for approval. We can go to the next slide, please. I think that some of the maps will help clear up um the situation on the ground. So on the zoning map on the left, you see the parcel. Um, is on AG one, it's the light blue square in the middle. You'll see on the aerial map, um, it is the pin drop right in the middle of the screen, but directly above it is a large, I believe it is a. A car auction facility, and then to the, to the left is a warehouse facility. Both of those are in the neighboring municipality, uh, and that is a street view right below. If we can go to the next slide, please. Um, this is via general warehouse and distribution facility. One uh note that I would like to make, that I'm sure the petitioner, who I know is on the call, will talk about is the flow of traffic. Um, all traffic flowing to this site will be coming from eighty-five. And all traffic flowing away from this site will be turning left onto Spence and going back to the highway. Any, there, there'll be no reason for any traffic at all, I'm sorry, going right and heading back to the highway. And there'd be no reason for any traffic at all to go left down Spence Road towards railroad tracks or towards um undeveloped areas. Those trucks would be extremely lost. Um, and I believe this is the last slide on this one, and if the petitioners would like to speak, that is the end of the staff presentation.
Open the public hearing, petitioner, you have ten minutes total.
My name is Harold Buckley, I'm with Wilson Brock and Erby, twenty-eight forty-nine Paces Ferry Road in Atlanta. I'm here today on behalf of the applicant Brian Cardoza, who is also on the line and available to answer questions. Uh, and before I get into the details of our individual development. I wanted to go back to something that uh, that AF said in its presentation. Which is our site sits right at the municipal limits between the city of South Fulton and the city of Fairburn. Um, and so that, I, I wanna go back to that because it ties into a question.
How are you, you mooted?
No, his system has frozen up.
Okay.
I know.
Is the.
Is the applicant there?
Yeah, they are both on the call, I'm not sure who was frozen or not.
This is Brian Cardoza with.
Fairburn and eighty-five is all zoned and designated for industrial use.
Uh, Mister, Mister Buckley, Mister Buckley, we missed all of what you just said, uh, you had, you, um, we lost, you lost connection.
Okay, I'm sorry, what uh, where did, where did you lose me?
The last thing we heard was you were talking about how this property um abuts Fairburn.
Okay, um, and so when you look at the Fairburn side of the line, you have several square miles that are zoned in.
That's not working.
No, he's cutting out again.
Yeah. Is Mister Cardoza there?
Yes, sir, I'm here, good morning.
Gilmore, why don't you, why don't you take us?
Yeah, what, what he's starting to talk about is although we, hey, Harold.
I'm back. Hello?
Yeah.
Pl- please forgive me, I have two uh students here in the house who are also online. And so between them in their classes and me doing this, apparently it's a strain on the system, I apologize. Um, but what I was, I'm saying is that local governments lose money. When it comes to single-family residential uh development, and they make their money in terms of surplus funds. For the, the general budget on the higher intensity uses, leading all the way up to industrial. And uh, for example, on this particular piece of property, the annual property tax is ten thousand dollars. Uh, which is a hundred thousand dollars over the course of a decade. After this warehouse, if it were approved, after this warehouse uh were built. That annual tax bill would go from ten thousand dollars to one point four million dollars every single year. Um, and that has a particular benefit for the school system because as a rule of thumb. About sixty percent of local property tax collections go to the school system. So of that one point four million, approximately eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars would go to the local school system. Uh, not only is that a big benefit for the school system at uh eight point five million dollars every ten years. But this development is not gonna put one single new student in the school system, so that's just found money. Uh, so those are the economics that we're talking about. Unfortunately, again, Fairburn is getting those benefits. Um, and what South Fulton is getting on its side of the line.
Mister Cardoza, why don't you take over for now? Um, Mister Buckley, why don't you just call in over the phone? That's what I have to do to make the Zoom work, because I have the same issue with my computer, and you won't cut out at that point.
Okay, well, I think he, this is Brian Cardoza, good morning. I think he's just made the case for. Um, the, you know, the tax revenues that are generated on a development like this. Um, he's, I provided him the information for him to run that, those stats, so if he gets back to us, he can get into any more.
I'm here.
Okay.
I'm here.
Uh, we're hearing you, Harold, a little bit about the um economic impact that this development has.
Right, and I was just saying, this isn't gonna put a single in the school system, even though it's gonna generate eight point five million dollars over the course of ten years, every ten years. Uh, and so that is the case for why this is good for the city of South Fulton in this circumstance. Uh, the other reason is because um while you have mixed development in the area.
Mister Buckley, why don't you call in over the phone and you'll stop cutting out?
Yeah, we need to do something.
Mister Cardoza, go right ahead, because we're running out of time.
Okay.
Mister Cardoza?
Yes, sir, okay. So what I'd like to do is, is now, I think you heard the argument for the economic impact, I won't continue on with that, but. Um, I'd like to talk specifically about the project. Two hundred fifty thousand square foot facility, and as Nathan mentioned earlier. Um, our traffic, based on the traffic analysis report we received, shows traffic going away from. Uh, the, the residents, um, going towards Oakley, which will get you to uh Jonesboro Road to Interstate eighty-five. Um, we have provided buffer a- around our property. Um, we do not get into any of the, we had environmental analysis done, we do not get into any of the. Wetlands or streams that are shown to the west on this plan. Um, surrounding us to the north and to the west, again, Plan North, Plan West. Or other industrial zone facilities, uh, so we feel like that this zoning request. Is one we're asking for you to approve. Now, it, I can continue on about it, but if, I know you say we're running out of time, I'd like to try to answer questions for anybody. Um.
Okay, let me do this, uh, do we have anything from the, the other side, Madam Clerk?
Uh, yes, Mayor and Council, there are ten public hearing cards against this project.
Go ahead.
Okay, the first one is Vanetta Thomas, eighty-two forty Spence Road. I am requesting that the entire city council deny this request to rezone the property at eighty-one, eighty-five Spence Road. Fafay community today is maybe half the size it was before Fairburn and Union City came in. An annex part of our community so that they could build warehouses. There was no real concern about traffic issues, issues that come with all the big trucks coming and going day and night. We have people that have a hard time getting from home to the expressway in the mornings because of so many trucks. Lined up trying to turn into the warehouses on Highway ninety-two. Fafay is being crowded out. We are bound by Fayette. Fayette County on one side and on the three sides by warehouses on Oakley Industrial and Highway ninety-two. Is that the long-term plan for our community? To crowd us out and make us give up our homes, our way of life? When CSX blocks all four railroad crossings in our neighborhood, which happens every day. Traffic backs up sometime for a half a mile, blocking driveways and preventing residents from leaving home or returning home. Warehouses and all the traffic they bring are a safety issue, as well as an issue of air quality. And of course, there is the noise and lights. We already get that day and night from Adesha on Oakley Industrial. Loudspeakers all night calling across their yard and lights shining through our homes all night. Now we all know that these problems cannot be eliminated. A warehouse cannot operate without them. Our homes are our refuge, our place of peace and comfort. A soft place to land to escape all the negative energy we all face every day. I am asking each of you to think about that. Are you willing to destroy the peace we have in our homes? Your vote today will be an answer to that question. Number two, Randy Cox, eighty-two hundred Spence Road. Good day, wow, another, I need more fresh air, not storage space for stuff we cannot do without. We can do without and or trucks driven by poorly trained drivers. And paved lots that suck life from our green space. Enough. Build at the interstate. How can we safely raise our grandchildren in such a guarded, treacherous, fearful environment? My house is at eighty-two hundred Spence Road. My eighty-three year mother at eighty-sixty, the curve. Between the train blocking the road and the speed the curve has brought us. It is tremendous strain to know another crowded area is being shoved down our throats with more chaos. And on a road that cannot sustain such transit. The small challenge bridge is not fit for the traffic such. Such would bring, and the curb has encouraged speedsters to drive flat out challenging. What little peace we are grasping for. Only a few, only a new four lane would handle the dangers set forth in our futures. And nobody wants to live in that neighborhood. I lived in Fafay for thirty-six years. And for the past five years have been threatened by faster-moving traffic, trucks and vehicles from Fayetteville Road intersection. Traffic from turnarounds has destroyed my driveway, and the streets are in need of major repair. Is there no peace for Fafay anymore? I vote absolutely no for anything but a nature park and pond placed on the land site in question. Thank you for the vent space, Randy and Kathy Cox. Number three, Parker Long, forty-six fifty Gordon Street, District Seven. I am a resident of District Seven and have a background in both commercial construction and historic preservation. I oppose development at eighty-one, eighty-five Spence Road into a distribution center. The site is zoned agricultural and contributes to the rural character of the historic Fafay community. This character has slowly degraded by introducing auto auctions, auto auctions, warehouses and distribution centers. Within a one-mile radius of the historic center of the community. Once lost, the rural character of the community cannot be reinstated. It is lost forever. Furthermore, the massive increase in imperious paving would have destructive environmental implications. On White Water Creek with more significant volumes of surface runoff. Many of the households in the surrounding areas are on well water and depend on the surrounding vegetation. To hold the segment and filter the groundwater used in our homes. Increased segmentation during construction and the future automotive runoff. Would not bode well with the community's health. Concerning traffic flow, the ninety-two Spence Road corridor is not equipped to handle the current traffic. Of trucks, and this distribution center would exacerbate the situation. Trains on the CSX line frequently stop to make car changes of the line. And effectively stop the flow of vehicular traffic at a surrounding railroad crossing for extended periods. Sometimes hours at times. I strongly request that you do not approve the rezoning of this parcel. Number four, Karen Matijin, forty-six hundred Elgin Street, Fairburn. Attention honorable, city of South Fulton council members. I feel exactly the same way as Drew Deman, who lives behind me at forty-six forty Gordon Street. So I'm, I'm reposting his words. I strongly oppose the building of distribution center at eighty-one, eighty-five Spence. The plan as to, as it stands seeks to squeeze out one or more of the countless massive warehouses. And even larger parking lots already spiraling across the area. Almost every lot of any size in this area is zoned A one. It is agriculture, and for that reason, each time a massive area, often fifty acres plus. Is cleared, graded and paved, the hydrolog- hydro- hydrological. Of the area is significantly impacted. It adds up. Water is life. Water and soil health are cr- critical. When we run out of one of these things, it's all over. Food systems in this country are precarious and local farms providing healthy food to urban areas. Is as strategic as it is mortal. Every day and night from my house, I can hear semis backing at the most recently constructed shipping facility. Which is about a half a mile from here. The fact is, industrial development has encroached far enough into land that was zoned for the purpose of producing food. Not shipping an endless stream of consumer goods. The land parcel in question, of course, is zoned A one. And though some of it has reverted to forest, it still does not, not warrant being paved. Right now, humans are reckoning with the causes of and solutions for climate change. And ecological catastrophe that will kill millions of people is looming. The era of cutting down massive swaths of trees for industrial development is over. We have reached a time when the necessity of preserving green space of all kinds has surpassed. That of shipping boxes using fossil fuels. We have done this before, and we will continue to organize and fight any development we see as harmful to the community. Or ec- ecology of this green agricultural and historic area of South Fulton. In the near future, science tells us, food production will have to be localized to reduce the carbon impact of feeding people. The Atlanta Metro era can, a prime example of what the sustainable cities of the future could look like. More diverse, smaller farms, close to cities that provide healthy food while minimizing shipping via fossil fuel. Furthermore, healthy forests and green space are needed everywhere. P.S. I moved here to farm and not live near a distribution center and have trucks flying up and down the streets. Number five, Drew Deman at forty-six forty Gordon.
Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir.
I think we get, I think we get, we're running out of time for you to read another one. I'm just gonna have, and I get, I get the gist of what Fife is saying. Let me, you have little time left, applicant. Did you want to respond to some of that?
Yes, sir, please. Again, I don't know if Harold was able to join, but this is Brian. I'll at least respond to some and then give Harold some time. We've heard these concerns and take them into account. We are a longtime developer in the Atlanta area and have been around for fifty years, and we don't get to be around that long by not doing things the right way. Let me address the light shining. If you look at the position of our warehouse, they will shine directly to the woods and then to the auction. So that would be trucks if they came in in the evening or the early morning. We have a two-hundred-and-fifty-foot or so buffer to the right of our building. Again, we can put lights on our building that are direct down to the road or to the driveway or to the sidewalks where they don't shine out. And then to the left, we've got a natural buffer, which leads me to my next comment about the environment. Again, I said earlier, we don't stay around for fifty years when we do things the wrong way. We have already done an environmental analysis to understand the site. We will go through any and report, do anything we have to do through the permitting process that's required by the city of South Fulton, by the county, or by the state, or even the feds. So in order to get our permit, we'll have to comply. CSX, we can't control what they do, obviously, but again, we mentioned earlier that our traffic goes in the other direction. So I don't think our project assists with further traffic up the road where CSX rail line is. Our trucks would have zero reason to turn out of there, and what we'd be willing to do is even to put no left turn signs at our driveways for trucks to not go that way. I think that's, oh, one more thing, please. Let me just say one more thing real quick, Harold. On the traffic, we did have an analysis done, and we expect, you know, the peak hours, fifty-six vehicles AM, peak hours PM are fifty-eight. So not a large number. So with that, Harold?
Well, and to clarify those traffic study numbers, that's the number of trips for all vehicles expected to go into that site, not just the trucks, which emphasizes even further, you know, the relatively speaking, small volume of trucks that'll be entering and leaving this facility. And then the one thing I wanted to circle back to was that in addition to the property tax benefits that I was trying to summarize earlier, this development would also spin off a significant amount of ad valorem tax, which would be paid on the inventory that's held there. And then in terms of job creation, this facility would create a significant number. Similar-sized facilities, in our experience, generate about one-hundred-and-twenty-five to one-hundred-and-fifty construction jobs, which are temporary, but they're still jobs. But then, when you look at the permanent jobs generated, that's about two-hundred-and-fifty jobs. There was an article on the front page of the AJC just a few days ago, at the end of last week, talking about these jobs and, number one, how important they are because they give people an alternative who have lost their prior positions due to the COVID pandemic, and they're well-paying with the jobs in warehousing starting roughly around fifteen dollars an hour, which is about forty-five, forty-eight thousand dollars a year. So for those reasons, oh, and the last thing I wanted to point out was to supplement our response to the environmental concerns, we did commission an environmental study, and the environmental study, which we did submit to the planning office, showed that our proposed facility would not would not have a negative environmental impact on the site at all and indirectly, therefore, not have any negative environmental impacts that are measurable on the community surrounding. I assume with that, we'll wrap up and take any questions.
Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Let me just, Mr. Baker, hold for a minute. I got, let me just say a few things. One is, I find it very interesting that we start this conversation zoning off with a monetary economic impact to the city without saying anything about the issue of quality of life, which goes on, which is a part of economic development. Many years ago, there was a little city, the lower part of Fulton County, an historic city, and it was called Fife. And Fife endured a lot of hardships from environment of a plant that was in that area. And I can say to you today, I can't prove it, there need to be people in Fife probably, but some people lost their lives with the environmental impact of that plant, and that plant made national news. The, I have some concern, and I always will, and I'll say this to you. I don't have a vote, but I always will protect the community of Fife. The historical, they have been a great community. If there was a fire today, we gotta go through two cities just to get to them. And so, I think we gotta get beyond the fact, oh, I understand the money. I understand you go for ten thousand to a million something. I understand all of that. But there's gotta be something that, if it can't be worked out with Fife to lessen their environmental impact, it really doesn't mean much to me. I just wanna make that, wanna make that clear. Quality of life was not mentioned, and I have some concern with that. Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Let me, let me see if I can correct the statement that was made on inventory inside the building. We don't get taxed on that, do we?
Well, if they are, if they have not enacted the Freeport legislation, then we actually would receive some type of taxable revenues, which we would actually be eligible for. I would defer to the city treasurer, but yes, sir, you should.
Okay, so my point is that Freeport only was given only to Fulton Industrial?
No, but you still, it's not automatic. You would, you have to apply for it to actually be able to receive it. And I believe that the resolution, if I'm not mistaken, has to be renewed annually, and the council has not made a decision on if they're gonna renew it.
Okay, thank you. Last comment from me.
I corrected it to make it permanent, but I don't have it in front of me.
Yeah. Last comment from me, and I bring Mr. Baker on. You know, one thing I can tell you guys, and Harold, I've been knowing you a long time. Listen, truckers don't listen. I don't care what you put up. I don't care what signs or graphics. Truckers don't listen. Ms. Willis? Councilwoman Willis? Are you on?
Yes, sir.
You know for a fact. You know for a fact, and you're living right there next to a warehouse that was, that was done in Union City. And right down your house right now, no matter how much signage you put on, you still got trucks. Am I right?
Yep.
Thank you so much.
And the warehouse, and the mayor, the warehouse that's built behind me is very disturbing to my night sleep.
Okay, thank you so much. But I just wanna make that point. I don't know what we can do to get, to get people to listen or to read signs. We put in road restrictions. We put in signs. We put in lights. We've done everything. Truckers do not listen. And as a result of that, it weighs heavy on our police department because we gotta come in and enforce that stuff, and it weighs hard on our communities because our communities, even though they know they're wrong, when they're wrong, they make a heavy impact on our existing communities. Those are my concerns, and at this time, I'll acknowledge Mr. Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for saying everything that I wanted to say. We, we've had this conversation several times. And when I say everything that I wanted to say, you really hit the nail on the head. I mean, the conversation really did start about money, which which was close to troubling for me, I would say. You know, the best way I could put it is it's just troubling when we talk about the money first, knowing this community and the historic value of it. But we have residents in general who, I mean, we know that all money isn't good money, for one, regardless. That's why we're fighting to bring good economic development to our city. But we have residents who have quarter-million-dollar houses, you know, and, you know, as well as the intrinsic moral value that you spoke about, Mr. Mayor, regarding the historic Fife community. I know Ms. Vanetta. I know Ms. Liz especially. Like, they've shown me the houses that they've moved across the train tracks that they can't get back across when, see, when the tracks are, you know, are blocked. And it's like, we're constantly, constantly imposing on this community. I have been working closely with Director Reed, as well as our city attorney, and I was hoping that before this came up, we had something in place to protect not just this community, but starting with this community, but other historically valued communities in our city. But at this time, I don't wanna just keep going on and on because I can't. I have not only those ten public comments, I have a ton of letters as well from almost everybody in that community. And I would like to deny, make a motion to deny this project.
Second.
And second, any further discussion?
Yes, I have, I have some comments.
Go ahead.
I'm sitting here looking, I'm sitting here looking at the map. And everything around the M-one industrial zoning is AG1. I mean, smack dab in the middle of a community. And so, number one, you can't buffer air pollution. Number two, the city of South Fulton has an opportunity to be a leader, and we talked about it almost from day one, that industrial development is great. You need to make sure where it is placed, that it does not impact, there is no environmental impact to the surrounding community. We have an environmental justice ordinance that we approve to protect people from environmental stressors. The community has let us know this is a stressor. You can look at the map and see this stuff is sitting dead in the middle of it. And if anyone is really interested, and I'm so glad that I found this, the Council of Concerned Scientists have a blog on their website, warehouses and the impact on communities. Finally, there is one that is published about it. It was really difficult to find, and it is a student that is doing his graduate work. He's doing either his thesis or dissertation on it. And so it is a model that we can use. There is definitely an air pollution issue. So you can't weigh air pollution on one side with dollars on the other. So those are my comments.
I'm in the queue, Mayor. I mean, I don't know who else is in the queue.
Me too.
Mr. Mayor? Are you there? Okay, Councilmember Reeves and Councilmember Willis.
Yes, thank you, Councilwoman Gillyar, for that information, and I would like for you to send me that article. But beforehand, the late-grade Emma Darnell had a study done in this whole region, an impact study on the smoking pollution caused by trucks due to warehouses. And that director predicts, the environmental study, they've said that it does not affect this community and will not affect this community. Every single resident in the city of South Fulton has an issue with this because we are surrounded with cities who build warehouses, and we're one of them. And so, that being said, that our environmental, my air quality is already compromised, and so we can't be willing to compromise it anymore. And the pollution, depending on what way the wind blows, is more areas will get affected than others. Thank you.
Councilmember Willis?
Yes, and so, you know, I'm going back to the strategic plan that I am very familiar with, and I support it and I voted for, that is created for year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, and that outlines five goals: investing in development, developing strong teams, growing infrastructure, and solidifying finances; increasing community collaboration and quality of life; promoting economic development; creating efficient government. Now, what derived from this strategic plan was several other plans, such as the Economic Development Strategic Study, transportation studies. And in doing all of these plans, we always involve the community. We always have surveys instituted in these plans. And warehouses is what this community is adamantly against. I'm impacted by a warehouse personally. Every night I go to sleep, I hear trucks. I hear sounds. It's like, I feel like a spaceship is built behind my house with all of the beaming lights that we have to endure every night. It was done to me. I was not respected. I have, was not given any type of buffer. We endure trucks over here where I live. I would not put anyone in the situation that I am currently living in. And so, I, I mean, this is against our strategic plan. It's against our economic development study. And I just wish that, you know, developers, you know, really read what this city is all about. Read our strategic, read our economic plan. Because we are not about warehouses. We're not about destroying people quality of life. We're not all about the money. To us, all money is not good money. Thank you.
Councilmember Gums, I believe you're gonna have to step in as Mayor Procham. The mayor has been disconnected.
Okay. Do we have any more comments?
I'm back. Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead. Go ahead, Procham.
All right.
So there's one more comment in the queue.
And I believe we have a motion on the floor?
Yes, the motion by Councilmember Baker, second by Councilmember Willis, was to deny this rezoning.
Let's vote.
Councilmember Ral?
Nay.
Councilmember Gums?
Nay.
Councilmember Willis?
Nay.
Councilmember Gillyar?
Deny.
On order?
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am. I just want clarity, because we're saying nay, but the motion is to deny. So if we're voting nay, we're voting down the motion to deny.
Yeah, absolutely. Yes.
Councilmember Ral?
Yes.
Councilmember Gums?
Yes, deny.
Councilmember Willis?
Yes, deny.
Councilmember Gillyar?
Deny.
Councilmember Reeves?
Absolutely aye to deny.
Councilmember Colleen?
Water is life. Deny.
Councilmember Baker?
Thank you.
Motion approved to deny the rezoning.
All right.
Next item, Madam Clerk.
Next item is number eleven, public hearing, council approval of U-20, that's zero-zero-one, use permit for an existing church at thirty-five fifteen Buttonah Road.
Uh, staff?
Uh, staff?
All right, Mayor and Council, um, as we said here, this is thirty five fifteen Buttonah Road. This uh, petitioner is applying for a use permit for a church. The church is in existing use, um, but due to its zoning, it is nonconforming. Um, so I'm sure everyone has heard of the use or heard of this church rather. Um, but because of where they are, they just have needed a use permit they never have gotten. Um, the reason that they're deciding to go through this exercise right now is because they want to expand the property. Uh, we don't have any issues with their expansion, um, but they just wanted to get all their ducks in a row and get their um, permits taken care of uh, the proper way. So um, we certainly recommend approval as staff and Planning Commission recommended approval as well. We can go to the next slide, please. There we go. Um, you'll see the zoning uh, right there in the uh, on the left. Uh, the church is located in the uh, front part of that parcel there uh, on the overhead map. For some reason, the the Google Earth drive by car was not working today. So there's we don't have a drive by picture of the church there. And if we go to the next slide, please. Um, you can see the church is the is the pink builder, I'm sorry, the church. The church, I believe, is the blue building. And I know the the architect is on the plan or should be on the call to talk about or the the um, excuse my um, tongue tiedness, the petitioner. Um, but this is a an an overview of the expansion they want to do at the church. Um, and as we said, there'll be no issues with the expansion of the church, but they just want to make sure that their use permit uh, was taken care of properly. And the staff report is complete.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing. Is the petitioner here?
Yes, there I am.
Go ahead.
Good morning, Council and Mayor. Uh, my name is Matthew Zieg with CSC Design. Uh, we are working with Berean Bible Baptist Church and assisting them to uh, expand their current uh, campus on Buttonah Road. Um, we're requesting a special use or a a use permit in order to move ahead with this project. Um, like staff said, we were um, this this church has been uh, using this property in the same use um, for a a while. And um, in our research with both the city and Fulton County, we couldn't ever find that a use permit was issued. So before we moved forward, we wanted to go ahead and get this use permit um, issued so that we wouldn't run into this um, at a later date. Um, the project is located at thirty five fifteen Buttonah Road. Um, and like I said, it's it's currently um, being used as uh, Bereans um, facility for their services. Um, the the blue building on on the um, plan is their current sanctuary. Um, we have a plan in place, proposed plan in place to uh, build their new facility, which is shown in pink, and then repurpose uh, their existing sanctuary into a family center. Um, the proposed sanctuary is approximately sixteen thousand five hundred sixty square feet uh, with four hundred eighty eight fixed seats. Um, there will also be additional classrooms and uh, staff offices within that uh, the new uh, sanctuary building. Um, the the proposed uh, fellowship hall will be repurposed from the existing sanctuary and is roughly fifty two hundred square feet. Um, the project is within the Clifton Overlay District. Uh, we will uh, we we will adhere to all the overlay requirements. Um, we're not proposing any um, changes to the overlay. Uh, so both the site and the building will comply with the overlay. And um, Anthony Dixon from Berean is on the call. So if there's any questions, we'll be happy to answer. Thank you.
Okay, do we have any opposition, Madam Clerk?
There are no public comments for or against this project.
Want to order, Mayor?
What's your point of order?
We can't see the site and um, it's not also the the public can't either. So as they were as Nathan was talking to the talking through the presentation, um, your your counsel or the public was.
I got you. I got you. Is there a reason, Madam Clerk, why we can't, it won't come up?
Uh, it's up. Uh, well, it was up. Order, can you go back a couple of slides?
This is Nathan. I can see it on my screen.
We can.
I see it now. I didn't. I see it now. Can everyone see it?
We see it now.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it was, it was up.
Okay, is there any specific question you wanted to ask about it since you didn't see?
No, I just.
Okay, all right. Well, then I'm going to uh, close public hearing. Uh, one thing for me is that I appreciate this church going in and trying to make sure that they do it the right way. So many times people come in and assume that a certain zoning means they can do what they want to do. But thank you to this ch- church for not assuming and coming in and doing it the right way. Uh, any more discussion?
I have a discussion question.
Go ahead.
So um, of course, this church is located right across from me and I definitely support. My question though, um, in regards to traffic, as we know, um, they probably will get more increase in traffic with their permits and things that they're trying to do. Was there a D cell lane um, thought about and incorporating in this new project off of Buttonah Road?
Yes, ma'am. There there is a D cell lane uh, proposed and it's on that site plan.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Well, um, do we have any more questions in the queue, Mayor?
Uh, I don't see anybody else.
Okay, I would like to uh, make a motion to go ahead and approve.
Second.
Uh, this.
Let's get the motion all out first. Go ahead.
I would like to go ahead and make a motion to approve the use permit request for U two zero dash zero zero two.
Zero one.
Oh, zero one. I'm sorry.
All right. It's been properly moved the second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, Madam Clerk?
Mayor, we need a clarification because on this permit thing, it says U two zero 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 two as.
It does say that. It does say that, Madam Clerk.
There are two items for Buttonah Road. This one is U U twenty dash zero zero one.
I see it. I see it. I see it on the on the uh, agenda. This is zero zero one.
All right.
But you, all right?
Aye.
Councilmember Ralph?
Aye.
Councilmember Gums?
Aye.
Councilmember Willis?
Aye.
Councilmember Gillyard?
Yes.
Councilmember Reeves?
Aye.
Councilmember Colleen? Councilmember Colleen?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Motion passes to approve.
Next item, please.
Next item, public hearing, council approval of U twenty dash oh oh two. Use permit for a new daycare at thirty five fifteen Buttonah Road.
Yeah, I like.
All right, we can go ahead and go to the next slide. Um, as was noted, this is the same location as uh, was just discussed. Uh, it's a use permit for a daycare and that use um, requires a special permit. Um, as I said on bullet point three, which I took a little bit of uh, creative liberty, the business would undoubtedly be a benefit to the community here. Our recommendation is for approval and the Planning Commission voted for approval as well. Um, the next slide, I believe, is the same overhead. Uh, we didn't need to uh, to repeat these, the site. This is an exhibit as to what they're going to do inside of the building. And I will make a point that I'm sure will be addressed by the petitioner. Um, there was a discussion uh, about fire suppression and the need for that for this. Um, but the petitioner repurposed and redesigned, reengineered the inside of this site to have um, more accessibility to the existing um, emergency exits. And so no additional um, fire um, suppression is needed to have this use there. And the staff report is complete.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing. Uh, applicant?
Yes, good morning, Mayor. Good morning, City Council. Well, good afternoon. This is Keilia Smith from Ole Stotts Learning Center. And we are requesting a special use permit to be used at thirty five fifteen Buttonah Road, which is also Berean Bible Baptist Church. So basically, the daycare center will be using the fellowship hall. Uh, we will have dividers um, to divide the various age groups. And we plan to service um, children ages six weeks to twelve years old.
Okay. It, Madam Clerk, any opposition for or against?
No, there were none, none.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Uh, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve special use permit, U two zero dash zero zero two.
Second.
Probably moved in second. Any discussion? Let me check the queue right quick. Okay, hearing none. Madam Clerk, let's vote.
Councilmember Ralph?
Aye.
Councilmember Gums?
Aye.
Councilmember Willis?
Yes.
Councilmember Gillyard?
Yes.
Councilmember Reeves?
Aye.
Councilmember Colleen?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Motion approved to approve.
Uh, madam, madam, uh, Mayor Pro Tim?
Yes, Mayor.
Would you take over for a minute, Reeves?
Sure. All right. I think we're finished with public hearings. I don't know. Is there another one?
Yes, ma'am, that's it.
Mayor Pro Tim, is that, is it possible that we take a five minute break before we start our regular council meet um, meeting agenda?
Um, if you would like to put a motion on the floor?
I move that we take a five minute break. Um.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Let's vote.
Councilmember Ralph?
Aye.
Councilmember Gums?
Yes.
Councilmember Willis?
Yes.
Councilmember Gillyard?
Yes.
Councilmember Reeves?
Aye.
Councilmember Colleen?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Okay, a recess till twelve oh eight.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It's been moved and properly second. Can we vote?
Discussion.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Um, Madam Pro Tim, can you please ask everybody to put their phone on mute when they're not talking?
Councilwoman Willis, you just did. If everybody can please put your phone on mute. All right. So can we vote to reconvene?
Councilmember Ralph? Councilmember Ralph? Councilmember Gums?
Yes.
Councilmember Willis?
Yes.
Councilmember Gillyard? Councilmember Gillyard? Councilmember Reeves?
Aye.
Councilmember Colleen?
Aye.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Councilmember Gillyard?
Yes.
Councilmember Ralph? Motion passes to reconvene.
All right, so our next item of business?
The next item on the agenda is public comments. We have five public comments. The first comment is Pamela Harris at Lion Avenue, District One. What is the current status of the hundred and four million or so allowed it funds due to pay our city of South Fulton police officers from the COVID relief funds? They are due that money and are well deserved to receive it. Last September, the CFO has was placed under the CEO. Councilmember Ralph states that she's co-sponsoring legislation to remove the treasure position. If successful, who will oversee the funds? And lastly, where are the missing four point six million sidewalk funds from Fulton County that were supposed to follow Antonio Vanzuela? Comment number two, Gwen Foster, forty three forty five Melanie Lane, District Five. When will the law be enforced to stop tractor trailer trucks from using streets of limits to them? How many more warehouses are there going to be built in the city of South Fulton? And what is the count now? What are the benefits of them being in our city? What is the city going to do about trash all over the city? Comment three, Ron Booth, one oh five Norton Avenue, Southwest, District Two. The September eighth memorandum from the city manager to the mayor reads more like a nice to have list versus a need to have list. Please consider removing the following items from the FY twenty one proposed budget and handle this budget as good stewards of taxpayers. One, social media audit. Uh, item number one, communication and external affairs. Two, city calendar partnership with South Fulton Observer, nine thousand. Item number three, communication and external affairs. Three, travel, five thousand. Community development and regulatory affairs. Four, equipment furnishing and fixtures, fifty five thousand. Destination, South Fulton. Five, business development manager, ninety three thousand eight fifty nine point seventy three. Destination, South Fulton. Six, employee special events, fifty to fifty five thousand. Human resources. Seven, three Ford F three fifty crew cap, crew cap vehicles, a hundred and twenty thousand. Parks and Recreation and Cultural Affairs. Eight, passenger vans, sixty thousand. Parks and Recreation and Cultural Affairs. Nine, outdoor theater system, sixty thousand. Parks and Recreation and Cultural Affairs. Four, Jamie Lynn Blair, forty seven eighty five Gordon Street, District Seven. We here in Historic Faber and Care, please support us on keeping it safe, clean, and manicured. All of us are willing to work together to achieve these simple common goals for our community. I want children to be safe. I want to see trash picked up. Help me help the community along with my awesome neighbors. We support you, so please support us. May our tax dollars go to keeping our community clean and policing, serving fines to people who are disrespectful and not conforming. Number five, Charles Mitchell, thirty nine hundred, West, West Stubbs. I am opposed to the proposed planning ordinance, Planning Commission ordinance as written. The proposed ordinance does not provide for community input. The proposed ordinance would allow a few individuals and potentially developers to make decisions on the development of the city. Mayor Pro Tim and Council, that is the public comments.
Okay, all right, next item?
Next item is the chief financial, August financial report. Mr. Malazi?
Yes, Miss White, would you please bring up the report for August twenty twenty? If you would go to the second D, um, good afternoon, Mayor Pro Tim and the Council. This is our August financial report. I'm pleased to announce that the things are getting much better than we thought. However, that is not to undermine what we are going through. As you know, that we still don't know how things will be and when we go back to the our facilities. Not going back to our facilities, that means the limitation of services that we can uh, provide and get revenues. On the other hand, we have not missed apparel for all employees, whether they are teleworking or they are not doing anything. As long as they are employee citizens, they are being paid every time we have payroll. And we have not missed any uh, obligation, be it in contracts and the operating services. And when we say that everything is going better, remember we are not talking about. And when we say that everything is going better, remember we are not talking about the original adopted budget, but we are talking about the amended budget. So things are going well. Uh, we have also to remember that we have one month. September, how, we'll still be paying expenses until end of October for the previous year. So it may be a little uh more money, but we are still, we'll be still incurring expenses. And last month, we were told that our taxes will not be due until November the fifteenth, so we'll have one month without the uh revenue coming in, in terms of, as you say, taxes are biggest revenue. And we are all prepared for those, so you don't have to worry about that. We'll be cautioned, uh we'll be cushioned and we'll have enough to meet all those expenses. Now for August, uh our general fund revenues are more than expenses by twenty-two million dollars. So when we remove what we spent and the, what we received or what we have, as we have been talking and will keep on talking, that our cash flow revenues that we moved from twenty nineteen helped us to be where we are now. So in August, by end of August, we had the twenty-two point six million dollars more than the, what we spent. In total, we have received seventy-four million dollars. Our expenses are fifty-one million dollars. We will still be paying, we still have got the two months and another month that we'll still be paying in October. Uh, with one month remaining, we have much of what we need that will take us through, and the month is September. Property tax and the sales tax are the biggest source of revenues uh that account for twen- for the one percent, property tax and sales tax for about twenty-seven percent. These are the main sources of revenues. Uh, sales tax, property tax, hotel, motel, as well as business occupation. We're talking detail about property taxes because the majority of taxes are coming from residential uh instead of coming from commercial. Property tax and sales tax are for the one percent and twenty-seven percent respectively, as I've already said. All the revenues, we are going to meet our um projections of uh amended budget. Some will be hundred percent, some will go more than hundred percent. I would have another slide. So this is the summary of our revenues. Uh, property tax, we projected twenty-nine million dollars. We almost, we have already reached thirty million dollars. Everything here is amended. Motor vehicle, seven hundred, we have gone up to almost times two. Franchise fee, three point one million dollars, we are at three point three. Uh, local options taxes, is say we projected eighteen, we have gone to twenty. Uh, business occupation, one point six, we are one point seven. In all, we budgeted for amended at sixty-eight, and we have gone so far up to seventy-four. Next slide. This is the summary of our expenses. Uh, if you see at the bottom of the page is at fifty-one million dollars, revenue we have received seventy-four, and the expenses are at fifty-one. Remember, some of the payroll may not have entered there, so don't just see seventy, uh seventy-four. Uh, until we close the year, we exactly know how much we are, because some expenses we are paying in advance, some expenses that are behind invoices have not yet come, some invoices. Next slide. Uh, these are also revenues, the makeup of that seventy-four million dollars that I've described at the beginning. So we budgeted on the left-hand side, projected amended. And this uh next second from left is the, what we have received in the uh August, the bottom line is in August, we received the three point eight million dollars. Then the third from left is year-to-date, seventy-four million dollars, makeup of hundred percent. Next slide. This is the same revenues, but we are giving any um in chat, and you can see the first three or the three, the top three revenues. All of them are taxes. The first one is property tax. And the second one is the sales tax. Then you have other taxes. The rest of the revenues are minimal. And these are the three revenues that will affect us in the coming year. Because most of these ones will be basing on the what, how much we have done in twenty twenty, or how much they have been impacted in twenty twenty, be be, be it business or uh residential homes, some will be unable to pay taxes. So we will be affected, we just have to uh be very conservative in how we spend. Next slide. It's the same, the biggest one, as you see, property tax, uh thirty million. Then you have sales tax, twenty million. Then you have the next big one is other million on the left side, seven point six million dollars. The rest of them, the justice uh supplement. Next slide. These are us expenses, general fund, the top one, and other funds. So in other funds, we have confiscated, we have restricted E nine one one. We have hotel motel, T plus, capital grants, capital, and solid waste for a total of one hundred and six million dollars. Next slide. Year-to-date expenses are at seventy-five percent. Spending precautions have been made, as we have been talking every month, that we put in place fees that helped us to save some money. And also, we have out departments, or we have communicated to departments as we are nearing the close of the fiscal year uh to emit, uh to make sure that our credit cards usage, our uh P O's, yeah, usage, we have cut off, so that those cut off can help us to assess where expenses are, and we can take care of all other uh expenses before the end of the fiscal year. But we are confident that there will be no problem. We'll continue paying, we'll continue uh providing payroll to our employees up to the end of the fiscal year without any hiccup. Next slide. And this is a summary of our expenses, department by department, our government body are all put together. And it will also show at the end of it that you see column number three from left is that fifty-one million dollars at the bottom of the page, um which is a hundred percent. We have spent seventy-five percent. We are remaining with twenty-five percent for the close of the fiscal year, which will be three months. It may look like it's only two months, but it's three months, because there will be some expenses that we'll still be paying in October. So in other ways, we have uh uh some expenses in August, expenses in September, and there may still be some expenses of the fiscal year that we'll be paying in uh October. So we approximately still have got about three months. That's the twenty-five percent remaining expenditure. Next slide. The biggest expenditure as all other municipal governments uh or other businesses is in personnel. So then the next one will be operation, but personnel is the biggest one. And you will see that that's where we have done the good saving without compromising the service delivery. A budgeted at forty point one million dollars, so far we are about uh close to thirty million dollars. And on operations side, we budgeted at twenty-eight point six million dollars, we are about twenty-three million dollars. So we are doing very good. Next slide. And the same one, fifty-one percent of our expenses are in personnel, and twenty-four percent of our expenses are in the contract, contracts, as well as professional services. And lastly, is the surprise and others, uh which is seventeen percent. Uh, that's the area we have benefited a lot during this pandemic on the surprise, uh because the, we are limited on what we can use off-site. Next slide. Uh, this is also a summary of the expenditures on general fund as well of, as, well as the other funds. So we did at the three, uh hundred and three, bottom line. In the uh August, that's general fund and other funds, we spent the five point one million dollars so far. Other funds and general fund, uh year-to-date, we spent sixty-five point six million dollars by end of August. Next slide. Uh, these are letting, um letting you summaries. Uh, the way we have been impacted is not only us, it's all municipalities, it's all municipalities around the metro, Georgia, and across the country. But it depends, municipality by municipality, the effect that we have may not be the same if uh i- impact that other communities are facing. And as I've mentioned, we have been so lucky, we have not laid off anyone. Uh, we have not missed any payment. So our policies and procedures have worked very well. Uh, the freezing of hiring without compromising service delivery is one of them. Have strong financial reserve or financial, um that's a cash flow, having contingency, good fund, fund balance, and the controls of spending has the, made us to be where we are, and we will continue doing it the same way. Um. Then we have still to think about the future, because we really don't know how long we'll be into this. Uh, likely it will be more than another fiscal year to come. So what we have put in place, if we can just continue, uh we will make it and we'll do well. Next slide. Uh, business and occupational renewals will be somewhere, something that we should think about, because they are renewals, when they'll be renewing next year, April. It will be based on how much they are correcting this fiscal year, how much they are correcting now. So that's the area we should be putting on our eyes closely how it will be going. Hotel motel, again, it looks like businesses are picking up, but it will take long, long time that we will be at the speed of how it was uh prior to pandemic. And then we have some areas of our services that we are providing, that are basing on us providing those services. As those services are still suspended, we will have limitation of revenues or no revenues at all. Next slide, I think that's question and answers. I'll open up for uh questions and answers, but the city managers around the fee, he has any comment on this one, this is the time.
No, no real comments. I think the only thing I would highlight is that um I know we mentioned that definitely having missed payroll or any, you know, not close to any impact of any negative things on our contracts, staff, or anything of that nature, based on some good fiscal management and the guidance of our council. But I would want to clarify, we don't have any staff that are quote-unquote doing nothing. Everyone has been reassigned to a role, and so every staff member is operating and providing some level of service in exchange for their compensation. So we want to make sure that our messaging matches our actions.
Thank you, Mister Donald. Uh, I'll open up for council if you have any question or any comment.
Yes, I have a, I'm in the queue.
Madam Clark?
Yes, the only person I have right now in the queue is Councilmember Willis.
Councilwoman Willis.
Um, Mister Malazi. You mentioned that we are going to be impacted because of COVID nineteen with the uh three main um tax sources that we receive. I could see local option sales tax, because a lot of the businesses did have to shut down due to COVID. But the main source of our revenue was coming from property tax. And I, I, I'm are you anticipating a revenue shortfall in that area? Because even if we do have foreclosure issues where people are not able to pay their mortgages, um banks do own those homes, and they still continue to pay the property tax. So I guess my question is, where do you see the shortfall in that area? Like, you anticipate any property value fall? Where, where are you anticipating a shortfall?
Those foreclosures, some more, there are, some will be the abandoned houses, some there may be owners of the houses. So there are several factors, but we just have to be very careful on, with what we don't, we try to be very conservative. If you should be to be, there'll be nothing, that's but in taxes, we just make sure that we are not over budgeting, or we are not uh having like nothing will happen.
So even with the abandoned houses, if there's a mortgage on the house, or uh you know, our tax commissioner is collecting at a high rate of over ninety percent. Um, the mortgages are owned by banks. So I guess I'm trying to get an understanding of where you see the s- the shortfall in it.
So the taxes is inclusive. We have other taxes, which will be on the business licenses. Business licenses are part of taxes, tax. So we have more sales tax, we have property, I'm so, when I'm saying tax is inclusive, you can remove property tax, but the business license, they are part of our taxes, so it's
Mister Malazi, excuse me, I'm not trying to be rude, but I specifically horn in on property tax.
Councilmember Willis, I, I can likely help you out a little bit there. So when it comes to uh and kind of a best practice that has occurred in Fulton County, I think Commissioner Ferdinand uh has a reputation of connect, collecting at an almost ninety-six percent clip. Um, in touching base with, I can think of six city managers off the top of my head. I don't think I've talked to all fifteen um in the uh Fulton County um region, but I have talked to, well, actually, uh eight, because I, I forgot about Mister Regis and the gentleman at uh Sandy Springs, and so all of them are projecting um collections to drop to a little bit um closer to that ninety percent range. And so what Mister Malazi has done in our talks is kind of estimated that all of the collections would dip to ensure that the city is being uh extremely cautious in our revenue projections and being very accurate in our expenditure um collections. I'll defer to him on the specifics, but in general, that's how we've looked at things across the board.
Thank you, Mister Donald. And so my question is going back, and if you all need to get back with me on this answer, why would they, why would there be a dip in property taxes? Because even with the loss of homes, you know, most of the times those are foreclosures and financial institutions own those homes, and so the property tax would still be paid.
Well, the collections could defer because of one thing would be those federal programs that allow you to defer uh your mortgage, and yes, the property taxes would be paid, but the collection timeframes and things of that nature may be different. Again, I think it's not a, a realistic piece of everyone knowing what those collections would be, but I think the consensus has been that in the midst of a pandemic and a completely unknown uh fiscal environment, um the expectations is that the collections would dip slightly. And so, again, when you're doing your projections, you want to be extremely conservative on your revenues, and you want to be as accurate as possible on your expenditures, so that you are being as safe as possible with the coffers of the city. And so uh I think if, if you have a recommendation on how the treasurer's office might do it different, I'm certain he'd be um more than open to that. But I have seen in just checking in, because I had some similar questions, that other cities from around the region, their projections on revenues um are expected to take a dip across the board. And so most folks are doing somewhere around, uh again, I don't have those numbers in front of me, but I believe he collects at about ninety at about ninety six percent and folks have looked at um, dipping those projections down to closer than ninety. And so we've followed, again, I'll, I'll defer to the city treasurer who directly oversees that. But that is some of the um, uh, conversation and perceptions that we've had.
No, I thank you, Mr. Donald. I, I do um, understand that there will be a downside to overall collection. And I do understand the, 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 we will collect less local option sales tax and um, and I do understand hotel motel tax. I just wanted more clarity around specifically what our main source of revenue is property tax. And so uh, again, uh, I don't have any suggestions, I'm just seeking understanding.
Oh, that's fair.
I would ask that um, Mr. Malazi get with our tax commissioner and do a, uh, you know, figure out a proper proca- uh, forecast of that particular revenue um, stream, since that is our main revenue stream. And um, I just, I just want a better understanding of why there will be a shortfall in that area.
And so man, we is, yeah, you are right, there will be no uh, shortfall in property tax, but the correction rate is the one that we are basing on. So our forecast is based on the information that we get, we work with our colleagues and we see what we are happening. What we did, we forecasted last year, if you remember last year, our forecast was too high on the correction, but we had to adjust to that. So forecasting only reduced correction, it's a reduction of revenues. But should that revenue come beyond what we forecasted or beyond the correction rate that we put in place, which is ninety five? So if we put correction rate at ninety eight, now we have reduced to ninety five or ninety three, that's a reduction of forecasted revenues.
Thank you.
Anyone else that may have?
I'm in, I'm in the queue.
Okay.
Mayor Procham, council member Gilliard.
Um. One of the things that I think that um, that we're, that we are probably not thinking about is that we are in an unprecedented economic environment. We have no clue in terms of where the economy is going. And the economists, they, they sort of have somewhat of a, of a clue, but we've never experienced what we, we might be experience in the coming months and years to come. So if we look at two thousand and eight, all of the foreclosures that occurred and think about the banks, the banks had to be bailed out by the federal government. And that was when President Obama was in office. So we don't know what we are facing and is, and is, as much as we might try to um, put something together to sort of soften whatever the blow will be, we still can't be completely and totally accurate. We don't know what will happen with the mortgage companies and banks. We don't know what uh, will happen with the real estate market. And right now, if you talk to real estate folks, they will tell you there's a shortage of houses and some people still, some, it kind of sort of blows my mind, some people are still buying while other people are being set out on the pavement because they don't have jobs and can't pay their rent and can't buy any food. And so um, one, one of the things that I really do appreciate, um, and I, and, and I, I read it in Mr. Malazi's presentation. And he said, spending must be under control at all times and in line with revenue inflow from various sources across the city. And so for me, um, we need to be, we need to be careful how we're spending our money and we can't um, you know, spend every dime that, that we're going to or think we're going to, to bring in. And we can't um, spend all of the uh, contingent money. And, and we need to make sure that we have a cushion in this big unknown that we are facing. Thank you.
Mayor Procham, there's no one else in the queue.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Malazi, for your presentation.
Thank you so much.
Next item.
Next item is the city manager's August twenty twenty report and the transition post, transportation post-transition report.
Mr. Donald.
Yeah, good, well, good afternoon, uh, mayor and council, the mayor Procham and council, uh. Uh-oh, the transition uh, report is just on the agenda to officially transmit it uh, to the council. We won't necessarily go through it as we released it, um, both publicly posted it on the website and transmitted it to council directly. And so it's a part of the record and it's available for anyone who might have questions um, about it. As far as the city managers' report, um, the broader document again is also available on the website, which is a part of our uh, normal practice and has been included in the uh, agenda packets. Some highlights of activities uh, that I wanted to point out to the council, cover a few different service areas. And so one, I'd like to highlight uh, back in March, uh, actually March seventeenth of twenty twenty, uh, council approved uh, a five hundred and fifty seven thousand dollar expenditure uh, for the uh, the, the construction of the tennis court improvements. Um, those um, while they've been previously approved, I think at that time, we highlighted the staff was working with UTSA uh, on a grant initiative uh, so that we can actually supplement those costs and potentially relieve uh, any of the expenditures on the U R A. And so we've actually moved into the next phase of that where we have submitted that grant application to UTSA. Uh, it's for approximately a hundred and thirty six thousand dollars and there is no match to the city. So it didn't officially come back to you, but I did want to let you know that we have continued that process and we are on track um, to acquire those funds, which would reduce um, the fiscal obligation for that capital initiative by about a hundred and thirty six thousand dollars. In addition to that, the LED lighting upgrades for parks have been um, completed at all of the parks with the exception of Wilkerson Mill, and that one is actually now officially under construction. Uh, in regards to public works, um, I did want to highlight that we received about uh, two thousand work orders in August of, of twenty twenty. Um, and about ninety six per- percent of those are complete. We also had uh, thirteen hundred call center requests um, and about six hundred and sixty five C Click Fix requests, which are the, that combination of, of approximately uh, two thousand or work orders. Uh, what I am extremely excited to announce and want to make sure that I thank both uh, Mr. Valenzuela uh, as well as Mr. New and the whole Public Works team, as well as uh, CM Two Heel during businesses Jacobs, um, for us looking at an alternative approach to keep our city clean and enforce the multiple pieces of legislation uh, that the council has put in place. And so today we are announcing the rollout of the Clean City Crew. Uh, what this is, is our attempts to ensure we accelerate our work to mitigate illegal dumping uh, throughout the city. Uh, the purpose of this group is to not only clean areas, but also monitor areas where litter and illegal dumping have, you know, need to be mitigated. And so uh, not only will we be utilizing the cameras and the partnership with code enforcement, where I, I think you guys are all familiar with the sweeps that code enforcement and police do, we're adding an additional layer. And this is at no additional cost um, to our contract, but it's a way that we've kind of repurposed our agreement to attack those areas and issues that both the public and our council have identified. And so uh, we will ensure that we are reporting and mitigating illegal dumping much more aggressively. We will have public reports and also as we bring uh, folks who are caught doing illegal dumping, you know, to justice through our various uh, methods, we will publicly put those things out there that folks know how to handle tho- or how to address those things within the city. Uh, it also will help us, this crew will be equipped with knowledge and information, so they can educate our citizens on litter, dumping, our laws, our signs, and also some of our cleanup efforts in partnership with Merck Miles. Uh, right now, we're looking, uh, we will have in the initial pilot, which will take place um, for the first half of this year. Although we'll provide the service for the full year, for the first half of the year, we'll be looking at the pilot with about three staff members that would be dedicated solely to the collection of litter, education and mitigation throughout the city. Um, the initial route is being developed to address the hotspots based on the reports that we received out of our C Click Fix app. And so definitely want to encourage our residents to continue to utilize the app because the data that they are putting in has helped us kind of develop this solution. Um, these areas are actually, will be actually monitored on a daily and weekly schedule that we will not put out there publicly because our hope is to kind of catch people in the act, not just mitigate uh, the issue. In addition to that, um, we've started to automate the stone, the stormwater process um, where our staff has begun using the um, EnviroSite Quick View uh, Air HD Zoom Camera, uh, which takes pictures of up to about twenty five feet below ground. That has helped us to start addressing some of these stormwater issues that we inherited from those uh, uh, infrastructure, basically non uh, maintenance support that had been uh, provided by the county. And so these cameras allow our staff to see how the water is draining inside of the stormwater structures. We actually recently had uh, an issue in District Three that we're currently resolving and have started to use this technology and it's, it's definitely worked wonders and helped us to, to begin to mitigate these issues more quickly. Uh, during the last council meeting, uh, dirt roads were a very hot topic of conversation and just wanted to acknowledge that uh, towards the end of August and the beginning of September, Districts Two, Three and Four, dirt roads, excuse me, all received maintenance uh, during that time period with the maintenance um, being complete uh, around September twelve. I think another uh, area, there are two, two areas in which I will close with. One is that we are preparing to release a request for information, a R F I um, related to Wolf Creek Amphitheater operation. So you will uh, see that go out where we will be, we've received a lot of interest from some of the heavy hitters that I've talked to the council about uh, in private meetings. But uh, we will actually receive uh, that information uh, here shortly. I think we, we'll be putting it out for about forty five days, which aligns with uh, us receiving it prior to uh, taking over the facility in December. Uh, in addition to that, on Monday, uh, I and a small group um, of folks from education uh, uh, workforce development, as well as municipal services, will be meeting with the team at Hughes Falding to discuss and move forward your requests related to uh, looking at increasing medical uh, services in the city of South Fulton. And so we'll have our initial conversations at the staff level and then it is the intent to loop in our elected officials for not only a tour, but um, a presentation and proposal that we can make public. Uh, and then in closing, uh, one of the things I'm, I'm extremely excited about is uh, one of our pet projects to make sure that we are investing our staff uh, in a, in our recent report out on our public safety activities, we saw that uh, minority female leadership uh, has not reached the expected levels of a city, not only of our size, but with the progressive leadership that is available through our council. And so to mitigate that, we are investing in ensuring that we prepare uh, a dynamic group of, of uh, female minority leaders across the city. And so in partnership with Leader Gov, we will be uh, providing executive level leadership to, and a credential to ensure that uh, females across the city have an opportunity to rise into the ranks of leadership, of executive leadership uh, with the city of South Fulton. And so this first cohort um, exi- um, consists of eleven um, dynamic female leaders or potential leaders throughout the city. Uh, and so they don't know that they have been selected yet. And so this is um, the actual official announcement and notification will go out to them shortly. But uh, they are Sheena Screen from Communications and External Affairs, Christina Cummings from Community Development and Regulatory Affairs, Affairs, uh, Chantelle Francois from Destination South Fulton, Ms. Kelly Russell from Finance, who oversees our grant management activities, uh, Captain Andrea Hall uh, from South Fulton Fire Department, uh, Jeanette Bruce, also from the uh, South Fulton Fire Department, Ms. Latangela Hill from Human Resources, Ms. Chapin Payne, Deputy Director of Parks Recreation and Cultural Affairs, Ms. Lakita Ford from Parks Recreation and Cultural Affairs, uh, Solandia Avini uh, from Parks Recreation and Cultural Affairs and Major Tamika Pritchett uh, from the South Fulton Police Department. And so this consists of our first cohort in effort to ensure equity across all service areas within the city. Excited to uh, produce this uh, cohort in partnership with Leader Gov, a respected training uh, and development entity. And with that, that concludes the city manager's report uh, for today, Tuesday, September twenty second.
Okay, Ms. Willis, you're in the queue.
I am too.
Ms. Willis.
I'm sorry, I was on mute. Thank you for, Mr. Donald, for your report. I have two questions. Can you um, on the cleaning the city initiative, are you going to give a little bit more details? Is that a report or how that's going to work?
Yeah, so we actually, we provided a, a brief memorandum to the council earlier today. And actually, Mr. Leftwich and Mr. Valenzuela together will be reaching out to individual council members to not only give you an update on the activity, but also to set up um, a social distancing launch and um, photo activity event, so that you have all the tools you need to educate our residents on how we're responding to their needs.
Okay. And secondly, can you please expound on how we are financing the Wolf Creek Amphitheater? Um, you know, for the purposes of education, because there was some false narrative put out about that. And um, as the city manager of the city, I would like for you to clarify that. And also, if you can, direct communication to uh, put out information on how we are going to finance this uh, amphitheater.
Yeah, so we have already, the, the city uh, and, and the council, actually, about a year and a half ago in our last budget, um, uh, basically earmarked those funds in the contingency, they remain there uh, and they are available to acquire uh, Wolf Creek Amphitheater. But in addition to that, you know, we've been working with the county um, related to their use uh, because once we take it over, they will still, they still have an interest in providing testing and things of that nature. And so um, what is presumed to be our first revenue generating activity related to Wolf Creek Amphitheater is an I G A with the county to be able to deliver testing services. Uh, I think another area in which we'll be uh, addressing Wolf Creek is how and when we will make those payments. We are currently uh, having discussions. And well, I think that's probably more appropriate for executive session because it does involve uh, real estate.
I think so.
I, I would probably defer on going into that. And so while I would discourage folks from putting out any information that might not be uh, accurate or correct, I do think that it is appropriate to not put things out into uh, the, the public atmosphere until certain things are signed on a dotted line. But there's definitely funding available for Wolf Creek and we also have some options to um, reduce that obligation quite a bit. So uh, I, I hope that that answers your, your questions uh, enough.
It does. And one more thing I would like for you to clarify, there was another false narrative that was put out that's uh, mayor and council proposed to raise the meal rate at uh, uh, two percent. Um, and so when, when we went through the process of raising the meal rate, uh, we, we went offer a staff recommendation. And I, I don't recall two percent ever being in play. Do you, do you recall that, Mr. Donald? And, uh, I don't recall two percent ever being in play. Do you, do you recall that, Mr. Donald?
No, ma'am, so the proposed budget, um, was at the actual rollback rate. Uh, which would have basically had approximately, and I'll let Mr. Malazi clarify, but I think that was, uh. Less than half a mill or the, but the amount of the, eh, the rollback is actually determined. Uh, at the county level, and so, uh, we received the rollback. And we actually, uh, produced the proposed budget at that. Um, when the council actually proposed a, or, or published a mill rate, uh, increase. Uh, they did so in the, with the discussion that the millage rate would simply. Um, be a topic of discussion and you would have deliberations on what it would be, and so I don't, I think the number was. Around thirteen point eight nine, and then the council actually decided after reviewing all of the information. And what services they felt that, uh, we could, we had to have this year. Um, providing a half a mil, uh, increase, which generated about one point one two million dollars, um, for the city.
Okay, thank you, so, um, just to confirm, there was never in play a two-mil increase?
No, not, not, not to my knowledge, there was not, not from the staff, and, and I do know that the council. Um, took the staff recommendation into consideration, and so. Mr. Malazi is the treasurer, can confirm that, but. Again, I, I consider the staff recommendation the transmittal of the city manager's budget. And that was the rollback rate, and the millage rate was put out publicly as a consideration solely for. Deliberation and allowing you to make a decision, which came in at a half a mil increase.
Okay, thank you, I'm reclaiming my time, uh, Mr. Donald was speaking and this clock is still going, so please add, uh, five seconds back to this time. One last false narrative that was put out, Mr. Donald, that I'd like for you to clarify. And this really was a real estate issue, and, um, it probably should have been left in executive session, but since it was put out. Uh, it was said that this council, um, and mayor is in favor of putting five. Uh, million dollars into, uh, into the new public safety center. From my understanding, now this was publicly said, that five million dollars was the cost of the entire plaza. What we budgeted for that public safety center was about one point eight million dollars. Um, is, can you please clarify that? Because that was false narrative that was put out, that we are in favor of. Putting five million dollars into the new public safety center, and I don't recall that ever happening.
So no, the, there is no five million dollar allocation to the public safety center, the. Uh, current public safety center is budgeted at about one point four million dollars. That will take care of Phase One and put all of those services, uh, including municipal courts, um, into that facility. And then there is a lease that I believe is around eighteen thousand dollars a month. Um, based on the pandemic, as well as our new, uh, access to COVID nineteen funds, um. Through the county, we are evaluating, uh, what the city's, uh, ability is. And what the best mode of operation is based on the pandemic, and so no deviation or decision has been made at this time. The council is receiving staff recommendations, evaluating options. And I believe you've decided to make a decision over the next couple of weeks or so, and so no. Decision on anything has been made to deviate from the current, um, mode of operation. And, uh, to my knowledge, you know, there has not been an appetite to purchase a, uh, shopping center.
All right, thank you, Mr. Donald, for clarifying all of these false narratives that was put out in a newsletter by one of my colleagues, and I. I would ask that you please to staff to, um, you know, send out accurate communication to our residents. Because it does, false narratives does impact the reputation of our city, it impacts the reputation of. Um, council members, and it also confuses residents. Thank you.
Uh, let me, Mr. Donald?
Yes, sir.
Uh, let me add this, um. I think when, when anything is put out less than the truth. Uh, I would like for our communications department to monitor those things, and, and you think about, uh. Putting a factual answer to, to things that have been put out that are not, that are not truthful.
May I would say that, you know, as a staff member and administrator. If there are concerns and challenges between council members, it would be inappropriate for us without directives. From a majority of the council to debate or go against perceptions and, and understanding of. Different councilmen, I think what is appropriate and what we have done and what I will, um, strongly commit to do is to continue. To flood our general public with, uh, information about all of the various subjects related. Um, to the city, but I would, I would feel not only uncomfortable, but find it inappropriate as a. Administrative staff member to debate publicly with council members. On issues for which you will all be making decisions on.
Okay.
Out of information, um, related to our activities. Without question, you have my full commitment to do so, but, you know. Addressing was an end to your window between elected officials would not be an appropriate use of, of, of our talents and time.
Thank you, and I, and I, I will accept that. Lastly, I would say to my colleagues, because it has to stop sometime. At that we consider, at some point in time, I don't care who it is, the mayor or whoever it is. That we consider maybe a, a motion of no confidence, or emotion of censorship. But we cannot continue to have these, these negative things put out there about us, the council, and, and the administrative body of this city. That are totally not true. So, I would say to you all, there are, there are some things that you can use. You may want to consider them, but we're gonna have to consider something to stop the negative flow of information. All right, uh, Ms. Gilliard was next, she didn't, it wasn't in the, in the queue, but I heard her.
Um, thank you, Mayor. Mr. Donald, I have a few questions.
All right.
Uh, one of them is, uh, I'd like to know, how do we determine where something will be cited? And I'm specifically referring to the Motherland project that was in your report. And it was stated that you're currently looking for a location. That's.
Uh, what, what are, what are you talking about as far as a Motherland project?
The Motherland project proposal for an African cultural museum. Uh, lead, uh, lead developer is in the due diligence phase and currently looking for a location.
Yeah, so that's been in there for about seven months, so what.
Right.
People may have, and that's not considered an active, uh, project that has not made it. Into anything of consideration, that's why they are in the due diligence phase, not the city of South Fulton.
I understand.
Yeah, so a group of interested parties basically says, hey, city of South Fulton, this is something we have an interest in. What we have done is because we want to be proactive with the council. Anything that comes before us is included in the city manager's report. So that you know even what the developers are interested in. And some of these things have only, have not received full vetting. Because there's not enough information for it to, to rise to that level, and so that one. If you look at every city manager's report, all the way back to December of twenty nineteen. That one is listed along with many of the others, but they haven't made any progress on it, but we don't take it off the list. Because there's been no action one way or the other.
Um, and so I'm really, uh, familiar with that. My point though, and I'm gonna go back to what I started out with. Over, any developer might come to us with any kind of project. And might not know where they want to cite that project, they just think it's an excellent. Deck, so I opened with, how do we determine? What sites are the best sites for, uh, have projects? What kind of strategy is it related to? How is that determination made?
Got it, so you're actually saying, how do we look at different areas for which, that are available for projects, so?
Yes.
For that question to Mr. Pike, who is on the call, but we have. An array of different available areas for development that are, uh, some under city control. Um, an example is the one that the South Fulton Development Authority is actually managing right now on national. And then most others, though, are not under city control, and so we've done everything from. The board, the bus tours to show developers what's available, um, to having. Information distributed, um, or, or ads in the various magazines that you've seen and we've shared with council, and so we actually. Don't necessarily prioritize them, we just make them available for developers to view and let them make the decisions. Uh, that way, I would say some of the, the activities, uh, have not taken place because folks are, you know. Looking to see what's gonna happen with, um, the zoning comprehensive plans and, and various land use plans, but. We don't necessarily prioritize within the city. Um, we actually just show whatever, uh, is in our array for people to evaluate, and then the actual. Prioritization and pitching and all that good stuff happens through the development authority.
Okay, I'll move on to my next question, and, and these two questions are related to public work. And one is T-Splas.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there's forty-one million dollars budgeted for T-Splas for next year. And the, um, information that we received for projects. Came out to twenty-four million on slides that, that we received, so. What is the difference made up of between that forty-one and twenty-four?
The information that you've received is also based on collections and current projects. So you've not collected all of the funds related to T-Splas because we're still in the collection phase. I think the last report that we provided shows that collections are expected to take a dip. In addition to that, we're completing, and I think oftentimes it gets confused between. The twenty nineteen, twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one projects. Because of when we brought on the contracts, we're actually completing the twenty nineteen projects. And moving into twenty twenty, and so the total collection is around forty-one million, but some of those are already active projects. Including the paving projects that we've reported on. Uh, I'll bring Mr. Valenzuela in, because I know that he sent, uh, the full council, and I thought he sent you a response that kind of broke down. How that budget is, and, and we can make sure to resend that, but Mr. Valenzuela, if you're on the line.
Yes, before, before you go to that, I'm, before, and I do, um, um, I really would like for him to come, but I just want to say this. I want to say that, um, I do have the actual for twenty seventeen. In your report for, um, for this meeting. You did send us the actual for twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, and so that we are a year behind, so. I do have a plan for twenty twenty, but there's some inconsistencies, and those inconsistencies. I won't take up time to discuss them, um, now, but I will talk to Mr., um, Valenzuela about those inconsistencies, but I'm.
Don't call them inconsistent.
Has to say.
Council member, it's the timing of the project, so I know we've sent this multiple times via the correspondence. It, you don't just go directly to letting the project, so some of those projects have funds allocated to them. But they're in the design phase, which you have to complete before you actually let it to construction, so there, it's not that the projects are behind. But they're assigned to twenty nineteen and they move from the design phase to letting the project, and they get completed in twenty twenty. It's still an on-time project, based on the projection and the prioritization of those projects. They begin in twenty nineteen, they're completed in twenty twenty. And, and I'm not sure if that's where the, 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 what you're calling inconsistency is, but. Just because they're, they're listed as a twenty nineteen project, does not mean they actually get completed in twenty nineteen. You don't receive, we're not receiving a hundred percent of the project. Those, um, reports that I've been providing, uh, that come from Fulton County, who's, you know, governing it for all of the cities. Um, we're receiving a collection rate of somewhere around eighty-six percent. Of the full cost of the, the T-Splas projects. That's why they're in various tiers and they're scheduled for various years. Because all of the projects, depending on how the collection rate goes, may not be complete. Which is why back in, you know, long before I got here, before the city was even in place. In twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen, when they prioritized those, uh, uh, projects. They did so in a way, uh, so that they come online in that order, because you would never collect a hundred percent of the funding. But you have the list of projects, and based on when you receive the money and how much your collections are, that's when you complete them. And they start off, you, you start to do designing and, and letting the projects. Based on the actual, actual funding that you have available, not just by the list.
I, I've, I've had the original list since twenty sixteen. With the, um, the documentation in terms of how it works. And so when, when, when I talk about behind, I'm talking about, okay, so it's twenty. It's twenty twenty, so what happened to the projects that were listed? For twenty seventeen, and I finally did get that, okay? And I see in your presentation for today, that there is a list that says, okay. Here's what happened for twenty eighteen, here's what happened for twenty nineteen. And that, and that's, that's fine, so we know that, that, you know, you check that off with what was originally on the list. And you see what was finished and what was not finished, and, um. And move on to twenty twenty, so at this point, I think it would just be good for Mr. Valenzuela to chime in and to.
Sure, we'll have to come unmute, but I think one other thing that you, you might want to look at is that I F Y twenty twenty. Encompasses twenty nineteen and twenty. Projects, so that.
Right.
Mr. Valenzuela, if you could unmute to try to, uh, uh, assist, uh, council member Gilliard.
Uh, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. With regards to, uh, Councilwoman Gilliard's questions on T-Splus. Uh, Mr. Donald is, uh, one hundred percent accurate with the information that he provided. And the recap on how funds are allocated to the city and how projects are being delivered to the city. Um, a few things that need to be considered is that. Um, in two thousand eighteen, later two thousand eighteen. And just recently, last year, we were able to finalize everything between Fulton County and the city. So, we brought up-to-date projects on two thousand nineteen with regards to reserves. So we have delivered what we promised on two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen. And two thou- two thousand nineteen for the bracket of reserves and the T-Splus. The other projects that you see on, on, on the schedule, on the approved list by Fulton County of June two thousand sixteen. Uh, it are underway, as we have finally completed, uh, piggyback agreements with consultants and others. Now, those projects are going, uh, are, are back on the design mode. And we're about to start, uh, rights of acquisition for about twelve of those projects. With that in mind, you will see in two thousand twenty-one, a good number of projects going under construction. As now we have received additional funding on prior years, we're also gonna let. Additional projects for design for projects on two thousand nineteen and so on. Keep in mind that all the budget that was done for all T-Splus was done in two thousand sixteen. Today, I believe we're in pretty good status, uh, on the cost estimated that, that we've done. But we don't know what might happen next year, as we're getting, as, as we are receiving additional estimates. And as we're gonna be bidding construction projects, so the dollar amounts might change a bit. So we wanna be conservative the way how we're listing and then. So we wanna be conservative the way how we're listing and ensuring that. We deliver projects that were scheduled on two thousand seventeen, eighteen, nineteen and hopefully two thousand twenty. Uh, also have in mind that on the budget that we've done, we put some money for design purposes, we put some money for. P N C M purposes and then we put some money for construction in different years. Because we didn't need the entire full money for, for each project in a particular year. So some of them have funding on different years as we're working on delivering the projects.
So my, Mr. Valenzuela, my last question, and this is really for the sake of the public. Uh, moving forward, what do you think, do you think we're in a good position? To move forward with um, trying to get five more years?
Um, considering all that we seen in the city of South Fulton. I look in that our infrastructure is, it, it is in such a high need for maintenance and new projects and so on. And that the city of South Fulton is not the city of South Fulton that was ten, twenty years ago. We are in such a need that additional funds are required for transportation, it will be for bridges, roads and so on. And my advice will be uh, uh, full support to go for a second round of T-S plus.
Okay. Cause I, I know that there approximately over three hundred subdivisions um, in the city. And while we have really, really done an excellent job of um. Using T-Splas funds for a lot of them and will use, there still will be a lot that. That still need to be covered that are um, almost twenty years old, so. I'm, I'm just looking forward to four more, five more years. I hope that we'll be able to get five more years.
Yes, ma'am, you stand correct, yes.
Hey, thank you, Ms. Gil Yard, uh, Ms., uh, Councilmember Guns.
Okay, um. Woo, um, so, Mr. Donald, I did uh, receive your memo in regards to the Clean City Crew. Just a few questions, um, with the Clean City Crew, they're only focusing on illegal dumping? Or are they also doing rotation for litter in the right ways?
Well, yes, ma'am.
Now, how will they be planning to schedule that? Is this similar to what we're already doing with um, Jacobs?
No, it's more of a supplement, so it's, it's a way to. You know, what's happened is Jacob is on a schedule and I think it's definitely a, a more active schedule. Than we've had uh, with, under the county. But there is a need to even accelerate it or at least provide some supplement until we bring along. The new right-of-way maintenance contract. And so this provides that and so they'll actually be out there daily, so let's say uh. An example, I'm, just because I'm talking to you, I know you, you definitely let us know, hey, I was riding down uh, Camp Creek and Button Road and. I saw somebody, I saw some trash in the right-of-way, somebody let some stuff fly off their truck. This, think of this as kind of a quick response unit. So that we know where, that, that's really the, the kind of aim of it. Is to be a quick response unit, but also to be proactive, so they'll be monitoring the hot spots, you know, we know. Uh, Hamilton Road and what is that cross street, ooh, just over there yesterday looking at this. But, but there's an area uh, in District One over there off Hamilton, that's a hotspot, um. We talked about right over there by Camp Creek and Buttoner, there's also an area, is it Cascade, Paul Meadow? But I mean, there are, there are a few of them and so these hot spots where we get the most complaints. They'll kind of be doing proactive monitoring of those areas.
Okay, and will this process still go through C Click Fix or?
Yes, that's the, so that's the data that we've been utilizing, that's how we normally respond and so. This is to actually get in front of that, we've got now, C Click Fix isn't quite a year old, but. We're, we're basically got a year of data um, related to the tool. And so now we've got a, a good enough uh, data set to be able to tell where a lot of the dumping and. Right-of-way littering and things of that nature are taking place and so we'll be utilizing. Um, that data as well as data that we get over the course of this first six months of the pilot to address it.
So, um, as you know, I have, I have an independent crew that does come through and pick up litter and bring when it's excessive. So what you're pretty much is, what you're saying is that. I wouldn't have to do that any longer because this will be able to address that.
That's the hope and so what, what the plan is, is this crew will address those areas that again, we've already. Received some uh, some data for, uh, but then also be able to be a quick response unit. So it won't get to that point.
Okay, all right, thank you so much.
Thank you, I thank you, Councilmember Guns, uh, Councilmember Reeves.
Yes, thank you, thank you so much, um. Thank you, Mr. Donald, thank you, uh, uh, Mr. Malazi and Mr. Valenzuela for your presentations and uh. I'm just gonna say here who we are as, as a city, uh, we are a city that has staff that are number one draft picks. Um, we are a city uh, that's too busy to discriminate. Uh, as this female leadership pilot program announcement comes on the heels of. The passing of the notorious RBG and her fight for inclusion and so kudos to all the candidates and well deserved. And when it comes to this uh, the, the, the Clean City Crew, oh, I love it, I love it. This was on the public works, I just wanna know, will that be staffed by a subcontractor or will that be city staff?
Yeah, we'll be using the, the uh, contractor, so again, no additional cost to the city, we're just trying to. Add some additional resources that are more focused on the needs of our citizens and council, I think. You know, you guys have heard loud and clear from our residents about making sure we increase our efforts. To mitigate this litter and, and illegal dumping. And so we sat down with the team at Jacobs and expressed those concerns. And uh, together we came up with, with this concept and idea and uh, we plan to expand it, but this is just. The first immediate stab at it because it gives you that proactive connection. Um, you know, you're still connected to the liability that's passed off to Jacobs. But at the, the same time, you're able to use that data and our other system, C Click Fix. To make sure we're in control of where we direct them to do this monitoring.
Okay, that's absolutely, so to be clear, additional resources at no additional cost. To address a problem that is citywide as far as littering and illegal dumping.
Yes, sir.
Oh, man, that's awesome, man, I just wanna just let y'all know, kudos, I look forward to it. Uh, forward to participating and forward to uh, uh, educating uh, uh, my residents over here in District Five, in District Five. On uh, better utilization of the C Click Fix app and letting them know that. Uh, this Clean City Crew is uh, right around the corner and well, we are ma- making improvements and strides. And every step that we take to make the safest clean city, thank you, sir, thank you to all the staff.
Hey, thank you, Councilmember Reeves, Councilmember Rouse.
Thank you, uh, Mayor, um, City Manager Donald, very good report, I think we're all um, excited about the Women in Leadership Program. And offering opportunities for upward mobility um, throughout our city department, so kudos on that. I also wanna encourage um, you to look at having our communication staff put together a program to educate the public. About keeping our city clean.
Yeah.
Um, you know, every, every month, working in partnership with the Cascade Business Merchants Association, we've been doing this for three years and. I don't see a significant change in behavior and so while, you know, we, we like to talk about. Uh, you know, uh, or people like to talk about what Public Works is not doing. Um, I think it's important for us to take ownership and everybody playing a role in keeping our community clean, so Mayor, I hope you will. Uh, work on launching something, I'd be happy to work with you on that, but we, we have to do something to get our residents to do better. Um, and we can't, and it's just people passing through the city, so. Thank you for that, I'm looking forward to the uh, Clean City Crew and please make sure you keep. Uh, Baker's Ferry and Bolt Rock is a top, that's my number one.
That's where it was.
That, that one is.
Yes, ma'am, that.
I can't seem to be, beat that one enough in terms of addressing the litter there. So, uh, thank you, great report. And um, for sharing a clarifying information, that some of this information we tend to see on social media. That I don't know why um, is so prevalent, but I feel like I've spent a half of my time correcting incorrect information that's being put out, so. We, we gotta figure that out.
Okay, we'll end with uh, Councilmember Khalid.
Thank you so much, uh, I just wanted to echo everyone's sentiments about uh, the. Women in Leadership Program as well as the Clean City Crew, I think that that is amazing. There are lots of folks in O National that are always cleaning up and just to let people know, in the meantime, this Saturday. We'll be having a cleanup at eight AM at the uh, Walmart and you can find more information out about that by texting Fulton to three, three, seven, seven, seven. Thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Baker.
Yes, sir, I apologize, I couldn't text you, um, but um, also. Attaboy is to Mr. Donald and your team and everything you're doing. I know this clean team is something that people are excited about, so I just wanna say it and I know they don't, thank you for uh. Acknowledging a problem that faces all of our districts, uh, and we want it resolved and this seems like uh. Uh, an additional response to it, it's great to hear that it's subcontractors and there's nobody else being uh. It's no, it's, it's not an additional cost, um, I don't know if Councilman Khalid's uh, cleanup is the same. It seems like the staging might be there, but it's at seven thirty from my understanding. Uh, at that same uh, location, so uh, it'll be a great thing for he and I if. It's gonna be two districts being a part of this cleanup on Saturday, uh, we're able to amplify the fact that uh. You know, residents as well who have uh, the fortitude to get up early on a Saturday morning and come and clean. Up their neighborhoods that we can do as Councilwoman uh, Rouse said, also uh. Amplify the need for us to be better, you know, to our city as well, so thank you, Mr. Donald. And all that was in your report, thank you too, Mr. uh, Valenzuela for what you're doing, I just need to also just add. That uh, offline, Mr. Valenzuela, I need to speak with you about uh, the Fife Community. And the traffic uh, control devices or lack thereof, from my understanding, uh, they really need uh, some responses. You should see uh, several emails just like those comment cards, uh, you know, they get busy when it's time to. You know, activate, so it's, it's something that's been going on for some time there and uh, if you could, just take the time to respond to them, uh. And uh, CC me and I'll be a part of it as much as I can to help you resolve whatever's going on, thank you guys so much for all you're doing.
Mr. Mayor, can I add a point of clarity real quick?
Uh, sir. Real, we, real quick, cause you know.
Okay, real quick, real quick, yeah, the South Community Cleanup right is gonna be staged at uh, um, seven thirty at Walmart and it's gonna actually cover. All of the, all of O National, so it covers all of five, six, and seven and another municipality as well, so.
Okay.
Okay, we, we just don't wanna get there late at eight when.
All right, that's, that's good, that's good, that's good, y'all can work it out, uh, Madam Clerk, go ahead.
The next item on the agenda is the City Attorney's Report.
Yes, Ma- Mayor and Council, I have two um, matters on this one, the first is. I'm seeking on behalf of the Police Department permission um. Or authorization for the council to approve the Task Force M O U. Um, this is the document that was provided via email to the uh. Clerk as well as the, the council, so if the council is willing to entertain a motion to that, I would present that request now.
I move that uh, we approve the M O U for South Fulton Police Division Task Force.
Properly moved the second, any discussion? Hearing now, Madam Clerk, would you?
Aye. Councilmember Guns.
Aye.
Councilmember Willis.
Aye.
Councilmember Gil Yard.
Yes.
Councilmember Reeves.
Aye.
Councilmember Khalid.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Do it again.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion approved to uh, approve the M O U for the Police Department.
And the last matter is, it's a similar request, it's if the council is willing to entertain a. Motion to approve for MS four ordinances, um, so that we can stay on schedule. For the city's MS four compliance, I think that was, these are.
Let, Madam Clerk, Madam, Madam Attorney.
Yes, ma'am.
Madam, I, I hear what you're doing, but these things were never uh, they were never put on the agenda for the public. I don't understand, are they, are the emergencies or what is the case here?
Well, if I could clarify, um, the motion would be to approve to put for first read, so there was a mix-up. Well, there was not a mix-up, there was confusion um, as to what the documents are because they were split up into subparts. So we would like to still keep them on for first read, um, I have since. Been in correspondence, me as well as C D R A, we've been in correspondence with Mr. Valenzuela and he's assured us that uh. All of these have been vetted by staff, um, they've gone through several, several departments and I think the confusion was is they were split into subparts. So they don't all have the title that they initially had when they went through the, the fifth process. So what I've done is I have.
Process.
I'm sorry?
Are, are they?
Yeah, all of these should have gone through the fifth process. Now, what I've done.
Let me just explain my unreadiness about what's happening here. Uh, we're voting on items, putting items out there that the public never saw when we advertise. All right, and so I, I have a big problem with that and if they're not, if you don't know, they have, if they have not gone through. The fifth process, then we shouldn't be talking about it in the first place. That's, that's my willingness. Yes, hold on, Miss, Miss, I'm sorry, Madam Attorney, go ahead.
Yes, so I wanted to, just to clarify, if any member of the public wants, so we're not asking the council to approve these today. So at any, at, at any point, if any member of the public wants to get a copy of these, um, they're readily available, so we could either. Uh, I think the quickest way is just to put it, put in an open records request and we can send these, cause it, it would take minimal processing. To pull these, I mean, they're, they're ready to go, um, and then you wouldn't be approving today, you would just be allowing for first read. And then you wouldn't approve until October, so they would have, any, any members of the public would have up until. Um, the fourth week of October at your regular meeting to request these documents and then if they didn't want to request the documents. They would still be able to look at the October agenda and look at these documents and, and I will say that they're basically just um. They're model ordinances that were provided by the state of Georgia, so it's just E P, E P D recommendations.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna say this, I, I, I'm not willing to set that kind of precedent right now, uh. So, I heard Mrs. uh, I think it was Ms. Willis, were you about to say something?
Yes, so Mayor, I, I, I totally agree with you, uh, first of all. Uh, we, we asked whether any changes to the regular agenda and we have already voted on the agenda. So if there were things that needed to be walked on, they should have been presented at that time. Um, second of all, are these the ordinance, I mean, have we seen these ordinances?
Yes, I presented copies, well, they've been circulated. Through the legislative process, so if you, if you go to the legislative calendar, you will be able to review it, but then I also sent. A supplemental copy just to the Mayor and Council.
So, is this time sensitive or something, why are you trying to go, uh, if it goes. Process, then it should be ready to go on, on the agenda at the next regular meeting, why are you trying to usurp our legislative process?
Well, no, they, they have gone through the legislative process, we have broken them down into subparts. So there was.
If it went through the. If it went through.
Yeah, I submitted them for inclusion on the agenda, I mean, we don't have to put them on the agenda, we can wait until. The only, the downside to not putting them on for first read is that they won't be adopted until November. And we can do that, we'll just have to, um, like, the preference would be to be able to tell this, you know, the state of Georgia, I think Mr. Valenzuela. Is following up with them, I think he said tomorrow, I mean, he's here, he can confirm with you, the preference would be. The preference would be able to tell them, look, you know, they're, they've been put on the agenda, they're scheduled for, you know, adoption next month. Um, we don't have to do that. I mean, I don't think, it's, it's not gonna cause major tur- turmoil if we tell the state, um, we're just gonna push the schedule back a month. So we can, we can do that too. It's your discretion.
I mean, this is not, since, my question is, I still have for me, Mayor, this is not time sensitive, correct?
I, I think from a staff perspective, I believe November would be fine. I know that December is the deadline, but it's probably good to allow, uh, Director Reed and Director Valenzuela to confirm that. But I know December is the deadline, but I think a November approval would work. And so, uh, if, if either, uh, Ms. Reed or Mr. Valenzuela could confirm that to, uh, inform the Council, um, for sure.
Or probably Mr. Valenzuela, cause he, he's the one who asked me to try to get these on the agenda by this month. So I think that he's probably the best person to provide clarity.
Mr. Valenzuela, is this time sensitive?
Ye- ye- yes, ma'am. In order to comply with EPD and going forward to get the MS four permit for the city, uh, we're in the process of reviewing, um, ordinances for the city that Council has to approve, and those are submitted to EPD in order for them to proceed with their reviews. And we'll go back, back and forth until, uh, we're, we're to meet the deadlines. It will be good to have as the first reading and, uh, l- looking at the second, uh, reading for approval. Those sort of answers are, uh, um, normal steps that EPD will request from us as, uh, Attorney Walker mentioned, uh, on his communication to the Council.
All right, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Valenzuela?
Yes, sir.
Now I'm confused again. Either it is emergency or it's not emergency. Several people before you said it'd be all right if we included next month or another meeting.
Well, Mayor, I, I ask for some clarity from Mr. Valenzuela, because the deadline is in December. But what he just stated was there, he has to stay on the timeline. And while that deadline is in December, without having the ordinance in that time, then he wouldn't be able to make his deadline. So I, I think he was just giving clarity that was requested.
So my question is, why, how did we get here today? I mean, if, 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 excuse me, if there's importance to it, how do we get where we are here today? And I, 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 I'm telling you, you cannot just jump up, put stuff on the agenda because you feel like it, or cause you, you forgot to do something, and now you wanna put it on. This agenda is aggressive as it is. So I want you to explain to me, why is it, why, what did you did not do to get it on the agenda appropriately?
Um, Mayor, uh, and I know you're asking Mr. Valenzuela.
Yeah.
Uh, but the, the sensitivity of this particular ordinance that they're trying to put in front of us. We have some EPA issues that, um, we are dealing with, and you are very aware of, um, in District Two. And of course, this will help address some of those matters and then also protect the city in that aspect. So that's the sensitivity and the urgency behind it. Um, we just need to have these ordinances in place. I'm not sure. I think she did put it through the legislative process. Um, I'm not sure how it did not make the agenda, but, um, if we could, you know, have some type of reaction on it today. But it is to deal with some EPA issues that I do know that are active in my district and as well in others.
Okay, Councilmember Gums, I, I understand, and I will acknowledge this as an emergency. But I'm telling you all, we have a process that you all have adopted, and we need to stay as close to that process in terms of an agenda as we can. I'm still not, I'm still a little query about how this happened, but I'll get to that later. So I will.
Mr. Mayor, I actually be recognized.
Okay, just a minute. Uh, I will, I will recognize it as an emergency. Go ahead, Mr. Brock Baker.
Yes, sir. Um, I just have a comment about the past seven minutes. We spent time on the City Managers' Report debunking things that are put out to our constituents that may or may not be true, or may or may not be misleading. And here we find ourselves with our attorney, who has read these documents, and she's telling us we need to consider them. And they're not gonna hurt her, they're only gonna hurt us. And it's only first read. We've had documents placed before us in the middle of a council member, in the middle of a council meeting, midway through an agenda that we had to vote on. So if we're gonna be clear in, in our message into our public that we wanna keep down confusing, confusion, we really have to be consistent on all fronts, are you?
Okay, okay, Mr. Baker. I, I think, I think you're right, but there's been some issue that we did not put on the agenda. I'm okay. All I wanted to know is, if it's that important, why are we, why didn't we just get it ready for the appropriate time? But I'm all right with it. I consider it, it's an emergency, and I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion to allow these items on the agenda.
For first read, for first read.
For first read, sure.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Yes, I, I recommend we adopt them as emergency ordinance then.
Right. Well, you don't necessarily have to adopt them as an emergency ordinance. I think first read is sufficient, and that will give, um, you know, the appropriate time if any council members want to spend, you know, further review, or if, I mean, I have resented them through the legislative process.
But first, secondly, I, I've already acknowledged them as a, as emergency documents, so.
Because they're, they're not in an emergency form. Like, there's a form that you have for emergency. I mean, my, the request is simply to just do first read. I don't think, I don't think it's of the severity that we need to adopt today. I think just if we can start the process.
All right. Any other, any other discussion? Hearing none. Let's vote, Madam Clerk.
Aye.
The motion was by Councilmember Baker, seconded by Councilmember.
Gums.
Um, Gums. To add the four ordinances for first read to the agenda. Councilmember Ralph.
Aye.
Councilmember Gums.
Aye.
Councilmember Willis.
Yes.
Councilmember Gil yard.
Yes.
Councilmember Reeves.
Aye.
Councilmember Kalid.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Aye.
Motion passes to add the four ordinances to the agenda.
Okay. Next, Madam Clerk.
Uh, City Attorney, are you finished?
Yes, that's it for me.
The next item, the next item on the agenda is consent items. Council approval of Hazel Simpson to the Public Arts Commission by Councilmember Reeves and Mr. George Oliver to the Parks Advisory Board by Councilmember Kalid.
I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve consent agenda for nine twenty-two, twenty twenty.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, let's vote.
Councilmember Ralph. Councilmember Ralph.
Yes, I'm sorry, aye.
Councilmember Gums.
Aye.
Councilmember Willis.
Yes.
Councilmember Gil yard.
Yes.
Councilmember Reeves.
Aye.
Councilmember Kalid.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay, next item, please.
Previous agenda items, Council's second reading and adoption to amend Title III Building Regulations Economic Development Incentives. Councilmember Gil yard.
This is up for the final, uh, read. Uh, as stated previously, I've worked with, um, Christopher Pike, who convinced me that the incentive was a way to go rather than, um, community benefits. And even though there is a community benefits section in it, so I would, um, I would appreciate it if, um, everyone would support it. So I make a motion to approve, um, this ordinance, um, to promote economic development incentives for economic development.
Second. Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, let's vote.
Councilmember Ralph.
Aye.
Councilmember Gums.
Aye.
Councilmember Willis.
Yes.
Councilmember Gil yard.
Yes.
Councilmember Reeves.
Aye.
Councilmember Kalid.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker. This ordinance has been approved. Next agenda, Council's second reading and adoption to amend Title XIV Environment Illicit Discharge and Illegal Connection Ordinance.
Um, this ordinance relates to, um, the, um, one of the ordinances that was a part of the emergency one that we just discussed. And it's about illegal, um, hookups as it relates to stormwater. So I would appreciate it if, um, everyone would support, um, support this ordinance. So I make a motion.
Yeah. Yes, ma'am.
Um, the ordinance for, um, to prevent illegal, uh, connections for.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, vote please.
Councilmember Ralph.
Aye.
Councilmember Gums.
Aye.
Councilmember Willis.
Yes.
Councilmember Gil yard.
Yes.
Councilmember Reeves.
Aye.
Councilmember Kalid.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Aye.
Motion passes to amend ordinance, title, amend Title XIV.
All right, next item, please.
Item is Council's second reading to adopt, reading to amend Title XV Planning Commission Duties.
Someone here from the court?
Planning Commission Duties, this is Councilmember Ralph.
Okay, why is the court on it? Okay, go ahead, ma'am.
This particular ordinance, uh, clarifies the planning commission, uh, duties. Um, they were very broadly, um, outlined when we originally adopted planning commission, when we transferred from the county to the city. Um, and it cleans up that language by showing specifically that their role is a reviewing and advisory role to the Council. So, um, as cases come before, uh, that plan and commission, their role is advisory as well as dealing with a number of other duties, uh, from reviewing or calling for studies, uh, just standard, uh, activities of a planning commission. So it allows us with, uh, what other municipalities do. I make a motion to amend, uh, the current ordinance to outline the specific duties of the planning commission.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes, question.
Yeah. Yes.
I don't see nobody in the queue, so I'm gonna tell you to do here.
I'm in the queue.
Yes, I'm in the queue.
Not showing up. Okay, Ms. Willis and Ms. Gil yard, I'm sorry, it's not showing up on my, now it shows up. Okay, go ahead.
Um, Councilmember Ralph, I remember when we went through this. I have no problems with your ordinance. Thank you for doing this. Me, um, uh, I didn't get a chance to go back and re-review it, cause I actually made one update, and that was to include the, what the compensation would be for the planners, planning commissioners.
Oh, yeah, we did discuss that. And I asked, we did not address this in amendment. We, what we did, I think this verdict speaks to the role being reviewed and advised.
Right, but that's a part of their duties. Can we ask, can I just ask that you add, uh, the attorney to update that small piece in here and, and?
Yeah, we, we, uh, let me ask, Mr. Donald, is there money in our budget that would allow for that?
I'm sorry, could you repeat? That allows for?
Compensation for the planning commission.
It's already being compensated.
Already, that's, that's there because it's already budgeted in this year. What, do you mean for additional compensation?
No, what I asked.
So it wasn't an original ordinance, I don't believe. Is, that's your point, Councilwoman Willis, correct?
So this.
Not required to address.
What I'm asking, um, it was already, we're already compensated. And what she's doing is outlining their duties and their roles. And what I'm saying is that we also should, if we're outlining their duties and their roles, also outline, you know, how they're gonna be compensated for their duties and their roles. And so I just asked her to add that small piece into this ordinance, and she agreed to do it, but it was.
She was admitted. I got you. We discussed.
Yeah, yeah, so I think y'all are on the same page, and the funding is available, um, both in the current and new budget. And so there's no issue with you, um, spelling that out within the ordinance or resolution.
Uh, Ms. Attorney Walker, could you look at, look at that, um, what could be amended before we adopt to address that?
Yes, and then I'll, I'll reach out to, I guess, Councilman Willis, just to get further clarity too, but I'll, if we hold this to next meeting, I'll make sure it's incorporated.
Well, well, we're adopting today. Yeah, this is a second rate. They, they're compensated at fifty dollar stipend per meeting they attend.
So can I just make an amendment that we add that in there for the second read, so we can go ahead and adopt it, um, Attorney Walker?
Well, let me tell you what it says for now about compensation. It says, um, "The city council shall by resolution determine the amount of compensation if any to be paid to members of the planning commission. In the absence of such resolution, no compensation shall be provided." So what we can do is, if you wanna sponsor a resolution, I can bring that back, um, next meeting if you.
Yeah, let's just, let's just do that. Let's sponsor, and bring it back to the next meeting, and you could put Councilmember Ralph and I as a co-sponsor on that.
Okay, will do.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Ms. Gil yard, were you in the queue?
Yes, I'm, I'm in the queue, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Um, so I spent a lot of time on this, um, this ordinance because it concerned me, and this is why. The opening of it says, "The planning commission is hereby granted all power, all power, and is hereby assigned all duties that the Council, as the governing authority of the city, is authorized and empowered to grant, to include." They're gonna do surveys and studies. And as it relates to future land, the future lands map, which makes me think this is somehow related to the comp plan. And then it talks about, um, a plat of the official map. And it, it almost sounds like the duties of some of the planners. And so I compared it with what the planning commission does now, which is a body that reviews and recommends. And these two roles, there is a big difference between the two. And it appears that this one is more in line with moving towards House Bill ten nineteen. It's about something completely and totally, um, different. And yes, you're going to pay people to perform in these duties because it's gonna require some special skills. And in addition to that, um, the, um, the current planning commission, and, and I know this to be a fact from, from, from two people, and that is in terms of training. They got an overview in planning, and, and zoning and planning is, is kind of really, really detailed. So are, is the current, are the current folks that are on this commission gonna be trained to, to do all these different duties? These are some, some serious duties. And if you look at this ordinance, it has an awful lot to do with economic development as well as the comp plan.
Can I please address?
I have some concerns, uh, uh, about it, particularly, and I'm just gonna end with this. The planning commission is hereby. The planning commission is hereby granted all power and is hereby assigned all duties that the council, as the governing authority of the cities, is authorized and empowered to grant, to include. And then there's this long list.
Yeah, I would, I would allow, I would allow the honor of the uh, ordinance to speak, go ahead.
Of course, so the list that you speak of, Councilwoman Gilliard, are the things that we are powering them to provide a review and recommending power. As you know, before issues come before this body, they go through the planning commission and they're dealing with all those things anyway. As the ordinance was currently written, it would not have even allowed that planning commission to weigh in on the zoning rewrite. But our staff saw the wisdom of making sure we had input from that body. But technically, the way our current ordinance was written, it didn't even have to go through them, even though they are planning commissioners for our city. Um, I think uh, if Christina Cummins is on the line, uh, we worked and went back and forth on this to make sure it was clear or either Attorney Walker can speak to it, it's only bestowing those powers to review and recommend to the council, they don't take action without us. And I think it's written very clear, actually.
Not to me.
Okay.
Attorney Walker, can you address that?
Yes, so, um, so I just wanted to provide clarity, so right now they actually do have the responsibility to review text amendments. Um, it's section five-five-oh-oh-one, it says it's shall be the function and duty of the planning commission to make recommendations for action by council on zoning map and text and comprehensive plan amendments. Um, but it is your discretion if you want them to go beyond that. So um, what this ordinance does is it just provides, it says that they'll have all authority and powers that the council is authorized to give them legally to act as a planning commission and then it enumerates um, specific things for clarity. So it's just the council's discretion as to, you know, which of these things the council sees fit to give them responsibility for.
Okay, I did, Mr. Colley, I saw your, your name in the queue, but it left, you, you not want to speak, are you there?
Yes, I'm, I'm, I'm here, I, I, you, you know, uh, uh, having it read by Councilwoman Gilliard in the meter in which she read it does give me pause, uh, I would love if there's, if, unless there is some urgent matter, there's, unless there's some hurry to approve this today, I would love to uh, just discuss it further with my.
Okay, well, there's a motion on the floor, am I right, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir, you are.
Read the motion again, please, and let's go vote.
The motion was to approve the uh, amended ordinance from, by Councilmember Rao, seconded by Councilmember Willis.
Okay, let's vote, please.
Aye.
Council, okay, Councilmember Gums?
Aye.
Councilmember Willis?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilliard?
No.
Councilmember Reeves?
Aye.
Councilmember Colley? Councilmember Colley?
No.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, next item, please.
Next item is council's second reading and adoption to amend penalties ordinance.
That's the court?
This is the court.
Are they on?
I move that we um, approve adoption to amend penalties ordinance.
There a second?
Second.
We property moved and second discussion. Hearing none, Madam Clerk, uh, let's vote.
Councilmember Rao?
Aye.
Councilmember Gums?
Yes, aye.
Councilmember Willis?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilliard?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Councilmember Reeves?
Aye.
Councilmember Colley?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Alright, next item, please.
Next item is to approve council, council approval and adoption of FY twenty-one budget ordinance.
I'll, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, um, I have a question before I make a uh, uh, motion to.
Right here.
Um, so I have a um, a motion on the agenda to uh, defund the Juneteenth celebration and that, the fund, and the funding that, that'd be a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that um, I want to allocate to the um, public right-of-way cleaning. Um, because uh, Councilmember Rao and I were talking and um, there is a hundred, am I, if I'm not mistaken, a hundred and twenty-five thousand in the budget that we allocated for that. And um, if we focus on cleaning all the right-of-ways, uh, that would include Roosevelt Highway, uh, on National Highway, um, Hamilton Road, uh, Highway ninety-two and Camp Creek Parkway. Uh, we are, uh, if we are gonna augment that budget to, we, we are of an opinion and it's gonna be more money needed. And so we will see, we would prefer to put that money to better use in augmenting that funding.
Well, you haven't made it down to that point yet.
So I don't, so my thing is I don't want to approve, I mean, it's kind of, do we need to, uh?
You can always come back and, and, and they can rebudget, I mean, Mr. Malazianos can do that, but we have not say yeah, nay to uh, Juneteenth funding.
So my thing is.
Mr. Mayor.
Have we approved the budget?
Yeah, the order, let me acknowledge that, Mr. Colley.
I just wanted to suggest because I actually agree with Councilwoman Willis that I believe that we can make a motion to lay this item on the table and then pick it up after we've discussed the Juneteenth.
Hmm, that's a new, that's a new, right out of the book one, lay it on the table.
Roberts, it's uh, Roberts.
I know what it is, uh, that's uh, they're, they're.
Comment.
To lay, to lay it on the table? Madam, Madam Attorney, Parliamentary?
Yeah, he's able to make that, that motion, I, my understanding is there's no, no other motion, so he would need a second.
Yes, absolutely.
Can I ask a question?
Uh.
Second, second, just.
It was second, now we in discussion, go ahead.
Okay, um, at our last meeting, Councilwoman Rao, um, had us to a- agree on consensus to add to the budget money for, um, I believe it was, was it streetlights, it was streetlights and um, uh, the treatment of Hall Road and I want to know if that was added to the budget.
Well, there's a motion right now to lay it on the table.
Oh.
I have to carry that motion out. Uh, so Madam Clerk, this vote.
Councilmember Rao?
Yes, aye.
Councilmember Gums?
Aye.
Councilmember Willis?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilliard?
I don't know, I don't know if I say yes and then, because I didn't get my question answered, so. So can, can, so if, yes, can, how do I get my question answered, can?
You don't, yeah, he made a motion to lay it on the table, so we booked on that.
No, I don't feel comfortable.
Okay.
Councilmember Reeves?
Aye, it's later on time.
Councilmember Colley?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Motion to table this item until later in the agenda.
Oh, okay.
Next item, next item is council approval of A.R. Long and Company Propose Twenty Twenty-One Legislative Agenda.
I entertain a motion.
I move that we accept the A.R. Long proposal.
There a second? Hearing no second, let's move on.
Yep. Yes.
Second.
Second.
Yeah.
Second, um, with discussion, I'll go on the queue.
You're already in the queue.
Oh, okay.
Motion by Councilmember Reeves, seconded by Councilmember Rao to accept the Twenty Twenty-One Legislative Agenda.
Okay, Ms. Ms. Willis, you're in the queue.
So I have legislation, um, for um, an item that I need to add to this agenda that's coming on the agenda in October. And it's to repeal the um, the citizen arrests. Uh, it's a resolution that one of the legislators from the uh, country area reached out to me and asked me to uh, sponsor, what they're trying to do is get uh, most cities uh, to sponsor this resolution so they can use it as a catalyst when they go back into the General Assembly. Um, as bipartisan support to repeal this uh, this uh, antiquated legislation that is currently, um, this antiquated law that is on the books that uh, the killers of Ahmaud Arbery used to make a citizen arrests. Um, and so uh, I guess my question to Mr. Long is if we approve this, is that something that can um, be added after this was approved? Because I, you had a deadline.
Mr. Long? Yes, good afternoon, um, Mr. Mayor, uh, Mayor Protem and City Council. The, the quick answer to your question is yes, as long as there is consensus by the uh, city council today to add this measure to um, to my legislative proposal, yes, I can get that in, in enough time so that your legislative delegation can, uh, that'll be included on the proposal, yes.
Okay, are you familiar with the legislation that I'm speaking of?
Am I familiar with what you're speaking, no, I have, this is my first time.
It's a legislation that State Representative Carl Gilliard is working on and is to repeal the uh, citizen arrest law that is currently on the books. Um, and it's what, what that law does, uh, what is, it has no restrictions. Um, so anybody can make a citizen arrest as they did in Brussels with Ahmaud Arbery. And so what they're trying to do is restrict that law, um, repeal that law um, so that restrictions can be allowed for as it relates to citizens' arrests.
Carl Gilliard, Democrat from Savannah, is a very good friend of mine, I'm glad to further discuss with him and we can, with your consistence today, add that to our legislative agenda for twenty twenty-one.
Do I have, um, and, and the resolution will come on in October, um, the regular meeting in October. Do I have?
Just make a, amend the, amend the legislative agenda to include that.
Okay, um, I would like to, um, uh, Attorney Walker, what is, I sent it to you. Do you have the, um, the House bill?
Um, I can pull it up.
Okay, real quick, I'll get it, uh, mayor, I just make sure we have the right House bill number, uh, it won't take a minute, hold on a second.
It's gonna be reassigned a different number though, isn't it, Councilmember Willis, for the new?
Right, right now, yeah, but right now it has a number.
Okay.
And I sent it to, I sent all my documentation to Attorney Walker last week, um. One second. Do you have an Attorney Walker yet?
No, I'm doing a search for it, my computer's going a little bit slow.
So for the sake of time, I would just say that I move that we add.
Excuse me, that you need to make a, a friendly amendment because Councilmember Reeves' motion and Councilmember Rao's second.
Right.
I move that we make a friendly amendment to add uh, um, House bill sponsored by Carl Gilliard to repeal the citizen arrest law.
Yeah, it's House Bill twelve oh three.
Okay, House Bill twelve oh three to the legislative.
So the maker of the motion, uh, accept that?
Yes, I accept the friendly amendment, absolutely.
Okay.
Further discussion.
Yeah, you are next, Ms. Rao.
Um, Mr. Long, um, I know we had extensive conversation, are you prepared to share my recommendations for amendment to this document?
I do have um, two of your priorities of everything that you sent me, the two that the state can take up, I have those ready to present to the council, yes. Number one is uh, the securing funding for transportation projects um, that can be taken up uh, as far as state legislation through our legislative delegation. And then number two would be strengthening the candidates, candidate residency requirements. Um, so that candidates have stricter rules when they're running for office, that would be a statewide uh, piece of legislation that our legislative delegation would have to agree to, uh, to carry, but we can, with consensus, we can add that to the proposal uh, for twenty twenty-one.
Is that what you're doing?
Those are the things I suggested, and then one other, Mr. Long, and I don't know if you looked at that uh, consideration for naming Hamilton Road from Ena Road to the end of the city lines, uh, after John Lewis.
Oh, the John Lewis, the John Robert Lewis Parkway, that is correct, that is a state measure as well, that would have to go through both transportation committees, yes. We can add that measure to, with consensus, we can add that measure to uh, to the twenty-one agenda as well.
Dr. Rao, are you asking that they be added?
Yes.
Okay, you, so you, you making that, the maker of the motion, is that okay?
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay.
I'm amenable to that.
Alright. Okay, I got Mr. Colley.
Uh, I just, I just wanted to understand, is it time sensitive, because we're making a lot of amendments and additions and I, and I'm actually cool with all of them. I, I will also be completely transparent and say I've been really focused on the budget. And so I haven't really had time to do all the research that I would like to do, is this time sensitive that this must be approved today?
Um, Mr. Councilmember, Councilmember Colley, yes it is, the legislative delegation has requested your legislative priorities for the twenty twenty-one session uh, no later than September twenty-fifth. So once you, once the concession, once the consensus is agreed upon today, I'm gonna package everything up and send it to your legislative delegation for approval for next year.
Understood, thank you.
Yes, sir.
The Long?
Yes, sir.
I mean, I'm sorry, Mayor Edwards?
Yes.
Yeah, I chime in on one item.
Yes.
It's important to note that you're just submitting your priorities, remember that the Southwoods and delegation and they are looking at setting this time up where after they receive your document, they will then, if you have additional things that you would like to discuss, so Councilmember Colley, if you haven't had a, a chance to kind of dive into it right now, this is not your last chance, but we're required to provide them something on record by the twenty-fifth. Once you do that, you'll actually have your meeting down at the Capitol where you'll be able to discuss these items as well as other additional items that may come up in between that time.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, yes, Mr. Baker?
Yes, with, with that being said, uh, is it possible, Mr. Long, to uh, have a conversation about the items that I spoke to you about or that I communicated, uh, being added then? Because I don't know like if when we communicate, you automatically add them or you know it's a long shot, so you don't list them or, or how that works.
There were two of your items that you reserved for later, but your one priority on medical marijuana, that can absolutely be added, that is still a hot topic in this state. They are still advancing medical marijuana and, and making the governance of that happen as we speak. So we, I am glad to add that with consensus, absolutely.
Is that what you asked about, Mr. Baker?
Uh, we.
Well, yeah, I talked about that, but I also talked about legalized cannabis. So it's like, I, I guess, I don't know how consensus works when it comes to what many people uh, may not be educated on. Uh, maybe I need to just probably consider an educational campaign before we go that far, but definitely the medical uh, marijuana, uh, I would like, it's a minimum, have a consensus on that.
As long as you want to add it to the.
Yes, 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 sir, I would love to have that added.
Make the motion, are you alright with that?
A- a- absolutely.
Okay. I don't see no one else in the queue. Madam Clerk, would you restate all of that?
To adopt the A.R. Long Twenty Twenty Legislative Item amended, uh, I, I'm sorry, I did not get all of. To adopt the AR long twenty twenty legislative item amended, uh, I, I'm sorry, I did not get all of the items, but with all of the amendments, amendments.
Okay. I, I said she didn't get it, so do you need all of us to restate what we asked, Mayor?
I mean, I've got it on the recording, but I, I don't, I don't.
I have it all here if you need me to briefly restate it.
I got House Bill twelve oh three.
Mr. Long, just go ahead and restate it.
Okay, um, we have four new items that are gonna be added to the legislative agenda. Number one is HB twelve oh three, that's, uh, the repeal of the citizens' arrest. Number two would be renaming Hamilton Road and parts of Enon Road to John Robert Lewis Parkway. Number three would be to strengthen the candidate residency requirement. Number four would be secure funding for transportation projects. And my apologies, we did also add number five, uh, medical marijuana in the state of Georgia.
Okay, let's vote, please.
Clarification, not renaming Ena, starting at Enan, at Hamilton Road, yeah.
Thank you.
Let's vote, please.
Councilmember Rawl.
Aye.
Councilmember Guns.
Aye.
Councilmember Willis.
Yes.
Councilmember Gillett.
Yes.
Councilmember Reeves.
Aye.
Councilmember Khalid.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Next item.
Thank you, Council.
Next item, number twenty-two, council approval of resolution to update HR policy manual. Human resources.
I move that we approve, um, hold on a second, I'm gonna pull it up, I'm sorry. I move that we approve the resolution, uh, to update the, uh, HR, um, manual with, uh, I move that we approve the resolution to update the HR policy manual.
Is there a second?
Second.
Property moves and second, any further discussion? Hearing none, let's vote, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Rawl.
Aye.
Councilmember Guns.
Aye.
Councilmember Willis.
Yes.
Councilmember Gillett.
Yes.
Councilmember Reeves.
Aye.
Councilmember Khalid.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next item, please.
Council approval of resolution adopting South Fulton Comprehensive Transportation Plan.
I entertain both of them.
I might connect.
Go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I make a motion to accept the transportation plan.
Second.
Property moves, second, discussion. Hearing none, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Rawl.
Aye.
Councilmember Guns.
Aye.
Councilmember Willis.
Yes.
Councilmember Gillett.
Yes.
Councilmember Reeves.
Aye.
Councilmember Khalid.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Aye.
Motion approved. Next item, council approval of resolution, council approval or denial of a petition regarding road closure at Jen, Jaquinar Lane as requested by Canaan Ridge at South Wolf Creek subdivision, city manager and public works.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the petition regarding road closure.
Second.
Property moves and second, any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Rawl.
Aye.
Councilmember Guns.
Aye.
Councilmember Willis.
Yes.
Councilmember Gillett.
Yes.
Councilmember Reeves.
Aye.
Councilmember Khalid.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Aye.
Motion to approve.
Next item.
Item number twenty-five, council approval to negotiate an agreement with Comcast and Machine Q to provide smart can monitoring in the amount not to exceed ninety-eight thousand.
I entertain a motion.
I move that we approve ne, uh, negotiation of an agreement with Comcast and Machine Q to provide smart trash can monitoring in the amount not to exceed ninety-eight thousand.
Second.
Property moves, a second, discussion.
Just Mayor, I think we are not asking necessarily to, eh, um, negotiate, cause we've already negotiated. I think we're looking for approval of the agreement.
Well, I would like to restate my motion. I will, uh, move to approve an agreement with Comcast and Machine Q to provide smart trash can monitoring in the amount not to exceed ninety-eight thousand.
Second.
Property moves and second. Any discussion?
Yes, um, Mr. Donald, um, you know, this is a grave concern of, well, this is a great concern of mine in District Three, cause you know, we, we have a resident who, um, I really appreciate constantly put posting pictures of litter around trash cans and full trash cans, um, with this remedy that problem.
Oh, yeah, so that along with the Clean City Crew together will, so remember, I think when there's, when trash cans get to three-fourths, we'll automatically get an alert, um, through both C Click Fix and through our, uh, general, um, alert process. And so that will ensure that those are on a regular basis. And remember, um, we'll actually, um, start phase two where we'll expand the trash can program. So, yes, ma'am, we are confident that this will resolve that issue.
And so, uh, we're gonna start with putting these devices in trash cans that currently exist, correct? And then.
Yes, ma'am, yep, that's right, yep.
All right.
Okay, thank you, uh, Councilmember Reeves. Councilmember Reeves.
Oh, I'm muted, Mr. Donald, oh, yeah, so that, that is, uh, uh, the, the question I had. And so on, on those existing, um, trash cans that they're going to be around, would that include the move of those trash cans to align with the, uh, Public Works, uh, pickup schedule?
I'm sorry, say, what do you mean moving the trash?
Like, okay, like, oh, 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 this part of their schedule? Or is this to take place in lieu of, like?
So these are, these are completely separate. These are those existing trash cans that are there, uh, that were put in place last year. This basically alerts us on, on when to monitor those. They wouldn't need a regular schedule because this gives us a schedule where we're just responsive on the level of trash. So these might have trash much more often than, uh, than the regular pickup schedule. So we'll get an automatic alert on how to resolve that.
Okay, okay, and does this include out there the, uh, is that gonna be one uniform decal on these trash cans for identification purposes?
Uh, I believe whatever's on there now will be what's on there. So it should def, it should just basically say City of South Fulton decals. It might even, I think some of them had the district on there, but the uniformed, uh, decal that will be on there through implementation is simply City of South Fulton. And there may be something from Machine Q and Comcast that's uniform as well. You know, something like powered by Machine Q, but yeah, those designs and things come after approval. They'll submit all of that stuff.
Okay, thank you, cause you're right, and I, I would just want the uniform design, uh, 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 replaced on the decals existing to fall in line with the city identification. Thank you, sir.
That's a part of the program.
Please, Madam Clerk, will you restate the motion, please?
Miss, Miss, Mr. Mayor, I have a comment.
Hold up, I have Mr. Baker in.
Yes, uh, thank you for, uh, acknowledging me, Mr. Mayor. Um, while I do support this initiative and I know that it's well needed within our community, um, at this time, it's difficult for me to actually vote in favor of it. Uh, I, my own principles feel is if Comcast has some reconciling to do within our communities before I could support, uh, devoting out money to do business with them. So I just have to go with that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Baker, uh, restate, restate the motion, please.
The motion, what, by, uh, Councilmember Willis, second by Councilmember Rawl to approve an agreement with Comcast and Machine Q to provide smart trash can monitoring in the amount not to exceed ninety-eight thousand.
Let's vote.
Councilmember Rawl.
Aye.
Councilmember Guns.
Aye.
Councilmember Willis.
Yes.
Councilmember Gillett. Councilmember Gillett. Councilmember Reeves.
Aye.
Councilmember Khalid.
I agree with Councilman Baker, no.
Councilmember Baker.
I abstain.
Motion passes.
Mr. Baker, I do think that at some point in time, I do agree with you. I think that we have to have conversation on that issue, okay?
Thank you, sir, for that, thank you, sir, for that acknowledgement.
Okay, uh, next item, please.
Next item, count, uh, number twenty-six, council approval of resolution reallocating Juneteenth holiday funds. Councilmember Willis.
Yes, and so, um, let me start by saying that I am totally supportive of the Juneteenth holiday, uh, like the rest of my colleagues who unanimous, you unanimously, uh, vote, voted on this. But we are not funding any holiday, um, in this city. And when we voted on this, when I went back and looked at the tape, we agreed to make this revenue neutral and we agreed that the funding should come solely from corporate sponsorship. I cannot in good conscience, um, we agreed to raise the meal rate by half percent. Um, we cut our budget by fifteen percent. We are in need of, um, transportation projects that we have to prioritize. We are in need of litter that has inundated our city, uh, that, that we are, that we, most of us constantly get emails about. Uh, so I would like to see this money put to better use and added to the, uh, the right-of-way funding and, um, that's it. I mean, I will move that we approve this resolution to reallocate funding to, uh, add a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the right-of-way funding.
All right, there's their second.
Second.
They're properly moved and second, any further discussion?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
And will we be amenable to take that down to put, to allocate, uh, a hundred thousand to the right-of-way funding and fifty thousand to the Juneteenth, uh, fund? And, uh, I think that's, that would be fair enough. Maker of the motion.
Make it a motion.
Um, I, what, what, second, can I ask a question, Mayor? Why is this holiday more important than any other holiday we have in the city?
Now, you, you, you need to respond to his question.
I'm amenable to taking the fifty thousand dollars and allocating it to, uh, the, um, the voting holiday to now get people to get out and vote, to vote.
Well, well, and, and speaking of that, today is National Registration of Voter Day. So, uh, please make sure you register your neighbor and your street and make sure everybody.
So yo, your answer is no.
Yeah, would you be willing to change the allocation to the voting holiday?
No.
Um, I'm willing to be amenable to split it twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-five to the voting holiday and twenty-five to Juneteenth.
Make it a motion.
Okay, yes, that's fine.
Okay, any further discussion?
Yes, I have discussion.
Go right ahead.
Um, will I be allowed to share my screen now?
Your what?
Um, okay, so I just wanna talk quickly about this, uh, Juneteenth holiday. The. Well, first I wanna say that I agree with Councilman Willis. There are, um, we have a tight budget and we have some tough decisions to make. And cutting, uh, this one hundred fifty thousand dollars will help, uh, clean up the city. I think that that is, that is important and I am agreeable to all of that. However, Councilwoman Willis's bill completely rewrites the original Juneteenth legislation. First of all, it, uh, as you can see in this side-by-side comparison or in this original, uh, legislation, it omits, it omits any mention of the hypocrisy of the state of Georgia, which currently celebrates two paid holidays for Confederate soldiers who fought to keep African-Americans in slavery. I'm not sure if that was a willful omission or an accidental omission, but this resolution being proposed now omits that. And that is important. I think that it is important as a ninety percent black city that we take note that we are living in a state with two holidays celebrating people who fought a war to keep ninety percent of our ancestors in slavery. But more importantly, the bill does not just reallocate funds for next year's celebration. It defunds Juneteenth forever. So I would like to propose the following compromise, that we actually keep the original legislation, which has a different spirit and a different tone, but that we simply add four words to it, beginning fiscal year twenty twenty-two. That way, we solve next year's budget challenge, which is a temporary challenge, but keep our financial commitment to celebrating the heritage shared by ninety percent of the residents in this city. Now additionally, I think that it's a great idea that we put money towards the Election Day holiday and that we do that next year. But I would ask, as the author of the original legislation, if the issue is simply that we don't have the money for next year's budget, then we just don't fund it until twenty twenty-two without completely rewriting the spirit of the legislation and any possibility of future funding for this holiday that celebrates the legacy of ninety percent of the residents of the blackest city in America.
Okay, so Mr. Khalid.
So I ask that people, I'm going to ask that people vote no and that I will, and I will then make a motion.
Make a substitute motion.
A substitute motion to just amend the current legislation that says the funding will begin in FY twenty twenty.
I was just about to ask, I was just about to ask you a question. Did that, and see, I confuse a couple of things. One is, Mr. R, Mr. Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir, ma'am.
Has there been put before you any strategy to, uh, to get outside funding for this particular?
So, yes, I think staff has been working on identifying outside funding, but I think one good point that has not been made is that there is currently no funding allocated to, uh, Juneteenth in the twenty-one budget. Um, and I think that's where the debate is. So Mr. Khalid's proposal would basically defer the allocation of funding and allow us to still recognize the holiday and not have to identify new funds in a tight budget. Um, I, I think that might be helpful because we, again, have not identified the quote-unquote placeholder funding for the one hundred and fifty thousand dollars anyway. And I think we, we've talked about that before.
Well, I think you're right, I think that's where I was, I was trying to go. And Mr. Khalid, that offers you the opportunity to raise funds and have those funds available to do the Juneteenth. And we're not saying we're not gonna do the holiday, we're just, only, only issue is the funding. So that would be an opportunity.
I, I agree one hundred percent. Again, the difference is defunding it next year versus defunding it forever. I am confident and I am working with several people to provide funding for, uh, twenty twenty-one. In fact, we just talked about, um, Comcast, uh, maybe needing to reconcile some things with the city. I'm sure that they would be happy to help fund a, a holiday next year.
Ma, Mayor, I'm the maker.
All right, go right here.
Maker of this motion, I mean, is, is he asking me to be amenable to what he is, uh, proposing? And if that's the case, no, I've made my motion. Um, um, my question is, Mr. Donald, uh, are you saying that we don't have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in this current budget allocated to the Juneteenth holiday?
Yeah, so that's correct, we've actually. Yeah, so that's correct. We've actually, um, been stating that we have not allocated those funds. If you remember the original conversation, uh, we presented the uh, twenty-one proposed budget, um, is that the Juneteenth, uh, funding was not allocated. And then, uh, the issue was that it was in the resolution, but yet it was supposed to be, uh, what do you call it? It was supposed to be, uh, funding by private or philanthropic means. But for the budget, we still have to allocate a cost to it, even if you utilize that. And so, we had not done so. And that's one of the notices that we provided when transmitting the budget and in the first presentation. And so, the thought was that if you, uh, reconciled it, then we would simply remove the expenditures associated with it and then allowed us to recognize it through other means.
Okay, so you're saying that we don't have to reallocate anything, cause, so there's nothing to reallocate. There, uh, the holiday is not funded for twenty-twenty-one.
Correct. And I think that's what, uh, Mr. Collee was also pointing out, is that since there are no funds allocated to it, it, it sounds like you guys, you're saying it two different ways, but you're both saying, hey, this self-supported initiative, um, should not require a budget to add a hundred and fifty thousand to it.
Right.
And just how you're getting to it is different. And so, I think his proposal might align with what you're trying to do as well by simply just changing those four words that represent FY twenty-one, and the problem goes away.
So, I'm not going to, uh, agree to allocate any funding for future budgets. Um, I'm not going to do that. Uh, when Mr. , when Mr., uh, Phillips presented his budget presentation at this as an allocation in his budget. So, that's where the confusion is coming in. And, and what all of us said is that we, this was supposed to be revenue neutral. You all are supposed to raise the funds, not account for it in our budget.
Correct, I, I just.
Not correct.
Yeah, I just want to refresh that.
Excuse me, I have the floor.
No, he, he's talking to you.
Okay.
Yeah, so, I, I just wanted, again, just that refresher, because I, I know it's been about a month or so. So, whenever we have an allocation in the budget, so, one, the way that resolution was written, as written, whether it was written incorrectly or correctly or, or whatever, the way it was actually written required us to allocate funding in the budget. What has been, I won't say discovered, I say agreed upon, is that it appears that the consensus is to not allocate the funding specifically in FY twenty-one, and you could revisit it in a future budget. And so, with no funds being allocated and there being a little bit of confusion on how the resolution was written, the key outputs are still the same. There is currently no, um, funding allocated to it for the one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But you still have a resolution that is written in a way that requires funding to be allocated. Even if it's allocating it towards something else, and that one hundred and fifty thousand dollars has never been allocated. And so, the, the solution, the current solution, that I think one of the council members provided is to simply change language in one of the two resolutions that ensures that there's no allocation of additional funding this year. And you look at, uh, what do you call it? You look at, uh, Juneteenth funding in a future year, but continue to recognize it. Or, the second piece is to reallocate those funds somewhere else and task us with finding a hundred and fifty thousand in additional dollars. But it is, it is one or the other that you both have on the, on the table right now. And so, if, if interested, I can provide a recommendation. But those are the two things that it appears the council is debating.
So, let's pull this, let's hold this until the next council meeting and with the recommendation. Where I am going with this, I'm amenable to what, uh, uh, Councilmember, uh, uh, Ree suggested twenty-five to voting, twenty-five to this, and a hundred thousand to the, uh, uh, the right-of-way project, if we have to allocate funding this year. Uh, but if we don't have to allocate funding and if there's not funding allocated, I'm amenable to not allocating anything to this holiday next year, this year. And then, next year, we revisit not only this holiday, but we visit, we revisit any other holiday that's on the book that may need to be funded.
Oh, is your motion to hold?
Mr. Mayor, that, that was a substitute, that was a substitute motion made.
Okay.
By Councilmember Collee to keep the original legislation with funding beginning twenty-twenty-two, and it was seconded by Councilmember Baker.
Okay, we're gonna vote on the substitute first.
Why would we do?
Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk.
Oh, okay, so, your vote is on the substitute motion?
Right, right.
Councilmember Rao. Councilmember Rao.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Gomes.
Yes.
Councilmember Willis.
And that is to, uh, keep the funding for twenty-twenty-two for this holiday?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, dear.
No.
Councilmember Gilliard. Councilmember Gilliard. Councilmember Reeves.
Sorry, yes, yes.
Okay, Councilmember Reeves.
I need to change my vote too. I misunderstood the mo-
Well, finish, and I'll come back to you.
Councilmember Collee.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Aye.
Go back to, go back to Councilmember, uh.
Councilmember Rao.
Nay. I have a, I have a question. So, again, we're changing.
Let's, uh, before we get there, I gotta conclude this vote, this vote. And quick, what is it?
So, what, what, I'm just confused, and I apologize because we're talking about this so much. We're, so, we're not changing the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two?
The funding will not begin until twenty-twenty-two.
What? No, for her. Well, where's the vote?
Councilmember, did you change your vote?
Yes.
Okay, the, the motion, um, fails. It's four-three.
Okay.
I'm sorry, point of order, can I, what were the four no votes?
Councilmember Rao, Councilmember Gomes, Councilmember Willis, and Councilmember Reeves.
But that was for the substitute motion, correct?
Right.
Yes.
Can you restate the substitute motion? I'm just.
The substitute motion was to keep the original legislation as written with funding beginning twenty-twenty-two.
Okay.
And, and that failed just now.
Yes, sir, it did.
Let's, uh, let's move to the original motion, Madam Clerk.
The original motion, which was amended, it was motion by Councilmember Willis, seconded by Councilmember Rao to approve this, to approve it with funding going to the hundred and fifty dol- hundred and fifty thousand going to a hundred thousand to right-of-way, twenty-five to the election holiday, and twenty-five to Juneteenth.
And we need to have a funding source.
Yeah.
So, I asked to hold this because we don't have the funding source right now. Yeah, this is on hold.
Okay. Then that's, your motion was to hold?
No, she, that was no motion.
Yes, I did ask, I didn't make a motion, but I asked to pull this and hold this. And then Mayor said, well, before we pull and hold it, let's go ahead and vote on the substitute motion. We voted on it.
You still need a motion to hold, Hallie.
I moved that we hold, I moved that we hold this legislation.
Oh, actually.
I've removed the second. Any further discussion?
Yes, I have a discussion.
Correct.
Um, for the record, this is legislation. We are holding, if we are holding the proposed legislation, then the current legislation is law, which means that we are legally obligated to fund Juneteenth right now in the FY twenty-twenty-one budget to the tune of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
That's all fine if you could find me a hundred and something dollars.
My job, Mr. Mayor, that's the city manager. Find one hundred and fifty thousand dollars for Juneteenth. If there's no substitute.
On the budget, though.
If there is no, if, it's not depending on the budget. We passed the law and said, you are going to spend this money on this. That is the law. That is what it is. So, until we pass something different, the city manager is hereby ordered by the city council to fund this holiday at the tune of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Now, I just proposed the solution where he would not have to do that. But until that is done, any budget that we pass today must include funding for Juneteenth.
Fair.
Out of a hundred and fifty.
Okay, uh, Madam Clerk, would you call the vote, please?
Mayor, no, I'm not.
Correct, though.
I'm not going to hold this because Mr. Donald just explained that we did not have any money allocated to this holiday. So, the whole premise of this is to not allocate a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to a holiday. The whole premise of this is to allocate, we got to allocate anything is to allocate it to our, uh, public safety projects and to the two holidays that we just discussed, twenty-five and twenty-five.
So, Mr. Willis, are you, what are you advocating, to hold or push your original motion?
What Mr. Donald explained is that we didn't have to move forward with this legislation because he said the money is not allocated in the budget. Now, we're coming back saying it is allocated in the budget.
Uh, he, he says not allocated in the current twenty-one budget, correct.
He, that's what he said. And so, what Mr. , what, what Councilmember Collee is saying, that if this legislation does not pass, then he, Mr. Donald is obligated to go find a hundred and fifty thousand.
That's not, you're right.
He is correct.
So, let me go, let. Donald wants to speak. Can he, our city manager address?
Oh, excuse me, right now, everybody. Mr. Donald, go ahead.
Yes, so, the decision is very simple. What Mr. Collee said is absolutely correct. And I think his proposal, I think there are four words that you have to look at. So, if you don't want to propose having funding in FY twenty-two, which legally you could not do anyway, because you can only allocate funding on an annual basis based on Georgia law, when you look at your municipal budgets, like your commitments can only go from year to year. With the Juneteenth holiday, if you change the wording in the original legislation that is already there to simply take out the allocation of funding, you have a holiday that is recognized and celebrated in the city of South Fulton without allocating funding for any activities and things of that nature. And thus, we do not have to allocate funding in the FY twenty-one budget. Otherwise, that is the law of the land currently, and it requires us to allocate funding. And so, you can, you can either adjust the current legislation, create new legislation, or whatever it is that removes the allocation of funding. Or, you could simply direct us to include one hundred and fifty thousand dollars and remove it from somewhere else, which is likely the contingency. And so, my advisement would simply be, we have a balanced budget. You've identified additional priorities, and we have increased the contingency. And so, the staff recommendation would be simply to take the existing legislation and remove the allocation of funding, um, related to that resolution.
I agree with that, uh, council member. I think that's the easiest, the best way out.
Um, Mr. , Mr. Mayor.
I was, I'm trying to see if the maker of the motion agrees or disagrees.
Well, I'm the maker of the motion. I made the substitute motion.
Okay, go ahead.
No, there was a motion to hold it.
You're right.
We haven't gotten any, we haven't completed that yet.
Well, I would like to get in discussion.
I was the second.
Yes, it was second by Councilmember Rao.
If I might be in the queue for discussion.
Go ahead, sir. I'll let you, I'll let you talk. Go ahead.
I was drawing my motion, Mayor. I made, I'm the maker of the motion.
And I asked you earlier, I said, I gave you advice what I thought would be best, and you said nothing. But, but, uh, since you're the maker of the motion, what are you withdrawing?
I'm withdrawing holding this resolution, and I am going back to what we originally stated. I am going to request that we allocate a hundred thousand dollars to Public Works for the Right-of-Way, twenty-five for Voting Holiday, and twenty-five for Juneteenth.
Okay. And it's been properly seconded, and I'm wa- I'm allowed, Mr. Collee, since I technically in discussion right now. I'm allowing you to say what you got.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Please recognize me, sir.
Mr. Baker would be the last one. Mr. Collee, go ahead, and Mr. Baker, you go after him, and then we will vote.
So.
Wait a minute, Mr. Mayor, I haven't spoken, and I, and I didn't know I was on mute.
Okay, well, I didn't know you was on mute either. Uh, Mr. Baker.
I've been having problems all day, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Collee and Mr. Baker, go ahead.
Okay, so, I'm not sure what is going on here and what political games are being played. We unanimously voted to celebrate the ending of slavery.
Right.
African-American people. And, and I have submitted, I understand that there is not money in this year's budget. Mr. Donald has said that he has balanced our budget, and there isn't a hundred and fifty thousand dollars available, which means that there's not a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for trash pickup or a twenty-five or an Election Day or twenty-five. This, this motion that we're debating now, the Councilwoman Willis has just proposed, once again, takes us over budget by one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The motion that I have proposed solves all of our budget problems for this year and simply says that we'll begin fiscal year twenty-twenty-two. Another way to think about this is that the effective date of the resolution would be October one, twenty-twenty-one, which would be after Juneteenth and the beginning of twenty-twenty-two. So, what I am proposing is that we stop arguing about this for the rest of the year. And if you want to argue about it next year, we can. But what I am proposing is that we stop arguing about it, that we take the money out, that we take a look at this next year, when hopefully things are in a more positive financial light. And then, we can discuss all of this. But rewriting the resolution and then adding another a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the budget, which we will have to balance today, because we've advertised that we're adopting the budget today, is just creating unnecessary drama.
Right. Mr. Collee, do not disagree totally with you. Uh, and I do agree that we will, regardless of whichever way we go, I think we'll always have a Juneteenth holiday, regardless. So, uh, but when, when a motion is on the floor and been seconded by somebody, I have to carry that motion. And what is the motion now, Madam Clerk? Or is there a motion seconded?
Fair. I'm the maker of the motion.
I'm the clerk. You're making, is there a motion on the floor right now, Ms. Clerk, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Councilmember Willis restated her original motion to approve the, the Juneteenth holiday with a hundred thousand going to right-of-ways, twenty-five to voting date, and twenty-five to Juneteenth.
Was it seconded?
I'm not sure if it was seconded or not.
So, Mayor.
Can I get some order here? Let me find out what happened to your motion.
Would you let people speak? I'm trying to.
I will, but I can't let, if you had no second, it's nothing.
As of twenty-twenty-two. As of twenty twenty two, we can do this.
Mr. Mayor, I was in the queue to be recognized after.
I'm, I'm trying, I'm just doing, trying to get, will y'all just allow me to get a procedural thing out of the way? Madam Clerk, was her motion second?
No, sir.
Then there is no motion on the floor. Okay? Now I will do, what I would do is I'll go to Mr. Baker now. And you have, if you have something to say, go ahead and say it.
I do. I think I have to start at the beginning because this is my first time speaking on this topic. First of all, when we started the conversation about this, I think it's disingenuous to, uh, apply that we did not unanimously vote to allocate a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to this holiday. It was questioned and show the proof of what we all voted on with work and knowledge. Then it was questioned again at a separate meeting. Our city attorney opined that that's the same legislation that we voted on. That's the first thing that should be cleared up so that we can all know where we are and how we got here. It was unanimously voted. So, there wasn't discrepancy, there wasn't a great area, there was one councilperson who contended differently. Now this councilperson has legislation. We addressed the legislation to defund the one hundred and fifty thousand dollars that should have been allocated to Juneteenth. And we just agreed to give Comcast ninety eight thousand dollars. We know they disparage our, but we just voted to give them ninety eight thousand dollars just two motions ago. And now here we stand completely defunding a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a holiday, not just for twenty twenty one. We understand that we have a budget crunch. And I think that Councilman Khalid's substitute motion cleared that up for everyone. Which means we would not be funding Juneteenth in the twenty twenty one budget. But this acknowledgement through this resolution that we're about to vote on is one to say, I don't like it so much that it doesn't matter that we're not funding it next, in, in Ju, in June of twenty twenty one, but never. I have to say for the record, Mr. Mayor, I'm embarrassed to serve on the council today in the blackest city in America with us making a decision like this if it passes. And that's just what I contend and I yield.
Okay, Ms. Gilliard.
Can I speak? Yeah, I just wanted to say, um, Mr. Mr. Mayor, I just think, do you hear me?
Yeah, I hear you.
Okay, I just think that I cannot believe that we have spent this amount of time.
Absolutely.
Going back and forth about the end of slavery, which makes me really think, did it really end? What are we doing? What in the world are we doing? Are we trying to act like we are not in America? Are we trying to act like we are not still oppressed? Do we know who we are? I don't understand. I don't get it. I honestly and truthfully do not get it. And you know what? I wish I had a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Cause if I did, I'd give it to the city. I'm done.
Okay, okay, Madam Clerk. I do, at this time, I do not have a motion on the floor on this, alright?
Sir, I'm in.
Let me, let me ask the clerk something. Do I, Ms. Clerk?
Correct.
Do you wanna make a motion, Miss, Miss, uh, Willis?
Yes, as I speak, I'm in a queue. First of all, Mayor, let, I, I'm gonna say that this is some disingenuous mess. I requested for the clerk to send us the tape and the minutes. We went back and we listened to several of us went back and listened to the min, minutes. Clear that this holiday, we all support. Why am I know where I came from? And this has nothing to do with us not supporting the ending of slavery. This has everything to do with how we fund this holiday. A hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we do not have to fund a holiday. And what makes this holiday so special or more special than voting suppression that is going on? Bottom line, we don't have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of taxpayer money to put towards a party. I am one of the ones on this council who do pay property taxes. The main people who are fighting to. The main people who are fighting to put this hundred and fifty thousand dollars towards a big party in the city don't even pay one dime of property tax. So let me say this, Mayor. I am asking the intent of this legislation is not to fund this holiday for this year. In twenty twenty two, I think this council needs to look at if we have any funding to not on this holiday, but also any other holiday that we have on the book. So, Mr. Donald and Miss, and the attorney, I'm asking you, how do I need to fix it? Fix this legislation so we do not have to fund not only this year, but in twenty twenty two, this council can come back and say, how are we going to fund not only this holiday, but the rest of the holidays that's on the book? This has nothing to do with me not supporting Juneteenth. This has everything to do with me being fiscally responsible with our money that I pay property taxes for.
There's.
I think the recommended language, um, and I would defer to the attorney on how to write the language up. Uh, my recommendation would be to mirror the existing legislation or use the, um, existing legislation, whichever you pervert, prefer. But to mirror the existing legislation and, uh, change the wording to remove the funding associated with FY twenty one and require staff and council to evaluate funding on an annual basis prior to budget adoption.
I move that we remove funding for fiscal year twenty twenty one and we require staff to evaluate on the annual basis funding going forward.
There a second?
Councilmember Ral, second.
Property moved in second. Let's vote.
I, I, we have discussion on a motion, do we not?
We've always had, we've had discussion for the past thirty minutes.
I'll, Ms. Ms. Willis now.
I'm of us more than her.
No, no. Uh, Mr. Mr. Khalid, I was sitting here waiting, but you can go ahead on top.
Okay. Okay, so, first, while we're discussing false narratives, I just want to be clear that when my mother died from stage four breast cancer, my first month in office, I inherited her house at six four eight five Greenbauer Lane. And I paid property taxes on it in twenty eighteen and I paid property taxes on it in twenty nineteen. Secondly, I just want to clarify that this motion keeps the original wording of the original legislation in place and simply defunds it for this year. Is that correct?
I made my motion. My motion is to defund this holiday this year and to ask staff to bring back a recommendation on how we fund this holiday on an annual basis going forward. That is my motion.
That's the motion.
So again, I will clarify by asking the city attorney. Does that motion keep in place the original language of this resolution?
So that motion would keep in place the original language of the resolution with exception of the funding allocation section.
And so.
And that funding allocation section would instead read what you have on the agenda today with the exception that I would add an additional sentence that says staff is to bring back proposals for future funding on an annual basis.
And so, since this motion keeps the original language of the resolution in place and simply defunds it, simply defunds what some people are calling a party to celebrate the ending of slavery and the freeing of African Americans, since it only does that for this year, which is actually what I proposed thirty minutes ago. I am in support of this motion.
Okay. Alright, uh, are you finished, Mr. Khalid?
I am done.
Okay, I, uh, I agree with Miss, uh, Miss Gilliard, we have spent too much time on this issue. I'm gonna ask Mr. Reeves, who's in the, who's in the queue to make some brief statements and we will, we will vote when he finishes. Mr. Reed.
I, I just wanted to say, uh, uh, deferring to our subject matter experts uh, on, on, on this, uh, cause I support Juneteenth fully. I support the voting holiday fully. Quite frankly, those are the only two holidays I celebrate. But the thing is, is that we have, uh, the subject expert, subject matter experts who gave us the recommendations on what we should follow. Um, Mr. Khalid, uh, did make the same, uh, 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 friendly amendment to the, uh, substitute motion. And, uh, which is following the advice of our city manager. And I think that we should go into the direction of our, uh, leadership who has the day to day operations and he can get with the CFO so they can um, identify, uh, what we need to do as far as this funding because we do owe it, uh, fiduciary responsibility to our constituents. We owe them that. Uh, we are already, uh, uh, in a tight. Uh, we do have money in the contingency budget, but that is for a contingency. And so, uh, we don't know what's gonna happen, uh, fiscally from now to end of twenty twenty one. And twenty twenty two might bring a, a, a better year. And you know, uh, so I just a, a, agree with our subject matter experts and think that we should lean on that advice.
Madam Kirk, let's vote please.
The motion was to keep the original legislation moving the funding information and allow the staff to identify funding for, on an annual basis. Motion by Councilmember Willis and seconded by Councilmember Ral. Voting, Councilmember Ral? Councilmember Gums?
Aye.
Councilmember Willis?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilliard? Councilmember Gilliard? Councilmember Reeves?
Aye, and following our city managers advice.
Councilmember Khalid?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Nay.
Councilmember Gilliard, are you there? The motion passes.
Okay, next item please.
Do you want to, okay, so the next item would be go back to council, to item number twenty. Council approval of adopting FY twenty one budget.
I will accept the motion.
I move that we approve the fiscal year twenty twenty one budget.
Second.
Property moved in second discussion.
I have discussion.
Go ahead, Mr. Khalid.
The current, I'm sorry, give me one moment. The current, uh, the current ordinance says that, uh, the budget is attached. It is currently not attached. I would just like to make a friendly amendment that we attach the mayor's, I mean, the mayor's, the city manager's proposed budget as exhibit A and page one of the city manager's proposed, uh, funding recommendations for the millage rate increase as exhibit B.
Maker of the motion, is that okay with you?
What, um, can you repeat that again? Are you just asking that he attached the budget to the, uh, to the, what are you asking, Councilmember?
I'm asking that, yes, he attached the budget and that he also attached page one of the, uh, funding, which covers the one point one million dollars in additional millage rate that we voted on September seven.
The proposed budget and the adopted budget are two different things for y'all's knowledge. The proposed budget is based on a completely different millage rate and it is laid out completely different. What you are approving is the adopted budget, which includes additional funding that is allocated differently. And so I, Mr. Malazi can chime in because I know he submitted the ordinance and the budgets. I'm not sure why it's not included, but, uh, he and the clerk can probably chime in and give you whatever insights, um, are appropriate there, but I.
Mayor, you asked me if I'm amenable to his amendment. The amendment, the answer is I'm only amenable to attaching whatever doc, documents that apply to this, this current year fiscal budget. That's it. That's all I'm amenable to. Can we move on, please?
Mayor, can I speak if, if.
Yes, you can, Mr. Malazi.
So, the clerk has got the ordinance, you are adopting the ordinance. And the, within the ordinance, there are the attachment of the budget document that includes everything that you made changes during the last public hearing. I, in addition to that, there is a, uh, classification, employee's classification as a second attachment. So literally, you are adopting the the one budget ordinance. Attached to it is the revised budget document and the classification.
Okay, does that include Mr. Khalid's, uh, issue?
Yeah, it includes the budget is what Ms. Akarid is talking about. I think, um, the clerk can bring up the budget. I have it. If they can, they can allow me to, uh, bring it.
Mr. Khalid, Mr. Khalid, did you not ask for a, a page out of the, out of the manager's report to be attached to the budget?
It's all I'm asking. I, I have.
So that's all I wanna know. Did, did, is that, is that, is that page connected to the, what's about to be the adopted budget?
What you are adopting is this, uh, uh, ordinance, but it has attachment of the budget. Uh, Ms. White, can you, can you bring up the budget document?
Mister, Mister Malazi, it's very simple. His, his, his inquiry is, is that one page that he's asking, will it be included in the adopted budget? That's all, that's all we know.
Not in the format that he is asking for, Mayor.
Okay.
It's not, yeah, I don't think it apparently fits. So what, what happens with the budget ordinance, because this is a legal document.
Yes.
Gives you an exhibit of the actual city's budget. And it is the high level piece. But I, I think what Mr. Khalid is asking for, and it wouldn't be in this document, once we publish the designed adopted budget, which has all of that detail that will be included. But the order of things is that when you approve the, uh, when you actually adopt the budget, you have an ordinance that highlights everything that is in the budget and shows that it is balanced. And then you produce what we call your budget book. And in the.
Okay, that's right.
Is where you provide your narrative, you show all of the different considerations, et cetera, et cetera, and that will be included. But it would be a, a extremely new deviation that has never happened in the city's history. Which doesn't mean it can happen, but it is not the Georgia law of creating, publishing and adopting budgets. It would be a deviation from that.
Okay. Alright, we have a motion on the floor of the second. Let's vote.
Councilmember Ral?
Aye.
Councilmember Gums?
Aye.
Councilmember Willis?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilliard? Councilmember Reeves? Councilmember Khalid?
No.
Councilmember Baker? Councilmember Baker. Councilmember Baker. Councilmember Gilliard.
Abstain.
Aye.
Okay.
You got my eye, uh, Madam Clerk.
I got it, Councilmember Gilliard, what did you say?
Abstain.
And, C- Council, Council, Mayor and Council, I mean, I just feel compelled to, to say this, um, just to put on the record, I, I wanna. For clarity, I wanna let you know what Councilman Khalid is saying.
How about this, how about this, and, and I'm sorry, but Councilman.
No, I, I acknowledge, I acknowledge, I acknowledge the attorney to let her talk.
Okay.
Yeah, I think what, I just wanna make sure you're aware, it's, it's, this issue is a technical issue. And as written, the budget ordinance says attached here too, it says. The adopted fiscal year two thousand twenty-one budget attached here too. So I think as a technical aspect, without having any attachment here too. It's creating an issue if this ever comes up, as to what is the attachment, what is approved as the attachment?
Point of order, Mayor.
What is your point of order?
My point of order is my motion was to adopt this fiscal twenty twenty-one. Any document that is applicable to this budget. So that should fix everything.
She did say that.
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Have we taken, have we taken the vote, hold one minute, Mr. Khalid, I'll acknowledge you.
Yes, we have.
All right, we've taken the vote, Mr. Mr. Khalid, go ahead.
Thank you. All I was asking, I, it, it doesn't, it doesn't need to be a fight.
Right.
It is exactly, and I, and I didn't need six different people to speak for me. I was just, I was just saying that, yes. This document says that the budget is attached here too.
Right.
When you scroll down, there is nothing attached except a paid classification or executive salaries. There is no budget attached, I was just asking, could we please make sure that the budget is attached? Now I would like to reserve the balance of my time for a few additional questions, I don't even know. What we voted on, because I voted no because, because the, the city manager said that's not how it's done, if there's gonna be a budget book attached. I don't care when, where, how, why, I just want to make sure that when we pass the ordinance, that there is a budget attached that.
Point of order, Mayor.
Madam Clerk, we have, we have taken a valid vote on this, right?
Right.
Yes, sir, the motion, uh.
Actually, actually, we are still in discussion, I still have.
We voted, we voted, sir.
We voted. Okay. I mean, that's, if we don't wanna have a public discussion here.
Let me, let me, hold on a minute, Mr. Mr. Manager, what you wanna say?
Well, Mayor, it was if you pull that document back up so we can provide some clarity now that the council has voted. If you go back to the page where it says it is attached, it is basically, you could change attached to included below. That is your balance budget and so in approving the balance budget. You would, you are satisfied, and that's a non-substantive change, it keeps everything in the ordinance there. And it is, and that is the template that the city has utilized since even prior to my arrival. And so it is simply referencing to the balance budget that is included below. And so of the, if the wording is that vital, it could simply say. Included below here too, or however you want to word it, but that is a non-substantive change. In addition to that, you could also, what, what occurs? And it is no different than what has occurred every year because the city manager did not say, and Mr. Khalid, I would ask. To, to use my exact language and to provide clarity because on multiple occasions. We're saying what the city manager said or referenced and it is not accurate. And what is accurate is that the city manager is saying that your process is to adopt the budget through ordinance.
Yeah.
Once the ordinance is adopted, we update the proposed budget with the adopted budget. With all of the detail that you are referencing, it happens annually. In addition, it appears that the council is asking for information on which. Because we normally don't cut the budget in advance. If the council wants to, as a matter of fact, without even receiving direction from the council. We will include a special page about budget cuts and priorities and list out all of the budget cuts. And then also include all of the priorities that were funded. I believe that will satisfy making this public document because the adopted budget is included on the website and made. Public for all of our constituents, it will include all of that information. That will likely satisfy the desires, uh, requested by council and provide consensus.
Mr. Donald, can I speak?
Point of order, Mayor.
What is your point of, of order?
My point of order is, I made the motion. We, it was seconded, the motion was to approve this budget with any documents relating to this budget, the budget passed. Why are we still discussing this?
You're right, Mr. Donald, Mr. Donald. Uh, can y'all hear me?
Yes, sir.
Y'all hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right, uh, I think what you say is adequate in that, you know, that document can be placed in the future, uh, when it becomes. Appropriate, uh, at this time, I'm, that vote is passed.
I have a point of information.
Mayor.
That, listen, the vote has passed.
But can I speak, Mayor?
And I'm not gonna say anybody else after you, go ahead.
Okay.
So I don't get to speak.
Go ahead. Cuz I gotta go on, Mr. Mr. Malazi.
So, we made adjustments to the budget, so when we are adopting the. Ordinance, this ordinance should include all changes. So we need to display the changed, the adjusted budget. Because that's what you are adopting, you are adopting the ordinance that includes the changes that we made. And those are the attachments, so we have to have the attachment of the adjusted budget plus the personnel.
Okay, all right, let, let's move on.
And the clerk has those documents.
Yeah, okay, all right, let's move on, next item.
Next item is number twenty-seven, council approval of resolution to activating South Fulton Downtown Development Authority.
I will entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the South Fulton DDA.
Is there a second? Properly moved, properly moved and second discussion. Hearing none, let's vote please, Miss, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Rowell.
Aye.
Councilmember Gums.
Aye.
Councilmember Willis.
Yes.
Councilmember Gilliard.
Abstain.
Councilmember Reeves.
Aye.
Councilmember Khalid.
No.
Councilmember Baker. Councilmember Baker. The motion approved.
Next item.
Next item. Council approval of resolution promoting twenty-first century policing, Councilmember Willis.
I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, hold on. Um, I move that we approve resolution approving the implementation into policy, the twenty-first century policing. Legislation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Properly moved the second discussion.
I would like to add, um, Corey Reeves as a co-sponsor to this.
Okay. Madam Clerk, hearing none, let's vote please.
Councilmember Rowell.
Aye.
Councilmember Gums.
Aye.
Councilmember Willis.
Yes.
Councilmember Gilliard.
Yes.
Councilmember Reeves.
Aye.
Councilmember Khalid.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker. Motion passes.
Okay, next item please.
Item number twenty-nine. Reso- approval of resolution for urban agriculture program, Councilmember Gilliard.
The urban agriculture program is all about cultivating, processing. And distributing food and as you know, we really are in a food desert in our city. Um, it also includes green building, um, as it relates to, um, energy and water. And other resources to be able to cultivate, uh, food and it, all sorts of benefits. And grants that are available for urban agriculture throughout the city, not just in one location. And so I would like to make a motion to approve urban agriculture throughout the city.
There a second, properly moved the second, any further discussion?
Yes, I would like to thank, um, Councilmember Gilliard for, um, for doing this because this is a much-needed, uh. Uh, matter that needs to be addressed, we do have a little bit of agriculture throughout the city of South Fulton.
Okay, uh, let's, let's vote please.
Councilmember Rowell.
Aye.
Councilmember Gums.
Aye.
Councilmember Willis.
Yes.
Councilmember Gilliard.
Yes.
Councilmember Reeves.
Absolutely, aye.
Councilmember Khalid.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next item please.
Next item. Council approval of resolution amending the H- Human Resource Manual to establish a use of forced drug testing policy. Councilmember Willis.
Okay, where we do, where we, this is the.
Item number thirty.
Item number thirty, approval may, okay, so yes, so, um, the city of South Fulton, uh. We continue to, uh, be proactive in reviewing and updating use of force policies. And this policy was actually brought to my attention by resident, uh, Marcus Coleman, uh, who's been instrumental in. Organizing peaceful protests during these, um, unrest situations. And, um, and talking with, uh, Mr. Coleman, I really appreciate him bringing this to the forefront. Uh, we, uh, got, we had a meeting with, uh, Chief Meadows and Chief Meadows. Actually was in total agreement of this, he, uh, said that he instituted this policy in the, uh, in College Park. And so, uh, we did not have this policy instituted in the city of South Fulton, but what this policy will allow for is this. It, it displays transparency, it's gonna, it's gonna foster trust with residents, uh, when interacting with police. Uh, when we do have an arrest situation, it's gonna eliminate the, um, any doubt. Um, or any questions that may arise as it relates to, uh, sobriety. Uh, when our officers are involved in unrest, uh, situations, this is not an indictment on our officers. Uh, this is simply to enhance the transparency and the trust. And, um, it's in alignment with the twenty-first century police policy that we voted on, uh, to adopt. So, again, thank you, Chief Meadows, um, thank you, uh, Marcus Coleman and I ask that the council please. Uh, support me in approving this policy and I would like to add Councilmember Gums as a co-sponsor. Because, uh, in talking with her, she said she did try to get some, bring something like this. Uh, before council a couple of years ago, um, and it did not, um, get any steam. So I would like to add her as a co-sponsor to this policy. And so my motion is to, I move that we approve this policy.
Second.
Properly moved the second, in discussion.
Yes, yes.
Councilmember Baker has a question.
Right.
I mean, I just wanted, I mean, we heard from Councilwoman Willis, I, I just wanted to know, uh, is, is Chief Meadows available to this year?
Sure. Uh, yes, 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 Councilman, I'm here.
You know, you know, uh, I spoke to, uh. Coleman about measures like this as well, I just wanted to know your input on.
Cuz I never. You know, right, as, as, as of right now, we already test our police officers when they're involved in, uh, vehicle accidents. They are automatically tested, uh, this is just another step in, in transparency, I think it's a wonderful idea. Um, you know, showing our public that we actually have nothing to hide and it helps to cut down on, um, uh, you know, frivolous complaints. About, uh, different sobriety, as the councilwoman said earlier, so I think it's a, it's a great protection for our people and, and, and it's also. Uh, done in the spirit of transparency as well.
Okay, thanks.
Let's vote please.
Councilmember Rowell.
Aye.
Councilmember Gums.
Aye.
Councilmember Willis.
Yes.
Councilmember Gilliard.
Yes.
Councilmember Reeves.
Aye.
Councilmember Khalid.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker. Councilmember Baker.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next item.
Next item is number thirty-one. Council first reading and approval of adopting emergency ordinance mandating social distancing at restaurants.
As much of you, many of y'all know that we are the second city in terms of COVID, uh, next to Atlanta. Uh, I had been going out and one, two occasion with, uh, Council, Councilwoman Reeves. And actually viewed some of the, uh, gatherings that we've been having, especially on weekdays. And especially on Old National Highway. And to, also, the gatherings we've had with the so-called party houses. Uh, where people are just gathering, no, no masks, no nothing. And so I reached out to the attorney and Madam Attorney.
Yes, Mayor.
Please chime in too, I reached out to her and asked her, how can, how can I? Get some help in making sure that our businesses are, are mandated to the protocols of COVID nineteen. You wanna add anything to that?
Yes, Mayor, um, so this is in reference to your resolution, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so give me one second, I was amending something that was on something else, give me.
Number thirty-one.
Okay, thirty-one. Yeah, so basically what this does is it, it's, the concern was just, you know, with the lack of social distancing at restaurants. So this says for as long as the executive order, um, of the governor is in place that restaurants are required to. Uh, require that the workers wear face coverings, they have to maintain seating, seating. That's designed to ensure six feet of separation, um, they can't allow patrons to congregate on the curtilage or. Um, just around the restaurants and it says the restaurant shall be defined, um, as a food establishment as the state of Georgia defines it. Which is consistent with the governor's, um, executive orders. And then also that if a restaurant is out of compliance, they'll be given a warning for the first violation. And then they can be given a fine of up to a hundred dollars per, per violation thereafter. Uh, it also.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, it also just encourages everyone throughout the city to wear masks and facial coverings and the duration, I would just need confirmation from you on. Um, as to how long you want this to go into effect. Now, if you adopt this, uh, today, it can only go into effect for thirty days. Yeah, so if you do it as a first read, then you can, you know, put it into effect how long you want to, but if you adopt it today because it is. Technically, it, it can be an emergency, so if you adopt this today, um, I think I titled it as an emergency as well, let me scroll to the top.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, so technically you can adopt this today and then it would last thirty days or you can just. Adopt this as first read and implement it next meeting, it's your discretion.
Okay, uh, Mr. 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 Uh, Meadows. Chief Meadows.
Yes, Mayor, yes, Mayor.
I want you to speak to on this.
Well, I think it would be best to have it as a first read and the reason I say that is because it's gonna be an educational time period. That we're gonna have to go through with a lot of the businesses, I'll ask that our, our license and permits unit send out notifications to the businesses. to the businesses with respects to the ordinances and the requirements. And so, um, uh, this is something that is gonna take a lot, a great deal of education on, and thirty days will probably, by the time we get finished with the educational components of this, we'll probably be already two weeks into it, so it wouldn't do us any good. So I would recommend that we do it as a first read, uh, with the ability to extend it through the end of this year.
Okay, uh, Mr. Reeves?
Yes, sir, um, thank you, Mr. Mask Mayor. Um, I wanna, I've read through this legislation. I would like to, uh, uh, see if we can get an amendment to, um, a portion of it, a sentence, cause as it reads, it says that, that the establishment needs to have two certified armed guards if they have dancing at their establishment from open to close, and see if we can change those hours from six P.M. until close.
Your recommendation what?
Well, I think, I think Councilman Reeves, I think you're talking about his next item.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. Okay, any more comments? If not, we'll go to the next item.
I do, I have a comment.
Yeah.
I know it's, I know it's the first read. I just think that a hundred dollars per incident may be a bit aggressive. Um, but that's my comment.
Duly noted, duly noted. Mr. Khalid, and we'll move on.
Um, I just, uh, public safety is definitely important. I also think that it is important that we support our small businesses, and I know that this will put some burden both on business owners and the employee, this and the next, um, resolution...
Yeah.
Will put a burden on both business owners and many employees who have been forced to go back to work because extended unemployment benefits have ended. So I, I just want to note that it's important that we very aggressively not only pursue as much funding from the county as we can, but that we make sure that we are distributing that funding to, uh, businesses and residents who are being financially impacted.
Okay, duly noted, next item, please.
Mr. Mayor, can I get clarification? So this ordinance is not going to be considered as an emergency ordinance?
No, it's just the first read.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, next item.
Next item, first read of amending ordinance title sixteen alcoholic beverages with regulating entertainment at restaurants.
Let me just say this. I've been burned by this too many times. A person comes to our city, he comes and he says, "I'm opening up a nice family restaurant." And, uh, right table, cardboard, and then within three months after that, you go back to the same place, and that fine food, family restaurant has now changed by their actions into a nightclub. So I'm saying is, be who you say you gonna be, and if you're gonna do, if you're gonna do things differently, tell us upfront so we'll know how to appropriately zone you. So that's the basis of where we are, Ma- Madam Attorney, did you wanna say anything?
Yeah, no, Mayor, you've, you've accurately summarized it.
Okay, let me get, uh, Chief Meadows.
Mayor, I completely agree with you on this because we're, we're putting a great deal of police resources behind, um, uh, the enforcement with respects to a lot of these businesses. And so, uh, we have to be prepared to set a standard, so I completely agree with your assessment on this, and it's just something we're gonna have to get our hands around.
All right, any other, any other comments? Okay, this is the first read. We'll move on, Madam Clerk.
No, I, and I'm, I'm in the queue.
And I think Councilman Reeves, I think this is where your comment would be appropriate.
Yes.
Okay, I, I see, I'm sorry, Mr. Khalid, Mr. Reeves, and then Mr. Khalid.
Mr. Mask Mayor, could you, uh, be amenable to reducing the, when you said the two armed security guards from open to close, and change that to six P.M. to closer?
I can, I'd be, I'd be open to that.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Khalid?
Yes, um, I do, while I do think that it is important that people are transparent when they come before council about the types of establishments they are opening, I want to be clear as the councilman for District Six that I am not opposed to nightclubs on Old National. I do believe that any vibrant city should have a nightlife district, and that many of these clubs are in the exact same places, Mr. Mayor, where you or other people may have danced when I was just a kid, the Twenty Grand, the Crow's Nest. Uh, many of these nightclubs have been around on Old National for decades, and I do think that I, I would like for us to find a way that people on, that people in the city of South Fulton can go out at night and have a good time and party and dance and spend their money in the city of South Fulton. That's it.
And that's exactly what we're trying to do. Did you know, Mr. Khalid, that statistics will show you, and Chief can acknowledge this, that when we have issues, especially on Old National Highway, most of the people that we accommodate don't even come from our city?
I mean, that is, I think that that is the case anytime you have a popular nightclub. I, I, I remember from my clubbing days that I would drive to Gwinnett or Buckhead or all sorts of places.
So, but you said, you said a place for our people to come and...
But whoever's there, whoever's there, whoever's dancing, whoever's buying drinks, whoever's paying for parking, is spending their money in the city of South Fulton.
Okay, uh, that was the first read, can we move on?
First reading, council first reading to amend, uh, ordinance title two taxation, nine-one-one prepaid wireless, Councilmember Ral.
What's the problem?
This particular...
Excuse me, uh, Mrs. Gilliard, will you moot yourself, please? Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Uh, this particular ordinance would, um, impose, um, a seventy-five cent, um, charge to support nine-one-one operations. As you know, we currently have, um, an agreement with Fulton County to provide nine-one-one operations. This is the area that, um, our police chief has talked about extensively, and will begin to prepare us to recover some of the cost for those services. It's a first read, so it's no action, this, um, aligns with current state law.
Okay.
Next item. Next item, uh, council first reading to amend Charter section four point fourteen, City Treasurer. Councilmember Reeves and Councilmember Willis.
Yes, I move that we, uh, except...
This is just the first reading.
Yes, okay, I got you.
Any other comments?
Yes.
Well, well, I wanna, I wanna have a comment.
Go ahead.
Just for clarity's sake, is, uh, because we did have, uh, hearing people say that, um, have get, eliminating the treasurer position, who would be overseeing the funds, where our CFO and our treasurer are the same person, and our treasurer is under the council, and our CFO is under, uh, the city manager. And all we're doing is just eliminating one title and streamline the C-suite, so streamline or fortify, uh, the relationship between the city manager and the CFO, uh, for more fluid documentation and, and accounting for the funds. And so, uh, that's just, uh, I think it just makes, uh, the most sense. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Ms. Willis?
I'm in the queue.
I think Councilmember Gilliard was next, and then I'll go.
She came in, go ahead.
Um, if ten nineteen places eliminates the treasurer, why is the city council doing it? Ten nineteen is supposed to be what we're operating under now. So if that's the case, why are we, um, why is this legislation being, um, presented to us?
Mr. Reeves and Ms. Willis?
Um, I don't, I've read through ten nineteen, and I have it right here in my hand, and it has, it does not eliminate the, the treasurer.
Right.
So that's...
Well, I guess I'm wrong, cause I thought it did.
No, I have it right here in my hand, it doesn't eliminate the treasurer. And what we're doing is simply doing what Councilmember Reeves stated. We're, uh, moving, uh, we, we feel that everything should report up to the city manager.
Can I, can I clarify that? It actually, um, I mean, I think this, this whole conversation is probably better for executive session, but it, it does move, remove the city treasurer to nineteen.
Okay, well, if you think it's better for...
That's what I thought.
If you think it's better for exec- executive session, um, then I will defer cause that's where we going next, and you know, more, it does more than, um, remove this, the, uh, it does, ten nineteen does a lot. So I think we should reserve that for executive session.
Okay.
I, I'm gonna table this until after executive session.
What's the first read, Councilmember Reeves? You don't have, we're not voting.
Then I had, Mr. Willis, I had Mr. Khalid.
Okay, um, I have concerns. This would be an amendment to our city charter. The treasurer is listed as a position in our city charter. And usually, when charter changes are done, there is a charter review, uh, which lasts several months, in which we bring in experts, and it's important because changing small things can have unintended consequences that people who are not legal or constitutional scholars may not consider. Uh, and so my one question now, because we are clearly in this process of changing, changing our charter without a, uh, subject matter expert charter review, it is for our city attorney. As this is a charter change, what are all of the steps necessary to pass this? This is more than a simple ordinance read of two reads, and then it's, then we amended the charter, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct, there's publications and notices, and, um, there are additional state requirements that go above and beyond your ordinance, your, your, your typical ordinances.
So for the benefit of everyone watching today, could you just please go through in detail all of the steps that are required for this amendment to go through, so that we are all, um, on the same page about what needs to happen next?
Um, okay, so there's three publications that have to go out, you have to have your first read, there have to be notices that go to the Superior Court, notices that go to the, um, the Secretary of State, um, there have to be follow-ups to the Superior Court and to the Secretary of State. You have to have, um, a final adoption, so it's like, it's a whole schedule that, that we have set for this.
Thank you.
I'm...
Okay, uh, uh, Mr. Ms. Ral is next.
Yes, um, this is not the first time that we've done a, a charter amendment. Um, and so, so again, our city attorney, uh, is well-informed about the process, and if this moves forward, it would follow that and should comply with that. Um, that would be her responsibility. But, um, if we look at best practice, there are very few cities that had a city, um, treasurer position. I've looked at the charter for the city of Atlanta, the city of College Park, Haightville, um, Sandy Springs, and Johns Creek. None of them have city treasures, they have tax collectors that they described, and in some instances are counting. So when our delegation put this in, it's really anomaly. Um, and it's costs, um, you know, again, for this possession to have literally two masters, the city council and the city manager, and so hopefully this will address some of those issues. And, um, if I recall, Councilwoman Khalid, you actually voted on it, um, even though we hadn't implemented a charter change to move the city, um, the city treasurer under the city manager.
Okay. Are you finished, Ms. Ral? Ms. Ral?
Yeah, that's it, it's the first read.
All right, Ms. Gilliard?
It's the man.
It's the man.
Yes, ma'am.
It's me.
Uh, I just called your name.
Okay. So, the, 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 the city, um... Wait a minute, wait a minute. So the city attorney has said that...
Said that.
What's the echo? The city attorney has said that, um, that it's in, uh, ten nineteen. So are we saying that we need to discuss in executive session why we are doing it since it's already in ten nineteen, is that what we're saying? Cause we need to have the conversation, cause I'm confused.
We're having an executive session.
Okay.
All right, we're gonna close, this comes...
Mayor, I was in the queue.
Uh, Ms. Willis, I was just about to give you the floor, go ahead.
Just real quick, I just wanna make sure that we keep up the false narrative that was just stated that whenever we change the charter, we must go through a charter review. Um, Councilmember Reeves and I were a full discussion, and we worked with attorney, with Attorney Walker through this process. This, uh, legislation did go through the legal process, and then Attorney Walker even gave us a schedule on when this needed to go on the agenda, and we also, uh, communicated with our city manager. And so she outlined a schedule on when this legislation needed to go on the agenda, the processes that it, that it went through, and she outlined all of this in an email to Councilmember Reeves, myself, and, um, the city manager, and also Councilmember Ral was on the, uh, on the legislative, uh, was on the string. So this was well-planned out. Again, I look forward to having this discussion further in executive session because I do have ten nineteen in my hand, and I see nowhere in this bill where the treasure role is eliminated, thank you.
What's the false narrative?
Uh, excuse me, Madam Clerk, go ahead. Madam Clerk? Is the clerk there? Can everybody hear me?
Yes, I can hear you just fine.
Yes.
Uh, Madam Clerk?
Okay, so we will go with the items that the city attorney added to the agenda. The first one is council first reading of amending ordinance title three Building Regulation Construction Site Waste Management, Councilmember Khalid.
And these are really just first read, you don't need any, any action on them today.
I didn't know if any of the councils wants to talk about them. So that's the first one. The second one is first reading to amend ordinance title three Building Regulations Post-Construction Stormwater Management, Councilmember Ral.
No comment, it's aligned with us complying with this, um, no, no additional commentary needed at this time.
Okay, Madam, okay, Madam Clerk, go ahead.
Council first reading of amending ordinance fourteen Environment, Title fourteen Environmental Segmentation and Erosion Control, Councilmember Gilliard.
Uh, I don't have anything additional right now, first read.
Madam Clerk?
The first reading and amending ordinance title fourteen Environment again, uh, Stream Buffer, Councilmember Gilliard.
Um, I don't have any comment, but I think the prior one was Councilwoman Gums and not me. Cause I only had one, not two.
Okay.
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 Madam Clerk?
That is the council agenda.
I move that we go to an executive session for personnel, real estate, and litigation.
A second?
Second.
Properly moved to second, any discussion? Let's vote. Yes, go ahead, Mr. Khalid. Mr. Khalid had a discussion, and I don't hear you. Unmoot yourself.
I'm sorry. We, could we begin it in five minutes, could we just give a five-minute break?
I have no problem with that.
Thank you.
Okay, let's, let's, let's get, let's get it passed first, let's get a vote, and then we'll, we'll resume in five minutes.
Mayor, as the maker of the motion, I do accept his, uh, uh, amendment to the... to the motion to reconvene within five minutes on executive session.
Madam Clerk, vote please.
Councilmember Rowell.
Aye.
Councilmember Gomes.
Aye.
Councilmember Willis.
Yes.
Councilmember Gilyard.
Yes.
Councilmember Reeves.
Aye.
Councilmember Khalid.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Aye.
What is, what is our return time?
Recession to executive session to start at four oh five.
Okay.
Attorney to negotiate and execute Fulton County cares, I G A in substantial form.
Second. It's been moved and properly second. We'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Rowell.
Aye.
Ma, Mayor Protem, I think you want to have discussion or offer discussion.
All right, any discussion? All right. Hearing none, no discussion. Let's vote.
Councilmember Rowell.
Aye.
Councilmember Gomes.
Aye.
Councilmember Willis.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilyard.
Yes.
Councilmember Reeves.
Aye.
Councilmember Khalid.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Aye.
Motion approved.
All right. The next item, Councilwoman Rowell. Yes, um, I move that we authorize the city manager and the city attorney uh to execute an agreement in substantial form of Fulton County's lease extending the city hall's use uh for a period not to exceed a hundred days.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and properly second. Any discussion?
Mayor Protem, one comment. Um, on this lease, I would just ask that we're also authorized to remove Fulton County's um name from both the extension and any potential extent, um both the extension and any potential lease negotiations.
Okay, Madam Clerk, did you get that?
Well, I, so I included substantial form, which allows us flexibility to make adjustments as long as it's not substantial.
Got it, okay.
All right, awesome. All right, hearing none, no further discussion. Let's vote.
Councilmember Rowell.
Aye.
Councilmember Gomes.
Aye.
Councilmember Willis.
Yes.
Councilmember Gilyard.
Yes.
Councilmember Reeves.
Aye.
Councilmember Khalid.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Aye.
Motion approved.
All right, and the last item, I move that we accept the mayor's nomination for Michael Sher, Sheridan as our next chief municipal judge and authorize the city manager and city attorney to facilitate negotiations and bring back a proposed contract.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? Hearing none, no discussion. Let's vote.
Councilmember Rowell.
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Gomes.
Aye.
Councilmember Willis.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilyard.
Yes.
Councilmember Reeves.
Aye.
Councilmember Khalid.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Aye.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, let's vote.
Councilmember Rowell.
Aye.
Councilmember Gomes.
Aye.
Councilmember Willis.
Ah.
Councilmember Gilyard.
Yes.
Councilmember Reeves.
Aye.
Councilmember Khalid.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Aye.
All right, well.
Twenty-second noon is adjourned at six oh seven.
And have a good night and get some rest. Thank you.
All right, happy first day of fall and this is the vote day.